Thank you very much. My, uh, my computer laptop decided to do an update at this moment, so I'm on my phone and hopefully that'll work. Bear with me as I figure this thing out. Make sure I can see all your hands. Okay, well, thank you very much. Uh, looks like everyone is here. I'm now going to bring the regular meeting for Towns of Langley Council to order. And the first item is the adoption and receipt of the agenda items. Seconded, moved by council along. Who was the second or there?
David.
Counselor Davis, thank you. No discussion, I'll call the question, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you. Now look for most to adopt the minutes of.
So move Ferguson.
Regular meeting of June fifteenth, moved by counsel Ferguson, seconder. Counselor Whitmarsh, any errors or missions?
Yes.
Hands up, Counselor Davis.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Counselor, Counselor Richter?
Uh, yes, I'd like to go through, uh, there's some, uh, clarifications that I think are needed. Uh, starting with, uh, page three. And the, um, the D five delegation, uh, from Mr. Tony Gill. At the end of the meeting, I recall, um, asking that it be referred to staff. Attack the delegation about their. Oh, I can't hear what you're saying. So I'm wondering if you took the.
Okay, I don't know if it's me or did, I got every other word there, so.
Yeah, you, your mute is going on and off Kim somehow, it's going to mute, 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 so we didn't catch anything.
Really?
Yeah, so you're back on now, so maybe.
Okay.
Just if you just repeat what you said, there's an issue with the. Uh, referral to staff.
Yes, I've actually got five items here, uh, under the adoption, the minutes that I, I need to get clarification on.
Okay.
So the first one was page three, delegation D five, me Gil.
Okay.
It's going off again. Sorry, Jack, is that better now?
That's better now, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so D five, uh, on page three. And then again, on page thirty seven, there is no reference to the fact that I had asked that, that the delegation be referred to staff to work with the, uh, uh, work with the requests that were presented by Mr. Gill. So I'm wondering if we could go back and check the audio, I'm pretty sure, because I have it in my notes from the meeting last time to bring it up, and I have a check mark beside it, which means I did bring it up. But it's not recorded in the minutes.
Yeah, if, if it wasn't a motion, it wouldn't be recorded, if it was your request, then, uh, staff would be acting on it. Uh, so we can check if it was a motion or not, but I believe it may have been a request of staff and then staff would act on it, we generally don't report that in the, in the minutes, so we'll look into it.
Just one item E.
There, your mute is acting up again.
I don't know. What is?
There's something.
Yeah, Jack, your picture's not moving either.
I know, I'm, I'm on my phone, so.
Okay.
So what I'm gonna do now is I'm gonna, I'm gonna log off this, my computer's back running, I'm going to, um, log in with my computer, so.
It's going back and forth.
If we can just hold on for a little bit, uh, Counsel Director, I'm just gonna lock, get out of here and go back in again. I leave.
Log in to this recess.
It's almost as if you might have an active mute selected, which is automatically muting or something, Kim. The mute keeps coming on and off, on and off.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and I see that.
Hi, Margaret. Hi, Blair.
How are you, Bob?
No bad, thanks, yeah. Hang it in there.
Where are you in, you're in your house in the living room, or where are you?
Yes, I'm at home.
I see, it looks like some pretty fancy, uh, dishes or something in the back.
That's an old antique full of old dishes, yeah.
You don't have to call yourself an antique, Bob.
No, I'm not in the cabinet, I'm here.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I wanted to know what you meant by antique. David, your head is very big on your camera, like you're filling the whole screen.
Kevin, you got, if you got some kids at home.
Can you hear me? That's the most ugly part on me.
You should be able to turn up your mic.
Yeah, I just did, I just, I, I. I, I think I've lost you again now.
Okay, uh, looks like I'm backlit here, front and back, uh, can you all hear me now?
Yes.
My computer started up again, so apologize for that, uh, technical difficulty. Uh, so Counselor Richter, uh, we got your first item, if you, you can carry on, uh, with your second item regarding the, uh, regarding the minutes. Counselor Richter?
Looks like she is left, maybe she's trying to re, re-enter back again, Jack.
Okay, so what we'll do, I see Counselor Arneson has her hand up also. And then, um, we'll go back to Counsel Richter, she comes back, Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, as per corrections to the minutes, I'd like to point out that item, I'm looking at the minutes on page thirty-three, it's oh four. Um, the vote does not accurately reflect, um, my vote. So it was defeated, however, it doesn't list my name as somebody who voted against that, and I would like that to be in the public record. For, so that's oh four.
Four, okay, so we'll cut back on that too, thank you.
Thank you.
But, uh, can I, my hands up, can you see my hand?
Yes, uh, Counsel Davis, yeah.
Okay, um, I, 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 uh, just to clarify, it, it just says who voted aga- uh, who voted against it, so, so, okay, forget that.
Yeah, so.
Uh, Mayor Proz, I think that, uh, while we're waiting for Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I'm back.
Oh, okay, okay, go ahead. Or, I'm sorry, Mayor Proz, what, what should I do?
So I'll go back to, if you want to finish, because we're just waiting for, I'll get Counsel Richter back on, so if you don't want to finish. Yes, so regarding the minutes.
I, I can hardly hear you guys now, so, okay, I'm wondering when I vote. Um, I, I wonder if there's a, maybe a clear way that we can vote, because sometimes I don't get my hand in the screen, I gotta get my hand in the screen. And, um, I just wonder, because a couple times you have said, well, oh, who's against it or who is opposed? And I don't know how we can do this, but, um, and it's hard when, um, I know, um, Counselor Arneson, uh, just has her picture there. But, uh, i- is it maybe better to just say who opposes?
Yeah, that's what I do, so I, I generally ask who's in favor, and then, what I need to know, uh, for the minutes is the names of the people who are opposed. So I wanna hear if some opposed and ask for the names. So you just sort of, uh, if you are opposed, just make sure that you let me know the names, and I'll read out the names that are opposed, that way it's clear to everybody. And maybe we have.
Okay, okay, I, I. Okay, that's all I need, thank you.
Thank you, okay, Counsel Richter, you're back on.
Thank you very much, and I apologize for that, I don't know what happened, but it was my, uh, mute thing, it was going off and non-Bob was correct. Uh, so anyway, going back to the, uh, uh, I had five items that I wanted to go through in the minute, starting with page three, the D five. I think we covered that one, Mr. Mayor, is that correct? About the delegation request?
Yes.
Okay. Now, on page seven, number E three. Where we amended the Tree Protection Advisory Committee, uh, to require that two-thirds of the committee members be Township of Langley residents. The minutes actually say residence or Township of Langley business owners. I do not recall saying business owners, I recall saying township residents. So I'm wondering if we need to check the audio tape on that one.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that too, thank you.
Because that will have to be corrected, I, I think. Okay, uh, page, um, seven as well, item E four, the Heritage Alteration Permit. Um, I recall having an extensive discussion about the need for a public input opportunity. And I thought that that was what we were going to do, which is why I voted in favor of it. But there's, again, no record in the minutes that there will be a public input opportunity. So is this another thing that we need to go back and check the audio tape on?
Good afternoon, um, there wasn't a discussion about a public input opportunity, but there was no motion for it, and the subsequent vote was to, um, pass or issue the permit for it, so there'd be no requirement at this point. The, uh, other discussion we had about public input was to do with the, uh, Alder Grove in property. And that public input opportunity is ongoing at this moment.
Yeah, we'd, and I, I do recall the public input opportunity, but I thought we were also going to be doing it for those, uh, uh, the Heritage Alteration Permit.
It was advertised when the, uh, prior to the Heritage Alteration Permit coming to council, and I remember the discussion around that, and it had already been done.
Okay. All right, then, um, with respect to, uh, the next one, it's, uh, page twenty-seven, item H two. And, uh, this is about the, um, the new cemetery going in in South Langley. And the motion that I had put forward was intended to clarify that all phases would be, I had originally said non-denominational, and, uh, Counselor Whitmarsh corrected me saying that non-denominational means, um, Christian only, and that was not my intent. My intent was to say all faiths in all phases, so that we're not going to have, um, uh, what we're really gonna end up having is something more of a community cemetery as opposed to having a regional cemetery. Now, I'm worried about the wording, because, um, and I recall that I think the correction was to use the word multi-faith, which we defined as meaning, um, all faiths, including no faith. And that's not what's reflected in these minutes. So I'm wondering, how do we get that change made?
Seems like that wording is good.
Uh, thank you, worship, I'm trying to find it now, it looks like we have the two components which were no face and be included, and as well that it be throughout the entire, um, I guess, property. And I'm just seeing what the language says from the amendment. Worship, I suppose it's best we go back to the tape, because I do recall the discussion that it showed all face including no face, that, that's, uh, I think self-evident, that can be simply noted. And the issue then of, on all phases, I'm trying to find the original language to see if this was the First Amendment. We have the First Amendment, the amendment was divided. So Amendment one does stipulate the priority be given to Township of Langley residents.
Maybe I can help here.
Well, if you go to the amendment on, uh, page twenty-six, the First Amendment that I put on, that a covenant be placed on title that states that all phases are non-denominational with priority given to Township of Langley residents. And then that got divided, the priority given to Township of Langley residents was carried. But then the non-denominational, uh, as I recall, we replaced that with the word multi-faith, including all faiths and no faith.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm saying, because this is, again, the focus on the wording in there now is all faith beliefs and backgrounds. And I'm wanting to make sure that the intent is that each and every one of those phases will welcome anybody. It's not gonna be restricted to any particular religious group.
Your worship, I think I, I forgot it now, because we have the original amendment as Counselor Richter has outlined. There was then the motion to divide, and then there was a question on the First Amendment, which is in that priority be given to all Township of Langley residents, so that would apply to all phases. Um, is that, was that the intent, that it priority be given to all Township of Langley residents in all phases, because that's the way it would read now?
Yeah, so Township of Langley residents in all phases, but it should also say, um, multi-faith in all phases.
So then we come to the next amendment, which then, now that we know that it's applying to all phases and covers Township of Langley residents, the questions then are, it was, uh, the words non-denominational be replaced with welcome to individuals of all faith beliefs and backgrounds. I think it's a simple matter of then including all face, including those of no faith beliefs and backgrounds.
Okay, but the intent is that all, each and every one of those phases will not be restricted to any particular group of people, is that what's, is that clear?
Yes, I think it is with the Second Amendment.
In retrospect, what comes, it, it always comes down to what's in the wording, and I'm not sure the wording is clear here.
So then the, the amendment as carried would read effectively, priority be given to Township of Langley residents in all phases, and that the words non-denominational, I'll rephrase that, that the, um, covenant be placed on the title that states that all phases are to be re, are to be for individuals of all faiths, including non-faith beliefs and backgrounds, so, and that would be applying to all phases as well, so the combination takes care of it.
Okay. So do we need to restate that revised?
Correct.
Yeah.
We need to include, including non-faiths, uh, in the, between the words faiths and beliefs, I think that's what they make it clear.
Your worship, are you gonna let others, others speak to this?
Yes, I'm waiting for Counsel Richter to answer.
Yeah, but I, I think what the confusion may have come from, I believe we replaced the word non-denominational with multi-faith, and then at the end, um, uh, I had requested that we define what we mean by multi-faith. So I'm thinking that the motion has to say multi-faith with a definition of multi-faith. What we're seeing right now in the minutes is a definition that I don't think is, uh, robust enough to include what's the, the intent is, which is all faiths, in all phases.
Yeah, what staff will do is review the, uh, audio and the video, because that's really the, the best way to look at and capture what was stated. If the motion is incorrect, or if motion is something, uh, you want added, then it can be brought back as another motion. Right now, I think we're just looking at the minutes, do they reflect the discussion, do they reflect the motion? So staff can look back on that, and if, if it isn't what the intent was, then, uh, perhaps I could revisit the amendment.
Okay, so will, will a revised wording of this come back to council?
Uh, Mr. Backen, I think once you've revisited the audio, we can, this, we can't reword the motion if that's what was done at the meeting. However, at subsequent meeting, uh, once we have all the information, a further amendment could be made, is that, Mr. Backen, maybe?
That's correct, your worship, in dealing with the issue, however, I, I think we can certainly recirculate it once the minutes are, are corrected, because it's a summary correction where the emotion would read that a covenant be placed on title that states that all phases are, uh, welcoming individuals of all faiths, including those that have no faith, and from all beliefs and backgrounds. Uh, with priority then given to Township of Langley residents. That's effectively what the motion now reads after these amendments, sorry, after the, after the discussion, because there is a word missing, or a few words missing, in terms of including those that have, that are of a non-faith, and we'll make that correction on the.
Well, and I think the, one of the words that's missing is multi-faith, I think we do still have to have multi-faith in there. And that, as I recall, was the original correction to replace non-denominational with multi-faith, but we also decided we need to define what multi-faith is.
So I think for clarity, rather than stipulate multi-faith, the minutes reflected individuals of all faiths, and then there was the part that's missing, including those with no faith, because that's, um, incorporating the definition without creating the defining term. So in that way, we effectively put the definition into the Second Amendment, because that was the interpretation and the intent we thought.
Okay, but is, is it strong enough, is the wording strong enough there to make it clear that what the intent was, which was this is not gonna be closed to anybody?
Right.
There'll be no phases that will not welcome everybody.
I, I think so, because it would read, covenant be placed on the title that states that all phases are open to, uh, welcome individuals of all faiths, including those with no faith of any beliefs or backgrounds, uh, with, that's the first concept, and the second one then is with priority to be given, uh, to Township of Langley residents.
Okay, but we're, we're still missing something there, I think, Mr. Backen.
Yeah.
I think we're missing multi-faith, yeah.
So I, I think he'll recirculate that, and if it's, we can, we can deal with it. So Counsel, uh, Counsel Richter is before you, is that complete your?
Uh, ye- yes, um, as long as we're gonna get it back to council, because the minutes need to be for future reference clear.
But a point of order, your worship.
Counselor Long.
Thank you very much, I think if we're discussing the meaning of the minutes, and we all were at the meeting, we should all have perhaps something to say about it. I know what Counsel Richter's very concerned, but I had a suggestion that might fix it all up, uh, I don't know if others wanted to speak as well, your worship.
So what we're doing is just errors or missions on the, on the minutes?
Yeah, well, I know that we, we had the word multi-faith, and it was confusing, but I would say the words regardless of faith could be put in there, and that, would that not cover everything? Regardless of faith.
So Mr. Backen's going to take that.
Welcome individuals regardless of faith, beliefs and background. Thank you.
And then it'll be recirculated, that'll be recirculated, Mr. Backen, is that, okay, thank you. Okay, um, I don't see any further discussion in the minutes.
No, I have one more.
Oh, okay, sorry, you finished, okay.
My last, my last one is on page thirty, item number M, the Metro Vancouver Report. And it just says there, Counselor Richter reported she attended a Parks Board Committee meeting, but I also, uh, noted that parks usage increased sixty-seven percent over the first two months of the COVID, um, uh, cut, uh, shutdown. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that park usage is up significantly, uh, which reinforces how important our parks are.
Okay, uh, Counsel Long, did you, your hands still up, did you still have something?
No, I'm covered there, I put the hand up to try and help on that.
Okay, thank you. So I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any, any opposed? Thank you unanimously. You know, we went to delegations, and the first delegation is Ms. Karen Zukas from the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival.
Over there, great. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, my name is Karen Zuckas, I live at nine three five two Sing Street in Fort Langley. Um, thank you for this opportunity to come forward on behalf of the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival Society, uh, to request a one-time expansion of the Major Festivals Grant to support a virtual jazz and arts festival, uh, this year. Uh, at the time we submitted our grant application, we didn't anticipate the impact, uh, that the COVID nineteen pandemic would have on our ability to deliver a festival that attracted ten thousand people. Following the postponement of our twenty-nine in-person festival in July, and then rescheduled till September, um, and restrictions on the public gatherings, we were determined and committed to find a way to continue to celebrate and support jazz, music, art, community and the village of Fort Langley. So we're thrilled as leaders to be in the community, to be here today with you to talk about the festival and what the benefits are going to be for a reimagined live version of the twenty-twenty Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. Our intention with the festival is to present Fort Langley, the birthplace of British Columbia, as a destination spot uh, for future visits, uh, to provincial, national and international jazz fans. And we believe the festival benefits, uh, rationale and research, uh, supports this request for the funding expansion. The twenty-twenty edition of the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival is about to be the most creative and widely watched version of the festival in our short, but already strong history. The benefits to our virtual festival attendees, uh, to our artists, to our partners and to the community will be significant, and they're growing, um, every day. Um, and here are some of the benefits, uh, for this year's festival. The festival is going to have an increased reach, actually beyond our ten thousand in-person, um, capacity, because we're not limited by geographic boundaries. Um, we anticipate, and our goal is ten thousand festival attendees, um, actual attendees, fifty thousand visitors to our website, which will, um, house where the, the people will come to watch the festival, and a twenty-five percent increase in social media. Um, we will have enhanced, enhanced audience interaction with the festival, it's gonna be much more than a video stream. You may have seen a lot of virtual festivals where it's just streaming, um, of a video or a concert. Our festival isn't going to look like that, it's going to be interactive, we're going to have a, a host like, uh, uh, like you see on, on television programs, um, artists interacting with each other, artists interacting with the host, on-screen chats, contests, messaging, and fans integrated actually into, into the show. Uh, we're going to showcase Fort Langley and the community, and the artistic and cultural aspects, um, and that's going to be through pre-recorded videos, uh, that we're going to be doing of musicians, sponsors, and representatives from key historical and cultural venues, um, in the village, and those will be interwoven uh, throughout the, the festival and throughout the, the music programming. There will be economic benefits as well to, uh, Fort Langley and surrounding areas, and that's through a virtual marketplace, uh, that we'll be having. And it's going to be a space where people can go, where they can, uh, find out and learn about the sponsors, about businesses in the community in Fort Langley. They'll be able to click on, there'll be a thumbnail for each business that wants to participate, and will click through to their website or their Facebook. So that'll be an opportunity for local businesses, uh, to promote their organization, their business. And overall, the, the festival is going to raise the profile and attendance of the festival for future years. Um, as a result of the work and investment that we're making today, um, in this year, the four, the festival will be positioned as one of Canada's most innovative, we believe, and exciting, uh, festivals, and bringing it, and we anticipate that many people will want to come and, and to the festival next year. So in addition to the fest, these festival benefits, the rationale, which we'd really like to spend a bit of time talking to you about, for awarding the Township of Langley Major Festivals Grant, there's four key points I'd like to, to emphasize. And that is, is awarding of the Major Festivals Grant to the festival, it will ensure compliance, uh, with the federal grant funding that we have received from Heritage Canada, which was contingent on municipal financial support. Um, and that's one of the key benefits, our key requirements. Um, it also aligns with funding that we've received from the provincial and federal government, which have also supported us pivoting to a, a, you know, virtual festival. Um, it also demonstrates leadership from the township for continued support of arts, culture and heritage. Um, and finally, virtual jazz festivals and events are happening throughout Canada and throughout North America, including the Township of Langley's upcoming virtual parade. Uh, so for these reasons, um, we would like to encourage and ask, request, um, that you approve, um, the extension of, uh, funding for a virtual festival. Thank you.
Thank you very much, I've got several questions here, I'm sorry, Counsel Richter.
Uh, yes, I would just like to know why, um, ten thousand dollars is needed to put on a virtual event?
Thank you for the question, the, uh, cost of the festival, um, the only cost that we don't have with a virtual event is operational costs. But what we have instead is production costs. So we still have to pay the musicians, um, we still have to pay for the production costs, we still have marketing costs, and then we have infrastructure operational costs, um, that run throughout the course of the year for the festival. So the, the funds are, are required to support the overall festival, um, that is, that is needed to deliver, to, to deliver it. So the costs remain pretty much the same with the exception of washrooms, renting washrooms and garbage and multiple stages and such.
Okay, and are these production and operational or production costs, um, are, are those monies going to Langley residents, or are they going outside of Langley?
Yeah, most are, our mandate is local first wherever possible, so we always look to, for any of our, um, production or any of our costs, we always try and go local. At the same time, we also have to be, look at our costs, so we have to, we do quotes, usually we do, uh, requests for quotes, or we look at multiple quotes in order to ensure that, um, that we're getting the best value for our dollars, so we can manage prudently and carefully. So one of the criteria we look at is local, um, and then we look at, you know, the, the actual cost, um, as well. So wherever possible, we try and hire, hire local.
Okay, so with these, uh, grants that you're getting federally and provincially, um, I don't understand why they're tied to local monies if there's not an actual physical event. Like, if the feds want to promote, uh, digital, then the feds should pay for it.
Yeah, what's the, what the, um, the grant, the grant we received from Heritage Canada was before the virtual festival. So in order to qualify for Heritage Canada funding, so when I submitted the grant back in October, um, it required a commitment, uh, from the municipality saying that they, um, support, financially will support, um, the festival. Um, and if we don't have that letter of, that support, that form completed, we don't qualify for the grant. Um, so that was, that was conditional on even submitting the grant back in October. Since that time, um, the funding that we've received, uh, federally and provincially, from the federal and provincial governments, all have supported us pivoting, uh, to a virtual festival. Um, so they've all said, absolutely, you can use the funds, even though they were granted for an in-person festival, all of them have said you can use it to support a, a, a virtual festival, because we still want to support the arts, we still want to support culture, and we still want to support community festivals, because we believe it's important for the. for the continuation of, of these festivals and advance to continue.
And are the higher levels of government requiring the township to put in ten grand?
No, no, they're not requiring.
So we can just send a letter saying that we support you going ahead with this and you'll still get your federal monies?
I'm not sure. I haven't asked. It was, it was, it was conditional when we've been approved for the Heritage Canada grant that required that municipal funding, but we haven't received the money yet. It's in the mail. The cheque is coming. So they haven't come back and asked us to confirm that funding.
Okay, and one last question. What percentage of the musicians will be Langley musicians?
The musicians we pull from, they're all, they're all lower mainland musicians. There's not many jazz musicians out in Fort Langley, professional jazz musicians. So there's a submission process that's involved with the festival where bands have to submit their information, their video recordings, social media and such. And if they're, and there's criteria that's required to meet the selection of the artists. So if there's an artist from Fort Langley, by all means, and we do have one band, I know for certain that's from the Langley area. But they really do come from throughout the lower mainland, throughout British Columbia in order to produce a festival that is, attracts people from across British Columbia, from, from the Fraser Valley that wants to see artists. So there's just not the number of jazz artists that live in the township of Langley that we could call.
That's almost like a great argument for going for the feds and the provincial funding.
Yeah, but it's, yeah, and, and municipal support is, I believe it's important to show the municipalities supporting a community festival that is bringing in, that is attracting people from all across British Columbia and Canada. I believe it's important that the township of Langley be seen as a supporter of that.
Yeah. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councillor Ferguson. Councillor Ferguson, I think you're muted. Oh, you're not muted. We just can't hear you. Councillor Ferguson, we still don't hear you. So maybe you can check your setting if you're on the right mic. You're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Still don't hear you. You might want to check the setting if you're on the right microphone. Sometimes it's where it says mute, there's a little up arrow. Click on that. Councillor Ferguson?
Is that any better now?
Yeah, we got you. Yeah, I can hear you. Let me start, let me start.
Okay, can you hear me, Karen?
I can.
Okay, so I, I got your email today, your power presentation. It was very good, excellent presentation. I wanted to know, the very first question, is anything at all going to be going on in Fort Langley Live?
We will have three of our ticketed events. Everything else is free. We'll have, we're calling them small intimate, respecting the fifty capacity limit. So that will be the Friday Night Blue Show inside the fort, the Saturday night concert, which will be at Chief Seapass, that's a jazz concert, and the Sunday evening concert, which will be the Jazz Education Faculty Concert. So those will have fifty people because that's the maximum at this point that we can have. We will also have, we're planning a pop-up, pop-up concert. We don't, we won't be advertising or promoting it as such, but it's going to be a Latin jazz band and we're going to be having Latin jazz lessons leading up to, that we're going to be offering online so people can learn a few samba moves. Then they can dance along in their own living rooms or backyards or whatever for that Latin jazz band dance party.
Okay, so now, now I wanted to follow through with, with your numbers. In your presentation and your PowerPoint, you talked about, you know, the getting a, a number of people out, thousands of people out, the increase in social media. And I know, I know you're doing things different. But it, it seems to me as, and I can only use myself and some of my friends that, anyway, that are busy out in the community, they're riding bikes or walking or whatever. Seems to be as the weather changes, more and more people like to get out and get away from the computer because they've had so many of these computer meetings and computer events and they want to get out. And I was wondering if you could attract them, you know, in your presentation, knowing that the weather's changing and, you know, it looked like your numbers looked great, adventurous, if I may say.
Well, our, our numbers were high last year for, for people to visit our website and social media. So this is building on it. We're also going to have a marketing campaign that will be for Western Canada. So those numbers are coming from not just locally, but from Western Canada viewers and such. The other thing is, is our festival is going to be, so we'll heavily promote it in advance. We'll be doing a number of things so people can have some fun, like backyard watch parties. We'll have contests who, where we can, there'll be a prize. We bring the, the festival to you with a big screen television and audio visual and a cooler full of drinks and snacks and such. So there'll be a lot of buzz and excitement leading up to the festival through our marketing efforts that we believe will attract viewers as well. It is a one day compared to a whole weekend. Many virtual jazz festivals are running it over a weekend. So we, we will have the Friday evening absolutely, and then all day Saturday and Saturday evening. But on Sunday, it's a jazz education workshop. So that's going to be for young people who want to come and have master classes with our, our faculty, our, our jazz faculty. So we're confident that we're going to pull in the people, even if it is on a September weekend. And if history looks anything like it, you know, that's P and E weekend. And we know what happens on P and E weekend, it always rains. Not that we're counting on rain.
Well, it doesn't rain when I'm there, but I've been going there since I was one-year-old. Hey, listen, one last thing is, on the Heritage Canada, to follow through of what councillor Richter has already said, what does Heritage Canada provide as far as procurement?
Procurement?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't.
How much they give you?
Oh, how much do they give us? Oh, Heritage Canada, the first, they gave us two grants. So they gave us one grant of forty-two thousand. And then they followed that up with a, what they call an emergency COVID amount. So what they gave us was twenty-five percent of our ground in addition for COVID emergency funding. So they gave another ten thousand two hundred.
Okay, thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Coombe.
Hi, thank you for your presentation. So I guess my question was, I think you might have answered it, and it was the time, like what, what are the hours? And how do you see people sort of tuning in and, and will there be a way for maybe after the event is over that you can sort of use this sort of for the future to sort of maybe promote the festival for next year? And, and did you do any of that in the past to like have your, your past videos or past festivals that you were able to sort of promote like for this, this, this year?
Thank you for, those are great questions. The festival will be spread out. So the Friday night will just be the blue show. And we know that that's super popular. We have the Powder Blues Band booked. We're, we're just liaising with Ottawa right now for the, the park to make sure that we can go in there and film from there. It will be a private event, won't be open to the public. And we know that that's going to attract lots of people because Powder Blues Band is popular. It will be a live stream event. So it'll be actually ticketed. There'll be a small, you know, amount of, of, it's our one tiny source of revenue. Our revenue has significantly dropped, obviously, our ticket revenue this year, which is why we're relying more on government, government funding this year and less on, on ticket revenue. Then Saturday, it will go from ten until five PM. So ten in the morning, we'll start off with the Mardi Gras Strolling Parade once again. And that will be actually live streamed and we'll be doing something in advance where people can make their own Mardi Gras masks. In advance, we'll do some workshops and with some, a recording of a Mardi Gras song. So they can actually have their own community strolling parades in their own, own community if they wish. But those that want to join in in Fort Langley for the strolling, we'll keep socially safe social distance. And we'll stroll down Glover as we have in previous years. We'll go all day until five PM. We, we did a lot of research before with stakeholders to find out how long they wanted concerts, like the length of a performance and how much they were willing to watch at a time. And what we heard was one hour slots with two bands. So twenty-minute, twenty, kind of twenty-minute time slots for each, each band, but not just straight streaming. As I said, with all sorts of interactivity going on in between with interviews and cutouts and contests. So it's not just sitting in front of a computer, watching a concert. That's not what our festival is going to be at all.
So one, one other question, I know, having had to write grants many, many times, a lot of these people want to know how you're going to measure success.
Yeah.
So what would be your measure of success? I know it's, you have the one-day event, but I mean, hopefully be able to see that people are going to watch it after the fact. Is, is there a way for, for you to explain how that will be done?
Yeah, so our analytics, we have spent time thinking about that because it is important to measure success. So we'll be looking at visits to our website where, where you will be able to go to, to the, see the virtual festival. We're anticipating fifty thousand. That's our goal, is fifty thousand visits. We're actually, a number of viewers, like how many people are actually watching? So collectively, we're looking for ten thousand in actual viewers over the course of the weekend. We're also be measuring all our social media analytics. We're working with Jelly Digital, which is a local Fort Langley digital marketing firm. So they'll be doing all of our metrics. And we'll actually be able to pull out specifically in the social media metrics, the number of people from the Langley area. Again, compared to other cities and compared to the province, compared to other places in Western Canada and Canada. So we'll be able to get quite granular with our analytics, both website and social media. We'll also look at things like ticket sales as well, like how many, how many, how many people bought the live stream concerts? And then we always do a survey afterwards. So we're doing a survey, a post-festival survey. And then all of the videos that are shot, because they're pre, most of them are going to be pre-recorded and then streamed. They'll all live on our website for the entire year. So people will be able to go and see them afterwards as, as well. And then we do an overall festival highlight video, which we've done every year, that kind of gives the behind the scenes and look what's the excitement that's going on throughout the weekend. So we'll do that again this year too.
Well, without COVID, I don't think I would have ever believed that I could ever enjoy a virtual choir. And having, you know, watched so many of the choirs, you know, the last, over the last couple of months. So, so yeah, I believe it's possible. So the best of luck.
Thank you.
Councillor Woodward.
Yeah, no, thanks for the, I also got a copy of the presentation. So thank you for saying that in advance. Can you confirm for me again, the other grants that you've applied for and successfully received? You just mentioned provincial government, federal government and Heritage Canada. Can you confirm every grant that you've successfully confirmed?
Yes, I can. I'd be happy to. From Creative BC, which is the provincial government, they have provided us with eighty-seven thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. From BC Gaming, ten thousand. From Destination BC, which is all designated to marketing, fourteen thousand. BC Arts Council, four thousand. So that's a total of a hundred and fifty, fifteen thousand two hundred and fifty from the province. And then from the federal government, Heritage Canada, fifty, fifty-one thousand in total. And summer students, which is funded through Canadian government. We have received funding for three students, eight thousand dollars. So it's a total of two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty, two hundred and thirty-three, two fifty in funding from the federal government and the provincial government.
Okay, so the ten thousand that's being contemplated here within the major grants festival category would be five percent typically of your, of your total grant funding?
Five percent. That's not five, is it? Two hundred and thirty-three, two.
A bit less than five. I was rounding it up, actually.
Yeah, I think it's, I have to look at my calculator. Hold on. Two hundred and thirty-three, two fifty, times five percent is eleven, yeah, you're right, eleven thousand.
Okay. Oh, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, you were right. Bang on. We're close. Someone talking?
Mr. Mayor, you're muted. Jack, you're muted.
Okay.
Okay, councillor Richter, you're on. Yeah, I think you're on.
Yes, so I just want to follow up on what councillor Woodward's question was. So in actual fact, this, which is really a Western Canada event, is getting two hundred and thirty-three thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars from federal and provincial sources. And it's not clear that our ten grand, like if you're already getting two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, why would you need ten thousand from property taxes? Would a letter, and I think I asked this before, if we just sent a letter of support saying, yeah, hey, it's a good regional thing or it's a good Western Canada thing and we support it, would that be sufficient?
Well, I would say the, first of all, the festival is, is not positioned as a Western Canadian festival.
You just said it was, you just said it was being marketed to Western Canada.
We're marketing to Western Canada in order to attract the numbers, but it is still a community festival, a community arts, music and arts festival. And it still will, we will, we will still be known as a Fort Langley Jazz and Arts Festival. The intention by marketing it to Western Canadians is that in the future, that those people next year for the twenty-twenty-one festival, that they come to Fort Langley, that they see the beauty of the, the village, they see the quaintness, they see the historic and cultural aspects of it. And they see what a great fun festival that we have, and it becomes a tourist attraction. So it becomes an economic revenue stream in the future. Like other community festivals like Castle, which is a very small community, and they have a Castle Jazz Festival and people come for the weekend and they bring a huge economic value to the area. Or Salmon Arm does that with their blues festival, small town, and they market beyond their region in order to attract people in the future to come. So it becomes an economic driver.
Okay, but you still didn't clarify, if you're getting two hundred and thirty-three thousand from federal and provincial grants, why do you need money from us? It seems to me you got a lot of money there.
We do, we do. But as I mentioned earlier, is, is we've also had less, our revenue stream for tickets is, is significantly reduced and also our sponsorship funding as well. So our three sources of revenue for the festival are, is government funding, ticket revenue. And then the third area is sponsorships. Well, right now, it's very hard to get sponsorship funding in light of the financial, and they have live COVID, quite frankly. And then our ticket revenue is significantly reduced. So we are relying on our government funders and our government partners, including the community. And we really believe it's important that the township of Langley do, does show its leadership and support of, of important community festivals like the Fort Langley Jazz and Arts. So that we know, based on our research, is an important festival that residents and businesses feel is important to the community. And it's important for the continuation of that festival, that we get the support from our, our partners, both municipal, provincial and federal.
Okay, and, and certainly I can see that if we have a, a real-time venue as opposed to a digital venue. But I'm, again, I'm just looking at these numbers and saying, you've told us you've got maybe one group from Langley that will be participating in this. You've got two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. I would think for the money you've already got, you can do a pretty good digital event without using property tax dollars. That's all I'm saying.
Good question. Thank you. Councillor Anderson.
Yes, thank you, worship. Thank you for coming today and giving us the presentation as well as the PowerPoint, which I looked at and found it very interesting. I, I think a lot of the consideration, if I could just distill some of the comments, are coming around the fact that relative to the amount of monies that you have currently received or will be receiving from the federal and provincial government, that there is concern that this ten thousand dollars from the township of Langley is either A, not necessary, or B, doesn't really direct itself towards what our objective has historically been as to why we have these funds available. So what I wanted to know from your perspective is whether or not you think that given the financing that you do have, if you were successful in getting ten thousand dollars from the township of Langley, could that be organized so that it addresses an earmarked proposition that would be focused on this township of Langley area? If, is that something that, that you could consider? Could, could it be carved off that way?
Yes, thank you for the question, councillor Anderson. And yes, I believe it could be to specifically township or Langley, Langley activities. And that one is, is certainly the parade is one activity. The pop-up stage performance, which will, locals will be able to enjoy. And also some of the marketing are proportionate to, to Langley, some of the marketing activities, considering it more like a tourism-related expense to market Fort Langley through some of our marketing efforts in proportion of those. And there, as I mentioned, there is a couple of, of local bands that we will be hiring. So funds could be allocated specifically towards those bands. of local bands that we will be hiring, so funds could be allocated specifically towards those bands. Um the Chief Seapass Theater um is a local venue, we're paying uh and the Community Hall. Um so we're paying venue rental charges for those um venues. And then then the marketplace overall is, um we will be making the marketplace available to resident, uh to the businesses in Fort Langley at a significantly reduced rate, then we'll be charging businesses outside of the community.
Um thank you very much for that, that's very helpful. Um so while you were speaking about that, I wondered about an initiative that we've discussed in the past as a possible use for some of our community grant fundings, and that would be related to these uh sort of neighborhood parties that you're suggesting could happen, so I'm wondering if some of these monies could potentially be allocated to different uh community groups who wished to sponsor uh a party themselves, but need some funding for that to go forward. I just wondered if that was something that might be possible.
Absolutely, part of our promotional and marketing um efforts um this year will be to encourage those community gatherings and groups, you know, respecting the the social distancing and the and the numbers of of people um that are allowed um by the chief medical officer, so, but we are planning absolutely those kind of things, encouraging the community um to get involved and to have their own um jazz festival watch parties in their backyard. Um and we provide kind of the kit um to help them do that. And so uh we could, and we, there'll be a couple of contests that encourage that participation, so we can ensure that some of that funding is allocated specifically to the the Langley area, the township of Langley area.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, just know for the questions, thank you for your presentation. It's very good to see you, thank you.
Thank you.
Sweet, well, the next delegation is Danielle Ford.
Yeah, council's waiting for you, delegation. I'll I'll come, Karen, if you just want to walk this way.
Um hello, everybody. Uh good afternoon, Mayor Froze and council members. Um my name is Christie McIntosh of four-six-four-eight-two-hundred-and-eighteen Langley Street, Berlin, Langley. And I am here on behalf of some other uh Langley um township mothers uh of uh some aquatic users, and specifically they are Danielle Schroeder, Melissa Friesen, Heather McNeil, Cindy Erickson, Nicole Marashak and myself. And thank you for having us. Um so who are we? We are the parents of the Langley Olympian Swim Club. We are a group of two hundred and sixty swimmers, age five to eighteen, plus master swimmers that swim for ten or eleven months of the year. Uh the national group, the senior group, consists of approximately twenty swimmers who typically swim uh eight times per week, approximately sixteen hours in the water uh total per week, and they can free, compete across Canada. Um on uh March ninth, we recently won the B C Winter Provincial Championships, and extremely proud of this. Um five of our members were supposed to go to Olympic Trials in April, which, as you know, was postponed. We also have three swimmers who have been chosen for uh to swim for Canada's Development Team, and we also have four swimmers selected for the Swim B C Development Team. But importantly, we also have young kids learning how to race, um many that will become lifeguards and older kids um that are looking to get scholarships to go to university. Why are we here? Well, um for our athletes, like so many, these past past few months have been very hard. Um many of our kids, swimming is all that they know, and they are resorting to other ways to train. There is no way to replicate training in a pool. Um some of our athletes, and you may have seen this in your PowerPoint slide, I apologize, I don't know if you have that in front of you. Um Gracie swam in a a three-foot pool for these last couple of months uh while tethered to a fence um in very cold hose water um uh starting in early April. And Sevi and Finn um have been pretending to swim in their garage and incurring some um nasty blisters while using exercise plant bands. And again, like you just cannot substitute, um there's no substitute for a pool. So we're here today to ask why the Township Langley, um Township of Langley pools are closed. Other municipalities are open. Um our team needs to swim and to be coached together. We just feel this isn't fair, we we are disadvantaged uh as other groups are getting back to training. Um we expect to send many athletes to Olympic Trials next April. And the township has a long history of supporting and showcase showcasing its athletes using its very, very amazing facilities. And so when will you tell us? Other municipalities have communicated their plans. Um at this time, we have been unable to get any information regarding an opening date or pool availability for the swim club to date. Furthermore, Walnut Grove is getting maintenance work done, and we need to know what is the anticipated completion date so that we can plan. Um winter aquatic groups need to make plans for registration and staffing, and we usually do this in the summer. And therefore, we need to know if Walnut Grove and W C Blair will be open and to what capacity in the fall. Finally, the kids are even asking us not to go on summer holidays because they want to be around when the pools open and they don't know when that will be. That's how anxious they're getting. So why are pools important? Well, Parks and Recreation has a response and that uh responsibility for implementing programs that support wellness. Uh pools support many things to many people. Um swimming is an affordable family activity. Um and in a heightened, in a in a time of heightened anxiety, they are paramount for optimal physical and mental health. Pools are particularly important for the well-being of all of our children. So as concerned residents and taxpayers of the Township of Langley, we respectfully ask that you open the Alder Grove Pool immediately, provide transparency with regards to your decision-making, and outline and publish your timeline to open the remaining pools. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh there are some questions for council, I have one question for you. You've mentioned other municipalities, um have they opened their indoor pools or just outdoor pools or?
Uh no, it's pretty much been exclusively outdoor. Um I know we we just heard last week that Abbotsford's going to be opening their indoor pools in the beginning of um August, but yeah, generally speaking, it's all been outdoor pools.
Okay, thank you, yeah, that's, but Abbotsford you say has opened their outdoor pool?
Uh no, they haven't opened, they they actually have elected to not open their outdoor pools yet, they're going to open their indoor pools at the beginning of um of August, uh but the city of Langley and Surrey are all opening their outdoor pools at this time now.
Council Whitmarsh.
Um yeah, thank you for coming today. Um just a question uh for your, with your club. Uh which pools have have you been using? We we just have the one uh outdoor pool that I understand you used your club, and is that correct? That Alder Grove's the one outdoor and then you're also using indoor facilities for your uh Langley Olympians?
Yeah, that's correct, so um on, before today, we have not used any pools since, um I believe the last day was March sixteen.
Okay, and what be prior to the the COVID events, what what were the primary uh locations for the swim club?
Okay, so uh the primary uh locations actually was Walnut Grove um for the majority of the pool. We also used um W C Blair, and um when Walnut Grove and W C Blair um closed, we also used Alder Grove um and at Christmas time, yeah, so when there was actually closures of the other pool for maintenance, we also incorporated Alder Grove into our um uh training schedule. But primarily Walnut Grove.
Okay, and and the Langley Olympians is a also a partner, uh do they, oh, they have the Abbots, is it the Abbotsford Olympians as well? They're at the same club or how does that work?
Uh yeah, I would say it's a partnership, um but they are much, much smaller, the pools that they have access to are much smaller, um they are opening um for uh like I said, at the beginning of August, um they do not have the capacity to support our club.
Right, okay, and are you aware why um Abbotsford has chosen not to open their outdoor pools and only their indoor?
From what I understand, that in March, they had a very, very small um uh, what's the word? Um they asked uh their membership act, our membership, um they asked people to uh say what they wanted to do, they had, I I guess, some kind of um little referendum. Um I I understand that very few people participated, but, and this was in March, I guess. And the thing to consider is in March, I guess, nobody knew how long um, you know, closures were going to take place for. Um and they elected actually to open their um indoor pools as soon as possible. So this may have been when they thought, you know, COVID was only going to cause a closure for a month, and maybe thought they sort of thought that the indoor pools, you know, they would rather just do open the indoor pools as soon as possible in, you know, April or May. I, you know, it's un, it's unclear what the thinking was behind that at that time, because they, we're we're not sure. Nobody knew how long it was going to be.
Right, okay, and my my last question is uh, you're sort of representing Langley Olympians and the swim club, but have you had conversations with some of the other kinds of swim clubs, like diving clubs or synchronized clubs or those sorts of things?
Um yeah, informal, um the thing, we we all have different needs. Um some of us, like, for example, the diving clubs, it's harder harder for them to swim outdoors. Um so, y- you know, because not a lot of the outdoor pools actually have sufficient diving facilities. Um but uh, so not at this time.
Right, okay, thanks very much.
Council Whitmarsh.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh yeah, thank you, okay, thank you for coming today. Um actually, I'm a I'm a pool user, recreation center user, so I mean, I'd love to see uh these pools and recreation centers open quickly too. Um I know you're the Olympians, the great organization, um knowing a number of the people that went through and you the owner and manager over the years. Uh I knew you have banners and successes of world championships, Olympic records and everything all over our pools and all our facilities, and you guys should certainly be complimented for what you've done.
Thank you.
Have you ever sat down with our staff and and thought about some solutions coming forward with a knowing this COVID, knowing the fifty people spacing? And maybe, I'm not sure how, but an hour here, an hour there, or just some other suggestions, have you had an opportunity to do that?
Uh we've actually had very uh a very difficult time actually make uh with communication, actually with um our Parks and Recreation um uh management.
Okay, that, because I I I hope that we can facilitate some of that, I mean, we can't change COVID, we can't change
Of course.
the province, but it certainly may be suggestions and seeing what other organization, what other communities are doing and all working together, I think that's something that we should try to facilitate that, and I'll I'll ask our staff to, and I'm sure the mayor will as well, to contact you and see if you've got any suggestions. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Council Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship, and thank you very much for coming today. Um I do know, based on the council inquiry as well as emails, we've been receiving that there is an increasing uh interest in pools and other recreational facilities, and what the timeline is from the township's perspective about uh safe reopening, and just, you know, to comment, as I'm sure you're aware, uh you know, the safety issue is paramount, given uh all the COVID uh protocols. So um my question actually, and I'm not sure if you can answer it at this time, but it has mostly to do with capacity, because I I've I've been researching and reviewing other communities, and it appears, and you've alluded to the fact, that different user groups have different needs. And so I'm wondering from your perspective, so if we have individuals who are training um for one discipline or another, the degree to which with social distancing and extra cleaning, et cetera, uh do you anticipate, for example, that all of your needs could potentially be met at one of our facilities as opposed to having, you know, them at three, for example? If if that was the example being offered?
Right, I think it would be fine, and partly because it's now summertime and, you know, our our schedules are actually more flexible with the student, you know, with students actually being able to come midday, um you know, later, things like that. So I think as uh the aquatic users users go, um their flexibles are more, or are are that, you know, they can use the the pools um more easily, so um other clubs have started to do it, uh y- you know, and the other thing is some of our our younger kids actually don't need as much swimming, apparently in the summer, as the older kids. Um so there's a bit of that as well, um but I I think it would be very easily achieved, actually, if if we uh could do this. Um we, you know, the phase two actually recommended that people go back to the pools, we're now in phase three. Um the Swim Canada and Swim B C have actually uh put, you know, forward their recommendations. Um uh the Return to Sport has as well, um it, this has got a lot of endorsements and a lot of you know, clubs have actually started to return to the pool um successfully.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council Rickert.
Uh yes, I just wanted to go back and clarify that I'm understanding what your request is here. Now, I I think at the beginning you said that there are two hundred and sixty families or two hundred and sixty?
Two hundred and sixty kids.
Two hundred and sixty kids, okay. And if we were to reopen the Alder Grove Pool,
Mm-hmm.
uh would the intent be that it would be for exclusive use of these swimmers? Or would it be open for everybody?
Oh, I think it would be open for everybody. Uh for example, I know um Al Anderson has actually opened recently, and the Langley Flippers are there. Uh they're swimming as a summer club, and um they also have public swims, so um this can be achieved actually by having smaller blocks than perhaps has happened in the past. Um you know, so instead of, let's say, a five-hour public swim, you could have a shorter public swim. Um so everybody can get in, and I I think actually that's the the goal of many um other uh outdoor pools.
Okay, and um and then just one more question, the two hundred and sixty children that are enrolled, are they all Langley residents?
Uh no, um similar as uh the school system in Langley.
Okay, so um like I'm just trying to balance out your your need for lane time with the need to make it open for the whole community, because the whole community is paying for the pool, right?
Of course, and and we do rent the lanes as well, so you know, that's it's, that's important to to um to note as well, but uh yeah, the, we have many, many, um all the women that were on the front of the page were all Langley residents. Um the, I would say the majority of our our membership are Langley residents, um but, you know, very seldom of the high schools.
Great, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Council Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you for coming. Um my question is uh um the, is there any competitions on the horizon that your kids are training for or? And and what has Swim Canada done? Like, not all communities are going to be able to, you know, have their pools open, so it's a little bit of a disadvantage for some of the clubs, so is there anything that Swim Canada said in regard to that?
Right, okay, so we are actually hoping to get back to competition in the fall. Um it's very hard to know, you know, exactly how the fall is going to be. Um you know, we're talking about having, starting off with smaller meets um so that we can, you know, do things uh safely, um and this would be more of the uh the senior athletes, actually, um having dual um dual meets, having time trials, things like this. Uh it it is hard to speculate at this time um how it will go, just like it's hard to, you know, speculate what school's going to be like in September. Um but this is the plan at this time.
Um one last question, um now if your kids are training, how many hours a day or a week would they need to sort of properly maintain their their level of swimming or, you know, just to to keep their training sort of in in
Right.
competitive with others?
Sure, so in the past, um we have done, um approximately, the senior group has done perhaps about sixteen hours a week um in the pool, and then maybe another four or five doing dryland. Um and then our provincial group, which is kind of our our junior athletes, um age ten, thirteen, um I would say have been sort of between eight and twelve per per um per week, depending on the the age of the athletes, um and then actually younger than that, it's kind of a, how much would you like to sign up for? Because, you know, under the age of ten, some of them are more serious than others. Um so that's how things were, um and that's, that is ideal. Uh anything is better than nothing, um we would love to get back to is as much as normal as we could.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Council Wong.
Well, thanks for your presentation and your delegation, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that I thought I heard.
Well, thanks for your presentation and your delegation. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that I thought I heard. You mentioned, um, Abbotsford Outdoor Pools and you used the plural there, but there is only the one pool in Ab-
Actually, no, Abbotsford Outdoor Pools, um, they will not be opening. Um, it's, uh, I, from what I understand is that the Ab- Abbotsford Indoor Pools will be opening in the beginning of August.
No, I understand that, but there is only one outdoor pool in that. Is, is that correct? There is only the one outdoor pool in Abbotsford?
Uh, forgive me, I'm, I actually, okay, I've just been corrected that, yes, you are correct.
There's only the one, yeah. And, and it's operated by, um, a private company, I guess, on contract, so that might have something to do with it. Uh, and they, and they plan to open their indoor pool, you say?
Yes.
Um, now, going back to Council Arnessen's question where, uh, we have three pools. Uh, Abbotsford has two, one of which they're definitely not going to reopen, so they're only going to open one. We have three at least.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so, uh, I think Council Arnessen was asking if we had to open one, which one would it be? And is it, do you have, you have a preference as to which one could be?
Yeah, for sure. We, we do prefer, um, Alder Grove. Um, it's, it's just a new, uh, facility. It's, it's, you know, top notch for our athletes. Um, that would definitely be our preference as far as the outdoor pools go.
All right, okay. Well, that answers my question. Well, thanks very much.
All right, thank you.
We'll be discussing it later, I believe, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, so for the questions, thank you very much for your, uh, delegation.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Okay, so, I'm gonna move on to presentations. E one is Climate Action Strategy. And there is an update following first, so our staff are here to provide us with a presentation. The, I think you'd be wish to introduce your presentation.
Thank you. We're, thank you, Mr. Seffy, if he's out there in the US.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, we can't hear Mr. Bakken speaking?
Right, the mute slipped off, so thank you.
Way better.
Okay. I was going to say that, uh, council, that, uh, Mr. Seffy's out there, I think someplace. He's worked quite diligently on this initiative along with the rest of staff. So I thought it'd be appropriate for him if he's, uh, listening out there to, uh, provide the initial introduction. Ramon, are you out there?
Thank you, yes, Mr. Bakken. Thank you, your worship. Uh, the presentation, your worship, is actually in support of a report that, uh, is on council's agenda this afternoon. That is following the presentations, that would be Report E one. And, uh, we do have staff who've been working on this initiative uh, for a, a long time, uh, not just the report today, but the actual initiative itself. Uh, Mr. Chohan, the director of our Facilities and Sustainability Department, and, uh, Ms. Tess Rouse, who's our Climate Action, uh, Manager, are both, uh, somewhere at the civic facility, I'm not in the same room as them, but I have seen the presentation. And with your indulgence, your worship, we will share the screen and proceed with the presentation. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Chohan.
Thank you.
Well, good afternoon and, uh, thank you, your worship, members of council, for the opportunity to provide an update on the township's, uh, climate action strategy. Now, although the Sustainability Department has been leading this process, uh, I do want to acknowledge that this has been truly a collaborative effort that has involved every department and division within the organization. And I think we may have even set a record for a number of Zoom meetings that were required to get all the actions completed. Now, a lot of hard work, like I mentioned, has gone into this and we've developed a hundred and forty plus actions. And also estimated that required financial investment. But this is still in a, in a draft stage and will require some more work before we can actually finalize the strategy. And I'll touch on the specific timelines and next steps, uh, later on in the presentation. Do we mission reduction targets? Uh, these two targets were adopted by council in November of last year. The one to the left, the twenty thirty target, uh, is a forty-five percent reduction. And the twenty fifty target is a longer term target to be carbon neutral by that year. These, uh, by council adopting these target, targets very early on, uh, in the process really helped and aided in the development of the strategy. And I think it really allowed us to accelerate, uh, progress on this. Uh, otherwise, I think we'd still be kind of determining what levels of action would be required. At the last presentation, there were some discussion around what others were doing and making sure that we were in line um, with other municipalities. So staff went and can confirm that, uh, generally we are in line with, uh, the other local municipalities and with both levels of government. Now, the township of Langley, as council is aware, has a long history of implementing sustainable initiatives, both, uh, in our corporate operations and within the community. However, even with all that great work, uh, the recent modeling that we have been seeing, um, is that this business as usual approach will not be enough to meet these targets. In fact, our community emissions, uh, have increased by thirteen percent over the past decade. There is good news. Uh, the good news is that the actions that have been identified in the climate action strategy do put us on target to meet our twenty thirty goal. But it is going to be challenging and it's going to require some big moves that will need to be in place fairly quickly. Now, this journey towards reducing carbon emissions will take many years and, and, and decades. And although we have seen significant advances in technology, there is still uncertainty as to which technologies will be the most economical, equitable and enable this greater transition towards being carbon neutral. As a result, you know, I think our roadmap that we were developing here, uh, to be zero carbon really needs to be a living document that should be flexible and ready to adjust as these new technologies come forward. Now, in the council report, there is really one recommendation, but it really has two key elements. The first one is proceeding to public consultation as a next step in the finalization of the climate action strategy and the development of a detailed financial plan to support the implementation of a hundred and forty actions that are contained within the document. Now, we will touch on the public consultation later on in the presentation, but I'd like to take some time to put some more context around the required financial investment and the development of a financial plan. The township has, uh, been working in partnership with a number of agencies, uh, both at the federal level, uh, which is Natural Resources Canada and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, the Province, Hydro, Fortis, to undertake various climate action initiatives throughout the community and within the corporate operations. We just wanted to kind of show and we tally the numbers is that approximately over the past five years, we've contributed or had contributions worth two point two million dollars from these various agencies. They have come in the form of grants, rebates, incentives and subsidizing of many staff positions. The reason why I wanted to highlight this is that without significant financial investment from both levels of government and these other agencies, reducing carbon emissions to the required levels will be extremely difficult. So the financial investment. Financials always seem to be the key of any strategy and, uh, here we felt it was important, even at this stage, um, to provide some idea as to what this cost might be. Now forecasting costs over a ten year period comes with much uncertainty, especially when you consider larger capital projects where the detailed actions have not yet been developed. And there was an example, uh, in the council report that talked about low carbon retrofits for corporate facilities. At this point in time, that is purely an action to explore what these retrofits might look like. And, uh, to come up with a cost at this very early stage is very difficult, but we have put some order of magnitude numbers in to come up with a very high level estimate. And that's the image, uh, on the left that shows, uh, the hundred and thirty dollars per representative household number. And this is kind of an average over the ten year period. In order to understand the true financial investment, the recommendation is to develop a financial plan that will assist in identifying the overall funding that will be needed and the specific amounts on a year to year basis. The plan will also look at redirecting existing sources of funding. And these could be programs that have been around for a while that could be tailored or funding that could be redirected to support climate action, capitalizing on provincial and federal funding opportunities and fund, funding from other organizations. Therefore, uh, when these are factored in, the amount of new funding required should be less than the estimate of a hundred and thirty dollars. We also are mindful and consider the, considering the current, current financial circumstances that are result, resulted from the pandemic. We need to recognize and adjust to this new normal, especially for the short term. So for twenty twenty-one, we are anticipating that the average annual impact per representative household could be in the range of thirty to forty-two dollars. But more work needs to be done to refine this number prior to the twenty twenty-one budget process. And again, not all this will be enumerated. Now, ju- generally when developing a strategy like this, the focus is to determine what the cost might be to implement. However, another perspective could be, how much will it cost if we don't invest enough? A recent report from F C M and Public Safety Canada estimated that for every dollar invested in mitigation efforts saves approximately four dollars in recovery costs. Now, if supported by council, the next step would be to proceed to public engagement. And as part of this process, the plan is to share the required level of investment and gauge what level of investment the community would be supportive of to address climate change in our municipality. I'm now gonna pass this over to Tess Rouse to walk through the main areas of the climate action strategy. And Tess has promised me that she is not going to walk through each of the hundred and forty actions either, so.
Good afternoon, your worship, the members of council. So this seems like a very opportune time to highlight what this strategy is and what this strategy is not. The climate action strategy is not just a climate plan. It's a plan to transition to a new future, a better business as usual. The images on the slide in front of you are a glimpse of what we hope to accomplish here in the township to create a new future with improved air quality, reduced noise pollution, more space for recreation and social interaction, resilient buildings and infrastructure, a new local economy, along with thriving natural habitats and biodiversity, all of which will result in improvements to health and the well-being of the community. So to put the township of Langley on course to meet its emission reduction targets and prepare for the risks and uncertainties associated with a changing climate, the draft strategy includes five big moves and as Harv mentioned, over a hundred and forty actions that span across eight priority areas. And in just a moment, I will highlight a few of these. The strategy focuses on both community and corporate actions. And so I just wanted to take a moment to differentiate between these two. When the term community is used, we're referring to the township as a whole. Private new residential and commercial buildings, vehicles driven by residents and businesses. And when the term corporate is referred to, we're talking about corporate municipal operations like township owned facilities and fleets, along with township staff and internal policies and procedures. Transitioning to a low carbon resilient new future is challenging and complex. And therefore, business as usual will not get us there. A transition requires change, big moves, innovation, rapid adoption of new technologies and the reshaping of existing systems. It is projected that the township can achieve its emission reduction targets by twenty thirty and beyond by committing to the following big moves. Big move number one, safe and sustainable transportation. So by twenty thirty, more than half of current passenger vehicle trips will need to be made by sustainable modes of transportation, such as walking, cycling, rolling, transit and E Vs. To achieve this, we really have to rethink and reimagine our streets and move them away from only serving vehicles. Transportation needs to be active. We need to create safe and shared space for cyclists, pedestrians and drivers. Transit needs to be enhanced and expanded. And when vehicles are required, we need to support the transition to zero emission vehicles like electric vehicles. This big move demands that we diversify and serve all modes of mobility in order to provide the community members with the opportunity to choose more sustainable transportation. Zero emission new buildings. The second big move will require all new buildings built in the community to produce zero emissions by twenty thirty. Please note, the report should read twenty thirty for this big move instead of twenty forty and that will make this modification for the final strategy report. So simply put, we have to stop constructing new buildings that depend on fossil fuels. These buildings will still be around in twenty fifty and that is the point in time where we have already adopted to be a carbon neutral municipality. And therefore, it's more cost effective to build them right instead of retrofitting them later. Big move number three, zero emission existing buildings. Over half of existing community buildings will be retrofitted to produce zero emissions by twenty thirty. Essentially, as gas and oil fired hot water tanks, furnaces and boilers are at their end of useful life, they must be swapped out for clean, efficient and non emitting alternatives like electric pumps. So although this may seem like a huge undertaking, when you look at the amount of existing buildings in the township, the good news is that, uh, the technology already exists and investments in existing homes and buildings happen all the time. Roofs get replaced, hot water heaters and furnaces do as well. High performance, energy efficient buildings save residents and businesses money on utility bills. They provide more comfortable, healthy spaces to live, work and learn. Zero emission operations. The fourth big move will require the township to reach zero emission corporate operations by twenty forty. That's ten years ahead of what we have adopted for the community at large. This will be realized through zero emission new facilities, retrofits to all existing facilities and zero emission fleet vehicles. While our corporate emissions represent a relatively small share of total community emissions, it is our, our responsibility to lead and demonstrate practices that will encourage broader emission reductions within the community to achieve our climate action target. And lastly, big move number five, resilient natural systems. Increase tree canopy and rainwater capture from current levels by twenty thirty. Local climate change is projected to increase stress on local ecosystems and increase pressure on water supply and municipal stormwater infrastructure. Therefore, climate action moving forward needs to carefully consider how to protect these ecosystems while also investing in resilient, green and natural infrastructure. So, the hundred and forty plus actions that we are going to highlight for you today span across the eight priority areas you can see on the screen. And they have been drafted to meet both the emission reduction targets that council has already adopted and the five big moves. The strategy really does focus on actions that we can take today and over the next ten years, while leaving room for new technologies, practices and innovation to emerge that can easily be incorporated into the next wave of action. So I'll now highlight a few of these. Most trips in the township are made in private passenger vehicles and well over half of our community emissions come from transportation. In this priority area, we aim to create safe and attractive transportation options that reduce emissions and improve quality of life. A few key actions of this area include development of a new transportation and mobility strategy, which would replace the two thousand and nine Transportation Master Plan and focus on all modes of mobility, including walking and cycling. Expansion and enhancement of the existing multi-use trail network to directly connect our communities for multimodal commuting that also serves recreational purposes. So just like two hundred street connects Brookswood to Willoughby to Walnut Grove for drivers, this trail would assign that same priority to all other mobility types, including people on foot, icicles and scooters, to name a few. Using the trail would be a safe, time efficient and cost effective alternative to jumping in a car and driving. The priority area of buildings and land use aims to demonstrate regional leadership in resilient, low carbon buildings and communities. There are twenty seven actions in this area, including piloting a complete street, which is a land use strategy to create a space where people can safely walk, cycle, drive, take transit and socialize. So a pilot project would look to retrofit a street within the township to support multimodal mobility options and public gathering space. And due to the recent social distancing measures put in place, many local municipalities have already redesigned the use of existing street space to serve this purpose. Corporately, low carbon retrofit plans need to be developed for all existing corporate facilities. And through those plans, we'll need to integrate the fuel switching of mechanical and hot water systems to zero emission alternative. The infrastructure priority area. The township of Langley owns and operates an array of municipal infrastructure. The Township of Langley owns and operates an array of municipal infrastructure, but these systems were not designed with future climate projections in mind. By improving the resilience of infrastructure now, the reactive resources needed for emergency response or to repair or rebuild from future impacts are reduced. A few key actions here include completing a full review of all rainwater systems using future climate change and growth projections, and exploring the feasibility of renewable local energy through the analysis of district energy and energy from waste recovery. Township Greenspace provides countless environmental services, such as wildlife habitat, carbon absorption by trees, reduction of the heat island effect, and are also essential for our physical and emotional health. A key action in this priority area is to evaluate natural assets and incorporate them into the existing asset management program. Natural areas like forests and wetlands filter the air we breathe, clean our drinking water, regulate climate, and absorb carbon dioxide. Economically valuing these important functions is critical to their consideration in decision-making. As extreme events such as hotter, drier summers, compromised air quality, and windstorms increase, the impacts to health and emergency preparedness will as well. Sorry, forgot to advance the slide. To mitigate this, the township can review and implement changes to our emergency response plans and support the community in emergency preparedness. A couple of key actions of the health and emergency preparedness area include developing business continuation plans for prolonged extreme weather events and disruption in energy supply. Essentially, what would prolonged power outages or energy restrictions mean for us, both as a corporation and the community? And how can we better prepare for these types of events? Also, expanding emergency preparedness education. Staff would like to expand our current fire education program to include extreme weather and emergency preparedness. The changing climate is also expected to have implications for local agriculture. This priority area aims to foster a strong agricultural sector ready to adapt to climate change, reduce emissions, and contribute to local food security. A few key actions include mandatory food growing space in new multifamily buildings and the expansion of the existing community garden program, and also projects and programs to increase sustainable farm management. In terms of waste, the township has already made progress on reducing waste in the community and has strong momentum in this area. But looking to 2030 and beyond, we will need to encourage further waste reduction across all sectors while making sure that waste management procedures are sustainable. So in this priority area, we've included actions such as ensuring that all ICI properties have disposal options for recycling and organics. Although this is already mandated in our Township Solid Waste Management Bylaw, we need to ensure that there are strategies aimed to ensure compliance. Exploring our alternatives to burning green waste. So open-air burning could be considered a last option if other alternatives for the recycling or reusing of vegetative debris and yard trimmings were explored. And our last area, leadership and integration. So leading the way on climate change mitigation and adaptation actions will require the integration of climate-related information across all township processes, procedures, and decision-making. This will be absolutely vital to achieving the strategy targets. The township's leadership role will include the development of a climate impact assessment tool to allow for a better understanding of climatic and environmental impacts of all projects and programs. Assessment summaries would be integrated into council reports, annual budget requests, and purchasing documentation. Like the current pandemic, climate change is a collective action problem. Each ton of emissions contributes equally to the problem, no matter where in the world it's produced. Community emissions need to drop by approximately 850,000 tons over the next 10 years. And so it's vital that we establish and monitor measurable progress towards these reductions as it's key to providing transparency of climate action performance and success of this strategy. To limit global temperature rise to a maximum of 1.5 degrees Celsius, the scientific community has determined that global emissions have to be limited to 420 gigatons. This is the global carbon budget that is left before world warming surpasses 1.5 degrees. So municipalities can incorporate carbon budgets by determining their community's portion of that remaining global carbon budget. However, staff are recommending a custom approach for the township. At a high level, this approach will add up emission reduction contributions of the various actions that you see in the report today and legislative policies to achieve cumulative reductions towards the 2030 and 2050 targets. To ensure the township to ensure the township stays on course, emission reduction progress targets for every five-year period have been established. This will provide opportunities for course corrections where necessary and provide key benchmarks for the prioritization and budgeting of capital works and programs. And so I'm going to end there and just pass it back over to Harv Cho Han just to conclude.
And I just also want to mention that in the Buildings Priority Area, we obviously have the B C Energy Step Code. And while this is a great energy code to look at energy efficiency in new buildings, we still have more work to do on new construction, which would include looking at how we can reduce the emissions that also come from the built environment, which Step Code does not necessarily directly address. And so with that, I'm going to pass it back over to Harv just to close.
Thank you, Tess. I feel like we're Minister Dext here and Bonnie Henry kind of going back and forth. All right, so the, this slide here really identifies the four key areas in the development of the Climate Action Strategy, the discover, the refine, consult, and implement. In early 2019 and 2020, staff moved through the first two stages of this timeline. And as part of this, we had already conducted some public outreach to better understand the priority of residents and the various stakeholders. And this information was what we used to develop the 140-plus actions. So what's next? The next step is moving into the consult phase of the strategy. This will consist of public and external stakeholder consultation, where we will discuss the Climate Action Strategy priority areas, the big moves, and all the actions. Now, if supported by council, this consultation would take place over the next six months. Now, again, in light of the current circumstances, this engagement will look slightly different than what we have done in the past. The current plan is to remain predominantly digital, and this will include social media, you know, websites, surveys, online webinars, virtual open houses, and other digital platforms. Now, if the public health orders are rescinded, are relaxed, and we are allowed to have more in-person public engagement, we will also consider that as well. Now, after reviewing and integrating the external feedback into the Climate Action Strategy, we are expecting to present the final strategy along with a detailed financial plan for council's consideration in early 2021. And finally, to conclude, this draft Climate Action Strategy now provides a more clear roadmap for the Township of Langley to move forward to a more resilient and zero-carbon community. The next step is to seek council's support and move forward into the finalization of the strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation, but several questions, Councilor Richter.
Yes. I mean, this has been framed in a very logical manner, but I'm a little concerned about the cost piece of it. And, you know, big moves looks to me like it's going to be big bucks. If we're, if we take into consideration the contents in that last paragraph in the report on page 13, which essentially says the total financial impact of approximately $1,300 per household over the next 10 years. So, I guess the concern, the big concern that I've got is we need to cost out each of the five big moves, and we need to take that to public. There's no question this is going to be a lot of money. The question is, is there an understanding and an appetite in the public to support that big money? And they need to understand that it is big money. And I go back to when council made the decision to take on a full-time fire department. And that was big money too. But the way that that public consultation process went was that each every public opportunity for input included the cost per household of the changes. And the vast majority of the public came back to that council and said, yes, we still want full-time fire. So council moved forward with full-time fire. So my question, my direct question on this is, when we go down 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5, how much money are we talking about for each of them, total and on a per-household basis? Can you answer that question now?
Maybe I'll, I'll jump in here, Councilor Richter. Thank you for the question. So at this point in time, the, the costing is looking at all 140 actions. We haven't kind of grouped them into the big five moves at this stage.
Okay, but I, I think the issue is, if I understood your presentation correctly, you said that the last part of the motion, which is the development of a detailed financial plan, that would be coming to council in 2021. I think it needs to go to the public before it comes back to council. And are we in a position to be able to do that?
Yes, I think, I think the public consultation process will be is we will take these representative dollars per household numbers to the public to gauge what level of investment the public is looking to support. So these, the financial plan will really be the details on a year-to-year basis as to what we feel the investment will be, that what we needed. For example, right now, we're in the very early stages, which are really research and assessment stages and planning. And when we start actually implementing the bigger capital projects, that's where the additional investment will come from. The key point also to maybe, to highlight is that we are expecting significant dollars to come from the province and from the federal government and from the various agencies such as Hydro and Fortis BC.
Okay, well, we're expecting whether or not we get is another matter. But by the same token, it's got to go to the public before council. The public has to understand. I mean, if we're looking at over a 10-year period, bringing the baseline cost per household up to $1,300, which essentially is going to mean more property taxes and/or debt, one or the other, that's $1,300, and that's just for climate action. Doesn't include all the other priorities that we have to do, like, for example, fire and police and collective agreements and recreation facilities and playing fields, et cetera. I, I just really question whether the $1,300 per household is a number that the public will accept. And that's why I think we need to cost it before we take it to the public. And Mr. Mayor, when we get to the point of discussing the recommendation before council, I would like to make an amendment to that, please.
Thank you. Hey, Councilor Kuntz.
Yeah, thank you both for this very comprehensive presentation. I appreciate Councilor Richter's comments about the cost. I think that'll be on everybody's mind. My question is very specific to some of these actions that are, that you're talking about, some of these big moves. We've got neighborhood plans that are in the process of being planned. Like one, this one, for example, the one you mentioned, expanding the multi-use trail network to connect neighborhoods. Do you know if that's being incorporated into those plans right now? Or does this actually have to be adopted before some of that can be done? I, I, I hope that some of those things are being looked at, but maybe if you could answer that question?
Hi, Councilor Kuntz. Thanks for the question. It's Tess here. Absolutely. I would say close to 70% of the actions really are looking to expand on initiatives that are already going on in the township to ensure that we're integrating a climate lens and this new future lens into them. So the existing multi-use trail network is absolutely still being integrated into community plans, but we just need to look at really elevating that capital project to ensure that it's serving all modes of mobility. And one of the, one of the actions in the leadership and integration area is to review all strategic policy documents, including neighborhood and community plans, to ensure that all the pieces of the Climate Action Strategy are well-integrated into those to ensure that everything is working smoothly together.
Okay, well, thanks again for your, your presentation.
Yes, thank you, Worship. I, I was very pleased, and actually so much so that I sent out an email, sorry, on the weekend, to tell the team that had worked on this, and I know it is a team effort, how much I appreciated the efforts that were put forward. And I do have a question or two, but, and just some comments because one of the things that I thought about when reading this plan, and I think it's very integrated into the idea that all departments have to be involved in this, so I ticked that box. And Mr. Cho Han was talking about all the different departments that had reviewed and given input into this. So that's great. And the other one that really I came away with is this idea of a climate lens. And I know it's somewhat of an abstract thought in the sense that, well, what would that look like? But really, the idea that when we are going about our decision-making as a council, we have some kind of reference to the fact of policies that we have, implications. Should we do this or should we do that? That refers back then again to a master plan that we have. And so I think that this is going forward. I know it's, it's a draft, and we have a lot more work to do, but going forward, it's, it's very positive that way. I guess my question has to do with the fact that I wondered whether or not, and I, I just want to say, before I get into that, I, I really appreciate the comments and concerns about the financial aspects of it. I know that the report itself alluded to government funding from other levels of government that may be possible to help to offset some of the local government costs. And I would say, from my experience on the Metro Climate Action Committee, that that's one of the things that we are directing our attention to and are advocating for, as well as through FCM and likely UBCM, is that after COVID, we need to ensure that we are not just going back to reinvest in what was the normal course of business, that we're looking to substantially improve quality of life and make better decisions vis-à-vis global climate action. And so I, I think that as much as it's not money in hand, but I do know that there is a huge advocacy piece, and there's a lot of momentum towards that. So my actual question then has to do with the, the measurement in the carbon budget. And I, I guess it's more of a concern. So I like the idea about going to the public. I think you need public buy-in. I do really approve of the idea that as much as possible, although it's a guesstimate, to try and attribute a cost amount to individuals who will live in our community, not just now, but in the future, for the actual levy or cost to implement these plans. But the idea that I believe it would be a five-year review of how we're doing in terms of our benchmark approach. And I'm wondering whether or not that shouldn't happen more frequently just because five years is a long time to go by if you're inadvertently missing your opportunity to make your target. So I, I personally think that if this goes forward with council approval, that we should look at every budget year to have a way to understand the apportionment of carbon, how we're doing with that, and what we need to immediately change. And the challenge being that we have a very limited time horizon. If we're talking about 100 years to implement this, I wouldn't be quite so concerned. But because the timelines are pretty short, I think we should strongly review that option to look at key measurements of success on a more regular basis so that we have a more comprehensive understanding every year as we move forward. And I do agree that having now decided that we want to try to understand the implications of global climate change and what that means to our community, that we also then have to be reasonable, but somewhat, I don't know, aggressive in the sense of accelerating our action because we've delayed as long as is reasonably possible. And, oh, what's my question? Okay, well, I, I, okay, I'm, I'm waiting for the actual vote. I'm happy to vote on this, but the question would be then, yeah, getting this all together so that we can discuss this and put this into the um, yeah, getting this all together so that we can discuss this and put this into the twenty twenty one budget as soon as possible. So do you think that's achievable to get it into the twenty twenty one budget?
Hi, Councilor Anderson. It's Tess here. Thank you for um your question. I think we, we plan on developing the financial strategy and hopefully going to public consultation prior to council receiving the twenty twenty one budget so that we can include um the financial impacts there as well as the projects and programs that we'd like to get started on in twenty twenty one. Um, in terms of your other comments about reporting more frequently or annually on our progress and how we're doing, um, the data required to report on emissions reductions is unfortunately not controlled by the Township of Langley. It's a provincial um data set that is made available to local governments every two to four years. Um, so we can tighten up the timeframe, but um every five years was really where we know we'll have reliable data that we can actually analyze to give measurable sort of progress targets on.
Yeah, Counselor Whitmer.
There you go. Uh, thank you for your presentation today. This is a very comprehensive report and, you know, I, I certainly appreciate the, the budget challenges. Uh, there is significant budget numbers that will come with this. And going to the public and getting detailed responses from them is going to be really important for sure. Um, however, I think it is important for us as a council to remember that uh by passing the motion to have a climate action strategy, uh we, I think every council member knew that this was not meant to be just a political statement, but it was actually meant to be something that we wanted to move forward on and an actually new way of living in our community. So I think there was an expectation that there would be budget constraint or budget challenges with it. But I have a couple of questions um regarding it. Um, as a, as you're, as you're making the presentation and I'm kind of looking through the report as well, I see that we've got um, I'm, I'm, the numbers, five big moves jumps out to me, eight priority areas jumps out to me, and then a hundred and forty uh strategies or actions. And I'm wondering if you could just sort of summarize uh maybe for me how they, each of those connect or relate to each other. How does the hundred and forty to the eight to the five uh sort of work or connect?
Hi, hi, Counselor Whitmer. It's Tess here. Um, thanks for that question. Yeah, there's definitely a lot of layers to the strategy, so thanks for putting that out. Uh, you know, at, at the pinnacle of sort of the pyramid, if you can envision that, we have these emission reduction targets that council has adopted. And, and really to support that and to understand what that means on the ground, that's the five big moves. So in order to achieve emission reduction targets, which can seem very sort of airy, the five big moves are what we actually have to accomplish to see those types of emission reductions. So the hundred and forty actions are what will feed into each of those big moves to realize them. And the eight priority areas are really just a way of categorizing those hundred and forty actions. Uh, um, a number of them fall within transportation and mobility, buildings and land use and infrastructure. Those are our biggest three priority areas, uh and which makes sense because that is the three biggest areas where we see most of our emissions.
Okay, so the eight and the five are, they're quite similar to each other, the eight priority areas and then the five big moves. They seem quite similar to me.
Yeah, so the five, the five big moves, I would say resonate within a few of the particular um priority areas. So obviously, the first big move around sustainable and safe transportation would reside within the transportation and mobility priority area. Uh, and then the two big moves around buildings would rest within the buildings and land use priority area. And then the resilient natural systems would go into the green space and ecosystems.
Okay, yeah, that's helpful. So uh another question I had was on the um coming up with the financial numbers for the safe and sustainable transportation, which is the first of the five big moves. Uh, one of those, one of the uh areas that's in that um is active mobility. And so I'm thinking right now of cycling. And I'm wondering, when you, when we do a financial analysis of that, does that financial analysis include what that might look like in the future for the cost of us building new roads, uh building in our neighborhoods, how that is going to be impacted if we put cycling as a priority in these neighborhoods as opposed to maybe an afterthought in our neighborhoods and how that might affect the cost of building out our communities? Does that financial number become part of the financial picture?
Hmm, great question. Um, so in terms of cycling infrastructure, absolutely. We want to dive deeper into the financial analysis of what it will cost to complete our cycling network in the Township of Langley and to elevate it, um, you know, where bike lanes are at least some somewhat protected or separated from the roadway. Um, as, as Harv had mentioned in the beginning, you know, we are able to cost out, as an example, what the development of a transportation and mobility strategy would cost at this point in time. However, it won't be until later and, and the recommendations from those reports that we're able to actually cost out all of the capital infrastructure projects that may come from a strategy like that. So in terms of road network expansions, we wouldn't be looking at those, but we would be looking at the cost to complete the cycling network. As it, as you've mentioned, it's key to active mobility.
Right, okay. Um, and thank you, that's helpful. My, my last question. Um, I thought I heard you say in the presentation and I just want to get clarification. And that was when we talked about the fourth of the big five, which was the zero emission operations um and talked a lot about fleet vehicles and, and so on. I, I thought I heard you say that we were um going to be trying to push that by twenty forty, which would be ten years ahead of the rest of the region. Is, did I hear you say that correctly? Or did I hear it correctly that that's what you said?
I, I'll clarify. What I was saying was that by twenty forty, we hope to achieve net corporate uh zero emissions. Uh, but that, that would be ten years ahead of what we have adopted in terms of our community emissions target. So by twenty fifty, the township as a whole, meaning our entire community, we, we hope to be a carbon neutral community. Uh, however, corporately, we'd like to take a leadership role and see us achieve that ten years prior to that, so by twenty forty. So in terms of our corporate net emissions, we would like to be carbon neutral by twenty forty.
Right, and is that, is that sort of a similar thing that other communities are doing is to sort of be ten years ahead of the rest of, of their sort of community around them or?
Yes, it does, it does fall, it does fall in line with best practices. Some municipalities are actually trying to hit twenty thirty five.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Awesome Ferguson.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, so Harv and Tess, uh excellent presentation and your report. Report, after I've read it a few times, to I don't know how many pages, eighty seven pages or whatever it is, it's a it's certainly a good document to refer to. Uh, I did, I wanted to get you guys to do a little bit of research on your own because uh we talked about uh efficiencies uh years and years back, and um I like to use some examples. Um, you're talking about uh transit and transportation, which obviously has an impact on on basically the climate and organization. Some twenty plus years ago, a group of folks sat down and said, well, perhaps we can have rapid transit uh within ten years, and that was twenty years ago, and well, we still haven't got it today. So that's one, one example you have to research on. Uh, we, it took a little bit extra for the highways and bridges to come, but they did indeed come. Um, provincial standards for water, sewer and other environmental things uh were dropped on organizations like ourselves, Metro Vancouver a- and others. And in the meantime, there were transit taxes and other taxes provided to uh our citizens um on the basis that these services would be coming. And uh guess who's paying? We're still paying all along. So I want to go out and provide, you know, get that electric car and, and turn, take and, and send my uh uh my, my neighbor's heat pump down to the Davis's farm or, you know, and, and they, all my old used construction stuff up to Counselor Long's property. I want to do all those things and I want to save everybody money. And all, also, there's so many changes that happen, and now a new change today is this COVID, which is the money that the provincial and federal governments may have in the future, given the fact that there's been challenges with their, their purse, a public purse. Um, larger deficits and other challenges. So we're going to be facing, as the years go by, a number of changes. That doesn't mean to say we can't work with your organization and group, but, but I just see things changing and almost apologizing for, for telling you how these uh responsibilities have been put on us. And there, there's been very little to no uh feedback from those organizations when it didn't happen.
Do you have a question? This is questions for staff.
Um, under your particular um program, are you also working with the uh private sector and also our citizens? Because uh many of them are active in uh saving money, carbon neutral, and also providing uh opportunities for even new builders to buy, to, to build the uh new smart homes. Are you doing that?
Thanks, Counselor Ferguson, for the question. Uh, yes, we have done some initial public outreach where we reached out to agencies like the ones you're mentioning, the utilities, private business organizations, just to understand what their priorities were around climate action and what they wanted to see in terms of this draft uh point within the strategy. Uh, also, part of the public consultation will be to do, you know, in-depth engagement with specific external stakeholders, like some of the provincial and federal agencies as well as our utility companies to better understand where partnerships and uh you know, funding partnerships can also align.
Okay, my next question is, is it was part of my preamble, have you had an opportunity? I know other people have another department, not necessarily a community, but the organizations and groups I work with. Uh, have you had an opportunity to talk to the province, the feds about the fact their funding form is, given the challenges that they have with COVID nineteen?
Uh, no, we have not had those conversations uh in detail, but I'm working alongside Metro Vancouver and other associations to pull together uh reports from staff around the economic stimulus package that the federal and provincial governments will be announcing in the next couple of months. Uh, we've heard from Premier Horgan as well as a number of other leaders on those two levels of government that there will be a strong focus on the green economy and climate action. And so, you know, we, we do know there are obviously financial constraints in the coming years to come, but it sounds like uh the leadership from the top wants to sort of re-navigate that towards sort of a green new future and the clean B C plan.
Well, thank you very much. Excellent presentation.
Good, Counselor Davis. Any questions for staff? Now you're muted.
Okay, I thank you very much. Actually, this is actually really, really interesting, this report. This reminds me of my grandmother, when I, when I had to, when I had to stay with grandma, I went to turn on the thermostat and grandma turned it down and she put a sweater on me. And there's all sorts of things, I don't want to simplify the look, but back then, they didn't have the resources to heat the house so much. And if we don't do something in twenty thirty years from now, and I, and I say that, I know that twenty, it's twenty twenty. So twenty thirty, I, I'm just, I hope this isn't uh really, really, and uh like, we're not going to make this um so that we won't be able to get it done uh quite the way we want to. There's just, I have four or five points, maybe a couple of questions. Um, uh, thank you for this report. Uh, I think that I'd heard a counselor say, I don't know if it may be Counselor Anderson, this is going to affect our budget. Uh, we're going, if we're going to have to, if we're going to, and we, we've bought into it, we voted to have it. But now we got to put the rubber to the road. Um, we're going to have to, when it comes to electric vehicles, in ten years from now, we want, I, I think it was uh more than half of the, or all the, I forget. But that, every year is going to have to be in our budget, because if we're going to buy electric vehicles, uh, that's something we've got to look at. Um, uh, our buildings. Now, I, 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 in the last sixty years, I can remember, I think winters are getting warmer and warmer. Like, I, some buildings, I don't even put a wall on it because the ventilation goes through for the cows, they, they like better. And I know that, I, I, uh, Mayor Fros, don't correct me, but I, I'm, I'm not teasing, but how do you make a older building? Like, even the building that the town hall sits in now, it, it may be a heck of a good building, but there are, how do we? How much does it cost to bring that building up to, to code where it'd be zero efficiencies? AI, you know what, I, I um, um, I, I looked through this. Uh, the tree canopy on number, it was number five, so it's in green space and, and equis- uh ecosystems. Um, where, it says here, uh, such as wildlife habitat and carbon uh observed by trees and are also essential for physical and emotional health. We got to remember that the next time we want to park. But Brookswood is going to be really tough to uh increase our canopy, our, our tree canopy, because all we do is we cut the whole place, we cut the whole uh uh, I've, I've heard Counselor Richter say it once, I've heard her say it a thousand times. How many trees are we cutting down? So I, I, that's going to be extremely difficult um to uh, to upgrade that. Anyway, okay, I, I, I guess I, I don't really have any questions. It's just that, I'd like to hone back on before, I would, I have no idea how much is this going to cost. And if we can, if we, if we, like, I, I think this is a, a document that is going to get bigger and bigger and it's going to, like, we, if we go to public right now without knowing uh how much things are going to cost, then we may be getting ourselves in an issue here. So that's why I, I don't know how else to do it, but Counselor Richter had talked about, um, you know, if you look at number five there, we, we don't have, we've got some, we've got some uh, some facts. One to five, Counselor Blair said there was, you know, eight and then a hundred and thirty. But we, we're going to have to watch this on the budget. And I would hope that we could somehow put some sort of numbers, fi- financial numbers on this that can back up the action plans that will, when we carry on. Anyhow, I'm taking a lot of time. So I, uh, like I say, I, I think it's a good thing. We, uh, it's uh, it's to do with efficiency, it's to do with cash flow, everything, but we're really going to have to watch this on the budget. Thanks, Mayor Fros.
Thank you. Yeah, just, just to sort of recap what I said, uh, looking at, taking the public a hundred and thirty dollars per year over ten years, thirteen hundred dollars per household. Uh, that's just to get some feedback from the public. It's impossible, I think, at this point to come up with a detailed financial plan, that's going to be developed, and then as we go through a budget process in the future.
But that, what if we're off? So what if, what if we're off in a hundred and thirty, like, or thirteen hundred, like?
But it's, yeah, we don't know that, but that's what they're going with now, uh, with the best scenario. If, if we, you know, you could, you'd never bring it to them, but at least to have a base, a ballpark of of what they, what we expect this to cost, is to take the public, what they say, a hundred and thirty dollars per year. Uh, and then get that feedback. The council will always have that opportunity through the budget process to take um these items over the next ten, twenty years to the, to the public. Just, you know, just.
That, that's how we're going to get into trouble, is we're going to say, oh.
I don't want to debate it. I'm just saying, this is what, you ask a question, that's what's in the report, so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
In the, when we get to the port of this, other options that council has, that's great. On Mr. Backen.
Okay.
Mr. Backen.
Thank you, Worship. We're hearing the comments and we are very thankful for them. They're, they're very bright and insightful. Uh, that led to a suggestion and, and sort of following up on what the mayor was trying to articulate. Perhaps it's simply the order of the uh, the, the recommendation in the uh report that's causing some concern. Perhaps it would be more appropriate to begin with a uh, a, develop a detailed financial plan as far as we can, and then following that, return it to council, and then after that, go forward with public consultation. Because what I'm hearing, I think, is that there's a number of elements that maybe we can't identify exactly. But perhaps we could identify, um, I guess, more specifically and at least provide some parameters to it that might meet some of the concerns.
Thank you for that. So when we get to the report, we can.
All right, Counselor Long. And we, we have to be really respectful of the time.
Yeah, I understand yours. Yes, so I would like uh the presenters to, to maybe talk a little bit more about that. The report says in more than one occasion that it's a four to one uh ratio. You can spend a dollar today, which is your hundred and thirty dollars, I guess, or we can uh puddle along and spend four times that over the next ten years. So maybe staff could talk a little bit more about, are those real savings? Well, they are real savings, but you know, some of the disadvantages of, of putting it off, because we're worried about money and the advantages of actually doing it. And while they're at it, may I ask them also, so um, and I assume I heard it was a very lengthy presentation, but we are looking at green funds, uh FCM, um their green fund as well, uh, other grants and uh financial partners that will help us do this. And of course, energy saving, that, that needs to be calculated. So maybe they could expand on that, because I, I fear, Worship, with, with the comments of Mr. Backen and Counselor Richter, that we might be putting this off. The, the report specifically says they're going to start getting.
The report specifically says they're going to start getting public input in August. So what was just described about, well, let's get the financial information through first, would mean that we'd delay it. And in my mind, if you're delaying it, it's going to increase the cost even more. We have to get it done now, right? Anyway, maybe staff can elaborate on the, on those costs and the one to four ratio and other funding opportunities.
Yeah, councillor Long, thank you for the question. This is Harv Chellin here. Yeah, in the FCM report that we referenced, we've realized that the not proceeding with it, this is almost in view of an investment. You're making an investment now to save costs down the road. And that's really what the FCM report is stating, is that the range is actually from three to $5 of every investment you don't make is going to cost you that much more. And a prime example, this one here, maybe a more recent one, is the street lighting example, where we've now gone forward with upgrading it to LED, and we know after a certain number of years, we'll be saving that money. And this is probably a good way to view this as well, is that making this investment, it is a cost, but not making this investment will cause significantly more.
Thanks, your worship. And, you know, just as bad as things are now with COVID, we seem to be, the world is putting a huge amount of debt on our kids and our grandkids. This is an investment, I think, that will help to pay, advance some of those costs and efficiencies for our kids. Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to follow up on your comment, Mr. Mayor, as well as councillor Long's comment. And that is, we send this out now, nobody's going to argue against motherhood and apple pie statements.
If you have a question for staff, this is, we're not at the report yet.
Okay, well, my question for staff is, and it still is, let's go back and look at the one to five. Like, for example, to me, the big one in there is, well, two, all new community buildings to produce zero emissions by 2030, okay? Is there a cost to the township of that one? And if there is, what is it? And number three, more than half the existing community buildings to be retrofitted to produce zero emissions by 2030. What, what is the cost? Like, I'm looking at it and I'm saying, okay, this year I paid $4,000 in property taxes. 10 years from now, does this mean I'm going to be paying $5,300 in property taxes just for climate mitigation? What about everything else? Like, our job is to look at the whole, and the whole is all the priorities that we have to deliver on. This is one set. And we can't take it out to the public without the public knowing what the cost is.
And we'll deal with that in the report section. This is the time to ask staff, regarding this report. Do you have any questions?
Well, I would just like to know, how difficult would it be for them to go through and put a dollar value on one to five right now?
Yeah, they can do that without public consultation. Then we would change it as Mr. Backen, so change the motion when we get to the report. Right now, if we direct staff to do that, they'll do that. We don't need to ask them. Council will make that decision when we get to the report, so. Mr. Backen already said that that could be done. If we wanted to put, if we wanted to reverse it and do all the final, the full costing, then go to the public, that's up to council to direct. Our staff will do, they'll do all the wonders, so.
Well, and, okay, and then I'm just saying, I like the suggestion that Mr. Backen has made, and that's what I.
We'll do that in the report. We're not at the motion yet, so we're just asking staff questions regarding their report. Councillor Ferguson, do you have a question? Because we should move along with this.
I actually have a question. I actually have a question. My question to Harv and Tess, does this program, does that, are you guys in the same department as recycling and reusing and other efficiencies, if I may?
Hi, councillor Ferguson, it's Tess here. Yes, we are. So the department or division area is facilities and sustainability, which includes solid waste.
Okay, so my question to you is a very, to me, it's important, might not be that important to the rest of council. You know, we can save so much in time, energy, and effort by recycling, reusing, and looking at other efficiencies within those systems. I'm talking about water use, and I'm also talking about the way the public uses our sewer and septic systems. Those are other ways of efficiency, and I'm not sure if that's in your report in detail, but I sit on the Metro Vancouver Liquid Waste Committee, and if people didn't throw, like, medication down this, down their toilets and improper flushables, we'd save so much money from the region, it would be something very important.
I think that's all part of their report, it's all of these efficiencies. So I think we're going to move on to the report, and I want to thank Ms. Rose and Ms. Chellin for their report, presentation, and responding to all the questions and comments of council. Certainly, a lot of work has gone into this, and we appreciate this is a major project, of course. So now I'm going to go on to reports to council. And it just happens, if you want, is the climate action strategy update. And the recommended, the recommended motion is to go for public consultation on a high level, putting out the figure of $130 per year over 10 years, $1,300 total, and then come back with a detailed financial report, support information of these lines of.
I'd like to move it as is, your worship. I'll make the motion as it is.
Okay, is there a second there?
I'll second that.
Second by councillor Arneson? So I want to just briefly speak to it, and then I'll open it up. So what I gather from the report and from the staff for the discussion is that I think it would take a lot of effort to come up with a detailed financial.
Your worship?
Yes?
It's very difficult to hear you. I don't know about everybody else, but you seem to be the quietest of everybody.
So I'm just saying that this, you know, I hear what everyone's saying, it's nice to have the details, but I think hearing back from the public first, we're not giving them, saying this is going to cost $130. It's basically, this is an estimate, but there'll be a detailed report coming back to council. Council could then refer that back to, from more consultation. So there's different ways of doing it. We can do it right now, but we may not have enough information. It really would be better to hear from the public prior to spending all of the time and effort and cost to come up with that detailed financial report, but hearing from the public prior to doing that, getting that input, and then moving forward with what we would gain and learn from the public is why I support it as is. However, council can make amendments, they still choose, but we'll input through the speakers list and then obtain any amendments. Councillor Long?
I had put the flag up to make the motion, your worship, but I'm very supportive of it, and I made some points in the presentation that I should not. But now that I have the floor, I will say that we need to look forward and we need to get the folks involved. And I think if there's any movement to change the motion, that's going to delay the process, and I think we should carry on with it. The timing seems to be about perfect, that at the end of August, which is what the report says, we would start getting public consultation. So I'm quite happy with it the way it is. Thank you.
Councillor Richter, you're next. However, I see councillor Woodard, he has that chance to speak. If you're just going to make amendment.
Yeah, I'll hold off.
Okay, so councillor Woodard?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just want to clarify this, that the existing motion versus some of Mr. Backen's comments, that public consultation, that this motion directs as moves by councillor Long, that the financial plan outlined here would not be included in the first round of public consultation. The public consultation is simply going to be on the amount per year over 10 years.
Yes, and?
I'd clarify that, I want to make that 100% before my other comments.
Yeah, that's fine. Now, Mr. Backen, can you explain? Yeah, I'm starting to get that, that's correct.
Good. So if we're assuming we're going to be going to public consultation with what exactly? That, you know, we're going to have a list of potential objectives that are going to cost X amount. We're not sure exactly what this financial plan is going to look like and what exactly we're going to be getting for this, this $1,300 per household. I would actually prefer the council at least have a look at that prior to us going to the public. These were, this is pretty consistent for me. When we voted for these targets, I made my position very clear that here we are, voting for targets with no understanding of what it's going to cost. And now we have an understanding of what it's going to cost, but no understanding of what the details are. And so, again, going to the public with what? So I would prefer that we follow the direction of the CIO on this one and look at how we can modify this motion, Mr. Mayor. I'll make that amendment when the time is ready, to follow the direction of the CIO, to have an actual concrete plan with some more financial details that goes to the public, to have a more concrete, representative, and valuable public feedback. And if that doesn't quite make it for the 2020, 2021 budget, then so be it. Nice.
Thank you. So, Mr. Backen, can you perhaps provide some information to council on? Is, the way I see this motion, we're not going into that much detail at this point. We're just sort of giving this as a plan, sort of going forward. This is part of the cost. Would it be further detailed going back? Or is it better to do the full, as you suggested, as councillor Woodard, councillor Richter alluded to, do a full analysis, do all the costs without knowing what the public's expecting? There's two ways of doing this.
Thank you, your worship. I think there is two ways, and I think it's really a policy question, but I have to, I guess I have to comment on the financial model development. The real question is, what does council feel most comfortable with in going forward? The general concept with a general outline of the costs to see if they gauge the public support, or perhaps a more detailed, but it cannot be 100%, but it can be certainly a more detailed financial plan, and then that be taken to the public. It works either way. The timeframe is simply to, the question is to minimize the timeframe, but to do it in an effective and efficient way for council. So it's trying to interpret what council feels is the best policy advice. And my comments were about, I'd been about a more detailed financial plan as much as we could, but I wanted to preface it by saying that it will not be the 100% ultimate plan, but it can be much closer with the breakdown, perhaps by category as was referenced.
Okay, that's.
Mr. Mayor, I don't want to lose my second chance to speak, so if I could follow up on that? Just very briefly, yeah, so, yeah, nice try, councillor Long, I just want to.
Just, excuse me, councillor Woodard, you have the floor. No comments, side comments, like that, please be prepared.
So I would like to sort of see how we can maybe include some degree of financial information within the public consultation, and maybe there's a little ground there that can be achieved.
So councillor Richter, you're next, and if you wish to make an amendment, a motion?
Yes, I would like to make the motion that we refer the motion back to staff for more detailed cost estimates and funding sources, as well as per household costs from 2021 to 2040 for each of the big move items, numbers one to five, listed on page one, before the strategy is sent out for public consultation. That's my motion.
Is there a second there? Councillor Davis?
Can I?
Councillor Davis, I'm sorry, I'm asking for a second there. Councillor Davis, were you seconding it?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I'm going to, just now, we're on a referral motion. I'm going to carry on with the speakers list as it is, but councillor Richter, you go ahead.
Yeah, well, I just wanted to say, I've got it written out here. I'll type it out and send it to Wendy, so she's got it.
That's great, thank you. So it's moving second by councillor Davis. Councillor Long on the, on the motion. It's on amendment, it's a motion.
This is on the amendment now?
Yeah, no, it's actually a motion to refer this to staff to come back with more detail.
Okay, so this is on the referral now?
Yes.
Well, you know, I say no, 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 because first of all, I don't know how we got into a discussion about dollars and cents. The discussion is, what is the, what is the right thing to do? How do we proceed in this new world with climate action? We made a decision to follow a climate action strategy a long, long time ago. The cost is not inconsequential, I understand, but you've got to get the job done. It's the right thing to do. And I believe that it was originally worded, your worship, was that we would go to the public for consultation because the strategy could be adjusted. If you adjust the strategy due to public input, or public might endorse what we've got here. Either way, after public consultation, then we know what we're going to have to start spending money on. So it's really cart before the horse. But I really feel quite sad that we're putting a dollar value on everything when you have to really put a different kind of value on this type of initiative. There isn't a choice to do a climate action, to proceed with such a thing. This is what we must do. So, yes, the costs are going to be tough, but how do you know exactly what the costs are going to be if you don't get that public consultation first? So, you know, I'll go along with the rest of council because I have to. But I don't think we should be delaying this. I think we should go to the public and get some information from them and more feedback. The strategy could be adjusted, or it could be confirmed. Then we're going to look at some costs, and we're not going to do anything without budget approval, so. I just see this as a way of kind of pushing it to the side, and this is something I don't believe we should be doing in terms of where we are going in the world today, doing things for our kids for the future, doing the right thing, and all the savings, like the example that was given with the streetlights. It's going to, you're going to pay one way or another, and I think the longer you wait, the more you're going to pay. So I don't support, I don't think I support this referral. I'd like to see the motion as the way it was. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ferguson?
The first things first, yeah, I think that, I think it's important to have a climate action plan, and our staff has spent an awful lot of time on that. And I think all we're doing right now is asking for some financial support so our citizens, our very citizens can actually relate to it and understand it. My first question to staff, if I may, through the chair, is there an educational component involved with this for our citizens or those users in our community?
Your worship, it's Ramen here. Yes, certainly, there is an education component to this, to this process. And, and your worship, I think there may be, there may be a compromise that, that might address all of individual councillors' concerns. And that would be for staff to go back, not a drawing board, but rather to do a bit more financial analysis. As Mr. Backen referenced a couple of times, it is impossible at this stage for us to, to come up with the detailed costing of each one of those action items as well. We want to leave it fairly open for the community's feedback to be meaningful. So it's, it's really not a good use of staff resources to, to cost out a specific action item if we don't know if it's going to be successful or not in terms of staff, in terms of the public, public input. So what we could do is, we could reverse the, the order of the recommendation and, and yet, at the same time, present something to council before the August break such that we can start the committee engagement with some more definitive numbers, recognizing that they're not ultimately the 100% numbers, but more, more definition to them in terms of the range. And as staff has already indicated as part of the presentation, the 130 is really the long term over the 10-year projection. For 2021, we estimate the number to be more in the $35 to $40 per average household range. And a great majority of that is actually within existing budget, so it's not new money, if you will. So if, if it's acceptable to council, what we could do is reverse the recommendation, do the public, do the financial analysis to the extent that is possible at this stage, present that to council before the summer break, and then with the intent of proceeding to public consultation after.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that indeed was something similar to what I wanted to know. And I think there is a compromise. I think people do want to know about the numbers, and I appreciate Mr. Seifi bringing that to everybody's attention.
Thanks. So I'll just question Ms. Power on the referral motion, this referral. Would that make you quicker connect to come back for an update before the, before the break?
I believe that the referral would fit with Mr. Seifi's just.
The referral would fit with Mr. Seifi's suggestion?
Yes.
So we get more information back. Thank you. So just, if you heard that, I just asked Ms. Power. The referral motion is consistent with Mrs. Seifi's recommendation, and she believes it is, so we could take, that would come back to council with a bit more information before the break. And maybe we could make a decision, we're going to go to public consultation that time, so thank you for that. Councillor Davis? Referral, Councillor Davis?
Sorry, I'm still at, okay, Bob, is that better?
Yes, that's good.
Okay, okay, I'm having problems. I'm wondering if I should just come to the hall. Okay, I'm concerned about a timeframe. I am, and if I, if I support to have this, to go to staff, in no way do I want to slow this down. I know it's going to slow it down a little, but I don't, my intent is not to slow it down. The public don't know the cost, as councillor Long, and I'm not arguing with councillor Long, but I, I don't know how, when they get it, it may be, and I'm not being cheeky here, but like apple pie and a glass of cold milk. And so, and councillor, councillor Woodwards kind of hit it on the head. We go to the public without knowing kind of costs, and I, and I don't, I think this is a fluid thing. Because in three years from now, when we go to buy another 10 car, I heard that there's better electric cars. Yesterday, I read that they're getting further mileage and they're more expensive. So things are going to change as we go on, so we don't want to delay it. But I'm just concerned that, once it comes back from the public, you know, we then have got to cram everything, you know, it's hard to get a gallon of water in a quart jar. So I'm just, I'm concerned about that. That's what I'm concerned about. I don't want to delay it, and I don't want to take it to public. Take it to public, and I've had so much problems listening that I didn't even hear a thing Mark, Mister Backham said. So I'm I'm I'm, I just wonder if I just might just leave the meeting and just come to the hall, because I. I've had two computers now, and now they're trying to set up my third one, and I'm. I don't want to make any decisions.
Uh, this is, this is, this is a referral, and it would come back to council within the next couple of meetings, so we only have two meetings left, so we would have it back.
So if I, so that means if I voted for it, it's not the end of the world, okay? Okay, we're working on, we're working on.
And, yeah, Councilor. Yeah, uh, Council Artson.
Uh, yes, thank you, worship, um, I think it's a very valid question regarding what the cost would be that we could attribute this. So it's, should this be more detailed before it goes to um, the community for feedback? Um, my sentiment currently is that I would like to try and craft a strategy. So that we can not slow the momentum, but at the same time, do a more detailed analysis, so we don't lose any more time. And I'm wondering, uh, through your worship, maybe to Mister Seifi. Whether or not the nature of the question that we're asking in the unknown, if if there's a number, we don't quite know what it is. Isn't it one of the viable ways of asking the public about something to give them a range and feel where their comfort level is? For example, would you be willing to spend another five hundred dollars a year on climate action? Over the next ten years, or would you willing to spend and have it on a continuum? That way, I think it would help to gauge, and we're not then putting ourselves into a situation where. We seem to be saying, well, we said it was gonna cost a hundred and fifty dollars a year for, you know, ten years, but that was wrong. So just to get a sense of the value to the community without directly attaching a number. Because I think that that is an opportunity to gauge the temperature without making an actual commitment, which could then come back. For our review, and then that would help, I think, us look at it and say, okay, well, the public doesn't care. We may care a lot, but they don't care, or they care to the degree that might surprise us, that they. At this point in time would be willing to pay an X amount for um, more climate action. So I'm just suggesting if that could be an opportunity to kind of bridge these um, two different positions, to get more information from the public. That.
Your worship, I'm not sure if you want me to comment or not, I I will. Uh, I I I don't see any, I guess, difference difference in positions on council, I think. Uh, unless I have misunderstood comments of councilors. I believe all of council is actually on board with the strategy, it's just a the question about the. Uh, reliability of the financial numbers or the certainty as to what it's going to cost us, that's an issue, and the question is. Whether the public should know about the costing before the actual higher level goals and objectives are are shared and and. And the public requested to comment upon them. So, given the fact that it's very difficult for for staff to come up with the exact numbers at this point. Uh, what what we could do is actually go away with the recommendation from council as opposed to referral. With the recommendation by council today to, for staff to proceed with financial analysis before. Going to public, and then before the summer break, we could come forward to council with A. The a more detailed financial costing of the the tasks or the actions to the extent possible. And then B, to have a a more defined outline, if you will, of the communication strategy in terms of. What specifically we might be asking the public to comment upon, such that it's not perceived as being something that nobody could argue against. So we could provide a range of potential costs. And and say, would you be willing to, the the types of questions that Counselor Arneson was just recommending, we could try and and. Prepare something like that and present to council uh, in in fairly short order.
Thank you. So there is that referral motion on the floor, they could refer it back to staff, maybe a bit uh, detailed, we could also amend it to reflect your comments, just to come back. To the uh, before this summer break.
We just re- read the referral motion again?
Yeah, Miss Bauer, can you read it, please?
Uh, the referral motion motion is that E one be referred back to staff for more detailed cost estimates and funding sources, as well as a per household cost from twenty twenty one. To twenty forty for each of the big five moves. Before the council climate action strategy is sent out to the public consultation.
Yeah, captures what Mister Seifi was saying. Please end it, they come back, is that correct, Mister Backham?
That's correct, your worship.
Okay, uh. Mister Counsel Whitmarsh hasn't spoken yet, so Counsel Whitmarsh.
Yeah, um, I I mean, I think that makes sense to me, it's it's in line with what we've been talking about, it brings it back before the end of the summer, gives us a bit more financial detail. We're not gonna get all the financial detail, but it'll give us a good high level. Understanding, and I think that's what we're all asking for, so I think it's getting close to calling the question here.
Yeah, uh, Council Richter, and then Council Long.
Yes, I just wanted to say that in essence, my, uh, this referral motion is doing what Mister Seifi said, which is. Uh, we appreciate that it's, because the wording is more detailed, it doesn't say with certainty. Uh, that we get the financials first before we send it out to the public. And I think that is doable. And certainly, then we've got some substance. As well as the overhaul, overall motherhood strategy things to get the public to uh, comment on.
Thank you, Council Long.
Think I'm okay with it, thank you.
Okay.
Support that, I suppose, thanks.
Yeah, it just gets us more information, it comes back. I'd like to just point out to council that we're never gonna get the, it's not like a price, it's not like we're going to buy a car. This is what's gonna cost, it's a lot of small and maybe large changes in how we do our business over the next, over the next, the future. Whether we're getting a new hot water tank, it's gonna be a more efficient hot water tank. We're gonna continue to improve and continue to reach these goals. Uh, so a lot of, as Mister Seifi said, a lot of these costs are already embedded in our budgets, uh, as we go through and replace aging. Uh, components and infrastructure to more efficient components and infrastructure, so some of it's already in there, but some of it definitely is. A person's choice that we'll have to make, so I think this is great, we'll get some more information in a couple of minutes, a month. So I'll call the question, I'll go to the favor. The referral, anybody opposed? Here's unanimously, okay? Uh, we'll move on to uh, another, the next report, E two, is the council advisory committee, we start a report, uh. Certainly, uh, I read the report, and I want to thank uh, Matt for coming up with that, I think it makes sense, but I'll ask the council for motion.
Go move.
Uh, Counsel Artson moving, Counsel Whitmarsh seconds, uh, Counsel Richter on the motion. Counsel Richter.
Now I can't get it unmuted.
There you go, okay, you're on.
Okay, um, I would like to amend this, I think, because I'm not in favor of in-person meetings yet. And uh, I'm not in favor because there are still at-risk people in the community for this virus. And for the most part, or at least the stats I've seen recently, if you're over sixty, you're male, and you have an underlying condition, you are. The most at risk. Uh, after that, it's like people over the age of fifty, and I think if we look at our composition on our community, our um. Groups or advisory committees. That uh, these guys still need a bit more in the way of protection, so the amendment that I would like to uh. Uh, add in would be in the third paragraph, that we resume the council advisory committees. Um, meetings through Zoom in order to accommodate the risk factors associated with with COVID. So, I mean, if we go right back into meetings, we are exposing people to the potential, I don't think I want to do that right yet. Uh, I think we should continue on with the Zoom uh, mandate, uh, the original. Mandate that I uh, think council put in place was to revisit it in the fall and then continue it on to December if needed. But uh, I really do believe that for the advisory committee meetings, because we don't know if there's gonna be a second wave. Uh, come through right away in uh. Uh, October or November, uh, and if there is, we're gonna be back on Zoom anyway, so why wouldn't we just start with Zoom? And uh, and move uh, from Zoom. Uh, and just keep the Zoom provision in place, so I I'll hold off on making that amendment, but that's that's my thinking, I think we have a duty to accommodate for risk factors here.
Um, I want to ask Mister Backham, I believe, you know. Now, this this motion, it says use of the space, we do have the opportunities to use Zoom for meetings, uh, what would. I don't want to take this out, say, well, we're not gonna do meetings, we may be fine to use them, they somewhat use of, as I want to be here, Mister Backham, it's your way to. We can accommodate this, but we, we don't know what could be seconded, we don't know what's gonna happen, but we encourage to include and or.
Now, your worship, I think it's twofold, the intent is actually twofold, number one, I think it would be that um. Right now, we have the ability to meet, I guess, in person, the ability, um, and then as well, uh, electronically. I think this is directing the future meetings, uh, for a defined term, the electronic, so provide some guidance that way. I'd also suggest that if this is going to be a motion that is entertained, um, it would be implicit in the motion. That for those that do not have the necessary technology to conduct Zoom meetings, we would have to provide them with that technology. Uh, I don't think that's particularly onerous, but I think we'd have to actually look at that, because given the vast number of. Committee members we have, we're not all sure, I'm not at all sure of their, I guess, a level of technology. Or their proficiency with that technology, so I guess we would also have to add potentially a little, a little bit of training, but I think it's certainly all manageable. Uh, we're making good progress in Councilor Davis, so uh, as we get into it, we'll do much better.
Well, I I guess a follow-up question I would have Mister Backham. If people don't have access to technology, can they come in and use the technology that's in the uh, civic facility? Uh, as some members of council, I believe Counselor Arneson does it, and Counselor Ferguson does it, so they're set up with equipment. Uh, in separate rooms, so they're they're just not. My concern is that if we do receive a request to accommodate, how can we do both? How can we accommodate somebody being in a physical meeting? At the same time as using electronic means, and I think that'll be way more complicated for staff to try to uh, juggle. Than if we just go to electronic means for now and revisit it come December. I do believe we should get the committees up and functioning, but like I say, I just, I I believe there is a duty to accommodate.
Thank you, I I think what this motion does is gives that option. Uh, staff can accommodate, staff would be willing to accommodate if needed, and so I don't know if we need to change this motion, it it just really gets our our committees restarted. But uh, if there was alternatives, as we're doing now.
Well, point of clarification, Mister Mayor, if if we're gonna do that, can we do that? Like, can we say to half the committee members, you don't have to come to the actual building, you can tune into the meeting by Zoom? Like, is is that physically possible? I don't think it is, I think it's either one or the other. I I could be wrong, but I'd love to know what the answer is to that.
Uh, your worship, we'll need the the assistance of Miss Bauer, because portions of it are are, I think, feasible. Um, I think our preference would be to attempt to try to have them meet remotely, of course, the question then is resources, and as I say, resources. It's not so much the technology, it also includes uh, the issue of the training, that's what we're finding is the most challenging for some, but Miss Bauer, do you have a comment?
Uh, it it did a little bit to do with the technology of it, um, we do have some smaller specific facility that would accommodate. Using Zoom on a larger scale, unfortunately, the rooms are too small, so therefore we'd have to watch the number of people that actually come. Uh, the Fraser River Presentation Theater, of course, as we understand it, does not have the technology to do that. Some of the committees may choose, I guess, I guess the way to look at it is, if this committee chooses to have a Zoom meeting. We would not prohibit that if all the committee members were comfortable doing that. The alternative would be that we do, are gonna make. Allowances for using the Fraser River Presentation Theater, as it is a bigger room, we can fit up to twenty in that room. Uh, and be socially distanced and ensure that uh, protocols are followed, individuals can wear masks, if that's what they, if they're more comfortable doing that, the committee can decide everyone wears a mask, if that's fine too. It just becomes a a way of navigating um. What the committee would like to do and the best way we can help them do that.
This this motion does a favor.
No, the motion doesn't prohibit it, if if the committee comes up with a method that they believe works best, we would definitely do our best to make sure it works.
No, but what what if, that's not, my question, Mister Mayor, is what if we have, say, two-thirds of a committee that can come to a socially distanced meeting? And one-third, because of risk factors, who can't? How does that one-third participate with the other two-thirds? Because they they're gonna want to participate, they're not gonna want to be marked absent from the meetings.
We would definitely, if that is the case, we will, we will investigate the best way to find it, to make it work, and we will find a way to make it work.
Okay, thank you, uh, Council Davis, or sorry, Counsel Artson.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted there, I I'm still musing over these comments. I like the idea of a bit of a hybrid approach, I appreciate Counselor Richter's comments about the duty to accommodate, and that we don't want to unnecessarily risk. Uh, somebody's health or that of their loved ones if we expose somebody to uh, COVID inadvertently. But what I'm wondering is whether or not, uh, I know that we are able to have distance meetings, and maybe this could include teleconferencing. Um, I'm not, as some of you are likely aware by now, I'm really not a big proponent of Zoom, I think that unfortunately, although it is a mechanism to have a meeting, make decisions and. Try and move forward, it's less than ideal for many people for a number of reasons, and I. Like the idea, as per Miss Bauer, I believe, I don't want to put words in her mouth, but my interpretation of what she was saying was. That each committee could come up with their own direction, and if they felt that their committee was comfortable. In moving forward with a in-person but socially-distanced meeting, that would be one thing. If other groups felt more comfortable with the idea that they'd all like to be on Zoom, I think it really needs to be tailored uh, to the group needs, and so I would be. Supportive of that, because it seems like staff is willing to give us the resources and to be as accommodating as possible to allow that to happen. So those are my comments.
Thank you, okay, have a few more speakers, uh, Council Davis?
Yes, um, you, um. We have four more meetings left, okay, there, uh, August we're off, so we have September, October, and November, and December. And December generally is a a social. Um. You know, I I'm finding, I I'm not gonna speak for, I'm looking at Counselor Long, and he had some good ideas about a committee. I'm not gonna speak for the committee, but it's hard to get a head of steam going. Uh, with three meetings, especially if we, if it is, even if it's a Zoom meeting, but I, you know, I'm I'm one of those categories, I'm over sixty. And um. I think you're way over sixty, Jack, or Mayor Froze, so I would question. I, I don't know.
So this, yeah, I I this is, this is really going on into twenty twenty one also, so we're we are setting the stage, and COVID nineteen has really turned everything around, so we're doing the best we can, that's all this motion is. Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
I think that comment about being too old, David, I think got everybody going, I think.
We do have to move along, we're really running out of time today.
Tell Wendy that you're getting a little bit of feedback off you, but my question is, do hybrid meetings work? Because I've tried them with other committees, uh, nothing to do with T O L, they didn't work very well, if I may through the chair to Wendy.
Just do our best. Hopefully, as time goes on, the technology's getting better, but uh, I don't know if you can answer if they work, we're gonna have to do our best and make it work. Uh, Counsel Long?
Okay, Counsel, listen here, okay, I I was involved with the Zero Waste Council long before, when I was on meth, okay, we were meeting across the nation. Using not necessarily Zoom, but whatever technology we used, very successfully for a long, long, long time, several years ago. So I don't understand, and I don't try to throw anybody under the bus or anything, but I can't believe that we are, you know, we have all the technology available to us today, and we can't seem to pull this off, poor Counsel Davis is is. Struggling over there, someone should send him over a headphone, but I mean, really, this is very, very doable. And there is a uh, an item in today's distribution list that talks about council meetings resuming in person. You've heard from other councils that are concerned about that, we should very easily be able to integrate online and in person, people will have a choice. I'm not very happy about meeting in the uh, in the Fraser Presentation Room, because we had a meeting there with uh, a presentation on the museum. with a presentation on the museum last week. And again, I'm not trying to be too critical here, but there wasn't really a lot of air circulation happening in there. People were kind of, you know, loosey goosey with the with the physical distancing, and everyone was trying hard, but it was not a very confident get together, in my opinion. But I think we need to put the resources towards having an expert come in and fix this all up. You can't have, I can hardly hear you at all. I think mine's improved because I've changed gadgets, I hope you can hear me. Mayor Froze, I'm having a real difficult time hearing you. And if we move forward into, into, the council meetings happen again, which is on today's distribution list, we're going to have to get this solved. So I'm not sure where you are, I know you want to save some time, you want to get moving. I don't see this in the motion, but we need to add the word, and I don't like to use the Zoom because I don't know who's making money, I don't know if one of us has got shares in Zoom, but it's electronic meetings is what we're trying to say. And we must find a way to integrate in person with electronic, no matter what happens from here, and certainly if things get worse or other things occur.
That's right. And this report is really just to get our committees started up again, and staff have indicated they'll do whatever they can with whatever technology to make it work. So it's all this motion is just to get them up and running again. Counselor Richter?
All right, I'd like to propose an amendment to the third paragraph. That council advisory committee meetings use electronic or hybrid means for meetings beginning in September 2020.
In addition, maybe add.
Well, it's already in the first part, the 2020s.
In addition to.
Can we just add electronic after Presentation Theater?
Electronic, yeah, the 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 main amendment that I want to make is it's electronic or hybrid means for meetings, including the Fraser River Presentation Center or other spaces in the civic facility large enough, so it's.
So perhaps, excuse me, so perhaps you just, I'm sorry, could just put down after the word followed, or, or.
And or.
Yeah, and or, 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 this stuff, or.
Who's moving the motion? Is it Counselor Richter?
Counselor, excuse me.
We're working it together, Counsel Woodward.
Okay, Counsel Richter and I are just trying to get the wording, Counsel Richter, so putting the putting your motion after the word followed with that, that would, so it's just, I don't want to limit.
Okay, and at the end, and or electronic or hybrid means for meetings.
Is there a second?
Second. I'll second that, yeah.
I'm going to call the question on that, and it's pretty straightforward. Move along. All those in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
All unanimous. So the motion as amended, call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? No, it's carried unanimously. Thank you very much. We now move on to E3, and this is our agricultural land commission application number 100382, since there are bonda nurseries.
I have to do this? Get me back.
Okay, is, is there a motion, is there a mover for this?
I'll move the motion.
Counsel Long, seconded, Counsel Kuntz, and Counsel Richter, have a question.
Oh, somebody's, he's in or out or.
Counsel Davis, you need to mute.
Okay, so I have a question because this report is quite clear on page two. The 123, the fourth paragraph down, which says that in the ALR, gathering for an event is subject to conditions of no more than 150 people in attendance, the length of the event being less than 24 hours, and a limit of 10 events per year. As the proposed events exceed these conditions, the applicant requires ALC non-farm use approval. And if you flip from there over to page six, it's quite clear, they're wanting to run this Harvest Glow from September 27th to November 3rd, and then Christmas Glow from November 22nd to January 5th. So in effect, one quarter of their year is going to be tourism activities. Like, I I don't understand why we're even voting on this. Like, why can't they just apply directly to the ALC and let them deal with it? And the other question I have is, okay, so now they've got a quarter of their year with this, what about spring glow and summer glow? Like, why not convert farms to 100% tourism activities?
Now, under the legislation, they have to come through council for a referral, and so they're doing that.
We don't have to refer it because it's clearly in excess.
That's right. But the motion's on the floor right now, so that's up to council to decide, but the legislation, they do need to send it to council, council will make that decision to refer it or not to refer it. And they have worked with the agricultural land commissioner, and this is the process that they have to follow, so.
Okay, but if we, if we're going to refer it, Mr. Mayor, can we make it very clear we're not in agreement with this? We're just processing this?
Oh, no, we refer, we refer, so.
Okay, but if we're, if we're referring it, are we saying we agree with it?
Yes, we are, we're saying that as a council.
We agree with this.
And so each individual council will make their own decision, and I'm going to support it because I agree with it up into the operation, I know how they operate, but that's up in each individual council, so if it does carry, then that would indicate that council as a whole proves our individual members, yes, we can get around that.
Oh, but that's a shame, okay.
It's, Counsel Davis? Counsel Davis? Counsel Davis, you're muted.
You are muted by host. I need to get into this.
No, you're, you're now speaking, I can hear you.
Okay, hold on.
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry, we're, I have my computer tech, try SSL computers trying to get me fixed up. Okay, the, the part of the greenhouse that they have actually are asking that be exempt is, I think it's, it looks to be twice the size of what it was two years ago. I'm concerned that we have enough problems in the township with certain smaller agriculture people, like, we've heard from them many times that are having problems in agriculture, and I I just think that everyone enjoys the glow, but I don't know if everybody understands that this greenhouse should be producing food. It was built there to produce food. There is a, there is a commercial aspect of it that sometimes isn't even related to commercial, to there's a setup time, too, on this. It says that they're going to have glow, and I think Counsel Richter pointed that out. But I, I, there's going to be a month or two, I don't know, I I'm not, I I don't know how many days there is to set up. So they're gonna, they're gonna lose a fair bit of, of more time there. I just think that the land commission denied it at, they have, like Counsel Richter pointed out, they have their rules. And there, there's a lot of, like, there's a lot of commercial buildings that would love, love to get a, a agricultural taxes and do things like this that that don't get them, that are in the wrong spot, that could accommodate glow, and and I, you know, I'm not going to say who, you know, I'm not going to point fingers, but it's an, it's a greenhouse, it should be growing food. And I know that's a simplistic way to look at it, but that's, I I don't think I'm going to support it to the ALR. It goes far beyond the event that Counsel Richter pointed out, like, it's, it's a, you know, it's a three months, it can be, it can be a long, and then storage. They store, you know, they can, they consume the house, the house with storage in between. Anyhow, I just think that it should be used for agriculture production, and I don't, you know, if if it, if they would, if they would go with the rules that the ALC put out that have, that have come over a lot of pressure from a lot of people, I think that I I'm not going to support it to the ALC. Thank you.
Counsel Arneson?
Yes, thank you, worship. It's an interesting conversation. I'll try not to take too long, but I do appreciate the input about the fact that if lands have been designated to be for agricultural production, and I know the township is currently undertaking a study about that, and food security is a huge issue. I guess I'm troubled by the fact that we have this joint jurisdiction, which from time to time is problematic. And I likely recognize, although I don't have a crystal ball, that if this has been recently turned down by the Agricultural Land Commission, this is sort of the final appeal to make another approach to them. And so, to me, the local government beyond just agricultural use has a balancing perspective. And to look at what this means to business, to the viability of farms in general, those are the kind of things that I think is really required in this discussion. So I'm not coming out pro or con, and unusually, because I usually like to make these decisions firmly in our local jurisdiction, but I would just believe that the Agricultural Land Commission, as it's constituted, would be its job to make that determination. So we have a different job. We have to look at a balancing of interests, and there is that aspect of agriculture being very critical. But it's also something that we're now being asked to weigh in on. So I think I'm actually going to support this because I think that it would be fair and reasonable just to send it forward, and if for the very reasons they declined in the first place, based on the information provided, the Agricultural Land Commission wishes to do that, then I'm happy to hear what they have to say.
Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, this is agriculture and its economic and business advancement. We put a task for it, we have an advisory committee that deals with both of these areas, and this is an example of dealing with both of these areas. I, I, you know, this is, this isn't really a greenhouse that grows food. It was never established that way. It was a greenhouse that is a nursery that supplies flowers and plants for our community to enjoy. And it's a different kind of agriculture, but it's all part of agriculture. And it's an agricultural business, and this is the kind of thing we do need in our community to keep our economy growing and developing, and so I certainly am supportive of this. I think it makes great sense, both from agriculture and from business.
Yeah, I appreciate what Counselor Davis had to say, but I would add that agriculture, like, crops are seasonal, and, I mean, you don't grow corn all year long. But, and I, and I don't think that Darvanda has a, you know, growing season all year long, so this might be able to enhance maybe what they can do on their farm. But, so, yeah, I would, I would support that, but I I do hear what the other counselors are saying, but I'm, I would support it going through to the ALC.
Okay, I'm seeing any further discussions, someone call a question, all those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed, Richter.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter, who else is opposed, Counsel Davis? Who else, whoever missed? Okay, so we have Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter, Counsel Davis opposed. So the motion carries, thank you. E4, I'm going to declare conflict of interest because I have an interest in a property in that vicinity. So I'll ask Counsel Davis to take this over and ask Ms. Bauer to put me in the waiting room for people who are.
Okay, can you hear me? Bob, shake your head, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, that's who fixed me. Free advertisement. Okay, I'm sorry, I'm being cheeky. While we were talking, he remoted me, and we, I can hear you guys really well, and okay, we're going to deal with E, E4? I think it's E4, E4, a report, the Danny, Demi, Denny's Ross Memorial Park Open House results. Can I have a motion to bring it on the table?
Motion to.
Counsel, Counsel Mark.
Arnison, yeah.
And Arnison seconded it. Do we have any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, I, you know, I can't tell who, oh, I can tell over here. Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Thanks. I just had one question. I'm glad that we're listening to the public's wishes on this. They were certainly very strongly opposed to chewing into that park area at all for parking. But I'm just wondering, will additional parking be put on the development site, or is that additional parking just gone now? Maybe Mr. Safi?
Mr. Safi, could you comment on that?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. The development portion of, the adjacent development, I should say, has provided more than what is required pursuant to the zoning bylaw, so they are proceeding based on the fact that they have met the objectives and, and there won't be any additional requirement. There has been a condition that was established by council at time of granting the approvals for the developer to contribute towards the the parking in the park. And staff has confirmed with the developer that the the contribution can go to whatever council ultimately desires. And the preference to be with respect to improvements at Denny Ross Park, because that was always the intent to improve the general area, so that is the preference of the developer, but there won't be any additional parking provided.
Okay, so do we know where the, their contribution is going to go?
Improvements at Denny Ross Park.
Oh, just improvements at Denny, okay. Thank you.
Okay, you know, I didn't know what, what, what they came on, so can I just go to, what order, can I just go to Counselor Long, and I'll go down the list that way? Is that okay, you guys? Counselor Long?
Yeah, thanks, Acting Mayor. Yeah, I was just wondering now, is there any chance that this money could be put towards perhaps widening this, the road there a little bit to to allow some other street parking? Because I know there's going to be some, there was some safety concerns. And of course, that was overridden by the, by eroding into the park with all this parking, and I understand how the psychology of that works, but the fact is, if there were safety concerns, is there any way that we can, we can use this money to enhance the parking in the area, similar to what Counsel Richter has asked? Is there any way we could enhance some parking in the area with that money?
Mr. Safi or Mr. Backham, either one? Comments?
I don't see Mr. Backham turning off it. Oh, there he goes.
Mr. Safi, I was going to have you respond.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, indeed. Mr. Acting Chair, the, the, the contribution from the developer is intended to be used to improve parking and parkland in the, in the neighborhood. So that is certainly something that is within the the realm of possibilities to improve parking in the area, to the extent that is not a dedicated parking lot within the park, as that was opposed by the the public.
Yeah, and and just to complete the, my, my comments, then that's great to hear. And I think we should also be looking, and I'm sure staff are already, looking at safety issues in the area. Maybe with markings or lighting or whatever has to happen to make sure that even though we've decided not to put this parking in, we don't want to have a situation where some, somebody runs out in the road and get, you know, gets harmed, or if there's, you know, people bumping into each other. So as long as that's the case, I'm happy to support it, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Long. Counselor Arneson, your comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I just wanted to comment, I'm very pleased with this result. I know that a number of counselors went to the open house, and we were very vigilant, I think, in talking to the community, and the community engagement, I thought was very clear as to what the immediate community was interested in. So I think it's a good balancing of interests and a good object lesson for council that sometimes if a staff report comes forward, you know, part of our obligation is to look and listen and try and figure out if there's something better that could be done, and I think Mr. Safi put it very well, that these monies can be done towards improvement for parking, which does address safety concerns, but also about the tree canopy and the amenities for the park area. So I think that's a very positive situation that we've come up with, so I'm very supportive of the staff report going forward.
Okay, Counselor Woodward, your comments, please?
I'll, I'll wait and come back.
Well, what, what will you wait for? You're the last speaker.
Is Counsel Kuntz not speaking before I?
Oh, oh, I, okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Counsel, now I've got to get glasses. Counsel Kuntz, please, your comments. You're muted, I think, Counsel Kuntz.
Oh, I thought maybe they liked my comment about.
Oh, I thought maybe they liked my comment about corn. That's why you're not going to let me speak. Just kidding. Hey, I'm, I'm concerned. I, I appreciate the report. Do we know how long it's been that, that residents in the area have experienced this? The lack of parking up there? And will, now that this new development is in there and there's going to be more people there and maybe less parking? I guess my concern is, really is, is the kids, is that when they get dropped off, mom and dad are in a hurry. They don't have a parking spot or they don't know where they're going to get a parking spot. So they're going to quickly sort of, you know, open the door and, you know, kind of quickly drop them off in, on the, and these are, these may not be residents of Murrayville, but these will be, you know, soccer moms and, and, you know, people playing baseball, you know, quick, you know, drop off. So that's my concern and those people, of course, would not vote. But, you know, I, and, and looking at the residents who in front of the off-street parking. So do we know, are we ever going to come back to this to find out, you know, in a year from now? If option one may still be an option and that people may have changed their mind? Or what we do now is kind of set in, set in stone?
Mr. Backham or Mr. Staffy, would you like to comment on that? Either one?
Mr. Staffy.
Thank you. It is not set in stone. And in fact, because of the uncertainty in terms of how best to utilize the funding that's available, there may be some wisdom in, 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 I guess, seeing out how the maturity of the development, if I can put it that way, if the, the billing out of the, of the development is going to impact parking or lack thereof, before the, the funding is put to, to any use, that may be a, a good tactical approach. And just to refresh council's memory, this became an issue not because of parking becoming an issue in the area, but rather because of the sale of the, the school site by the school district and the fact that typically the school sites are, are combined joint school and park sites with the township of Langley, that the, the supporting infrastructure supports, both of them at the same time. So because of that, there was an anticipated need for provision of, of parking that was being taken away. But as I said earlier, this is not set in stone and staff will await the evolution of the development site and, and determine how best to utilize the funding.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Woodward, Woodward, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm again, I've been looking just last few minutes here, going over the staff report again, to confirm what, at the end of the resolution that's suggested here, what other park improvements actually could mean or would mean.
Okay, Counsel, Mr. Staffy?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Acting Chair. The, some of the improvements that staff is aware of are, are fencing in the area potentially to, to prevent a conflict with the residences. And typically what has been working and successful and in much demand in other parks, I don't know specifically if that's the case here or not, is adding or improving or enhancing playground facilities for, for children.
Okay, I just want to clarify that that's the direction it's headed. It's not, it's not headed for, for anything other than that. Or if it is, we would, we wouldn't be necessarily aware of it with the wording of this motion. But I wanted to confirm it's not going to be going for park.
Okay.
Okay, I just want, actually, Mr. Counsel Davis, I'd like to have that confirmed.
Yes, yes. Counselor Staffy, can you confirm that?
I think Counsel Woodward is, is requesting council to confirm that, Mr. Acting Chair, what the intent is.
Okay, I don't understand how I, how I, we're going to confirm, we'll confirm that with a vote. But I don't.
If I could be helpful, Counsel Davis, what, what I was trying to get to was that it's going to be going towards park improvements, which do not include additional parking lots on that site.
Okay, so you're making a statement.
No, I'd like to have that confirmed because that's, unless I'm missing it in the staff report, it doesn't specifically outline what the improvements are. And park improvements could potentially be parking.
Yes.
So, yeah. Mr. Acting Chair, maybe I can provide that clarification. The intent at this point, based on the public feedback and council direction, is not to utilize the funding for additional parking, but rather for park improvements. But as was suggested earlier, it may be appropriate to await the actual utilization of the funding pending additional comments that council may receive from the public in the area. But at this point, that is the intent, to not provide additional parking.
Does that, does that clarify, Counsel Woodward? Or is, you want to, you're looking for a cut and dry answer, aren't you?
Well, I mean, I would prefer, it would be good to get some resolution to this because if there's still some concern that engineering studies may reveal the need for some parking, I wouldn't want to, to have this motion sort of say that a park improvement could include parking. So other park improvements may be another version of the three slides that were presented. I'd like to clarify, if we're still considering potentially proceeding with additional parking on that park in a different form, that, at least we're made aware of that with a chance to review that prior to that proceeding.
Okay, I, the way I took it from Mr. Staffy is that it is not going to be at this time.
Perhaps, perhaps, Mr. Chair, I can just say that, I can add to it that it will not be used for anything else unless otherwise directed by council.
Okay, well, that, to me, that's, that, is that clarified, Counsel Woodward?
Sufficient, thank you, yeah.
Sufficient, thank you. Is there anymore, I don't see any more on the comments on the speaker's list? So, and no comments from staff? May we make a decision? If you're opposed, say opposed. Okay, it passes unanimously. Can we have Mayor Frosback? There's this pitcher. Are you there, Mr. Mayor?
I am, thank you very much.
Okay, take it over. Thank you.
Okay, all right, so now we move on to bylaws for first and second reading. Resorting application number 100578 and development permit application number 101111. Centerra West End Developments.
Move for a second, Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves it. Sir, seconded.
I'll second.
Counsel Coons, or sorry, yeah, Counsel Coons, second. Discussion, seen none. I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Seen none. Carries unanimously. Now we move on to bylaws for first, second, and third reading. G1 is highway closure, dedication, removal, and disposal. Santill, bylaw number 5621. Could I have a motion, please?
Move.
Counsel Whitmarsh and the seconded. Counsel Long, discussion, seen none. I'll call a question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay, so I got Counsel Richter opposed. And Counsel Arnison?
Yes.
And were there any others? So Counsel Richter, Counsel Arnison opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. Bylaws for consideration for third reading. H1 is resorting application number 100569, development permit application number 101081, development variance permit application number 100123, bylaw 5598. Fuller, can I have a motion, please?
Move.
Counsel Whitmarsh and the seconded. Counsel Coons, discussion, Counsel Ferguson. Counsel Ferguson, you might be muted, you can mute it, Counsel Ferguson.
I wanted to ask you, there was a letter from Mrs. Greewall about, I guess, her property and surrounded, I guess, development and the pocket park, if I may, through Chair of Staff?
Sure, Mr. Staffy.
Thank you, Your Worship. The acquisition of the pocket park remains a prerequisite for a number of applications in the area and, and they cannot obtain final reading until such time as it's been secured to the satisfaction of the township.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Richter.
Yes, I had a phone call today earlier from a neighbor and they're quite concerned that they weren't really given an opportunity for public input on this. And I even have to look at the, the clerk's note, which says allows for written submission opportunities only when in-person public input opportunities are not required. Did we not have a public hearing on this where people could show up to give opinions on it?
Mr. Backham, I believe we're allowing written submissions, Mr. Backham. Ms. Powell, if you want to explain the process.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll try to clarify. Where an application is consistent with the overall community plan, the statute and legislative scheme does not require there to be a public hearing. In those circumstances, however, we have provided that we would accept written submissions during the period of COVID and that period lasts till the end of December, as I recall. So during the, or until the state of emergency is actually lifted. So at this point, we're consistent with the policy that we've been approached, given the COVID environment.
Well, I guess the question that I have is why do we have something on the public hearing tonight, but not the other ones that got first and second?
Question, Mr. Backham.
No, thank you, Your Worship. That is because the QRD application for this evening is not consistent with the community plan. It requires a community plan amendment and therefore it does still require the public hearing to, to allow for input.
Okay, and the third question I have is with regards to the pocket park and in particular, the securing of the pocket park. The neighbor that I spoke to is very concerned that they are going to have to be the one to develop the pocket park because they're the last piece of undeveloped land. Is that true? Or will that person that has the last piece of undeveloped land be paid by the other developers for this pocket park? Could, can I get clarification on that?
Mr. Second.
Thank you, Your Worship. The requirement for the acquisition of the pocket park is not on one individual development, but rather for the area, for the subcatchment that is believed to be benefiting from and, and utilizing the pocket park. So it is a collective effort. It is not an individual effort. I hope that this is a question.
Well, I guess the, probably the bigger question is, will that person who is going to end up with the pocket park on their property get fair market value for that land as if it had been able to be developed with housing? I, I think they're quite concerned that they're going to end up with the short end of the stick here. How do we make sure that doesn't happen?
Your Worship, fair market value is fair market value and it's usually dependent on the, the submission of at least one professional appraiser's input and, and often more than one because there, there is often disagreement between the parties as to what's an appropriate or what's an acceptable, I guess, appraisal. So sometimes it takes one, sometimes two, sometimes three appraisals before the parties agree. And that then constitutes the, the fair market value and that's typically how transactions are, are conveyed, is based on fair market value.
Okay, and when these appraisers are doing these fair market value appraisals, are they taking into consideration what that land would have been worth had it been allowed to have several row houses put on it, as an example, instead of a pocket park?
Your Worship, as I understand it, an appraisal is typically based on the designation in the plan. So an appraisal takes a look and say, what could it possibly be used for? And if it's multifamily development, then that's what they will use for their assessment. And if it's a single family, then that's what they use for their assessment. And we do not just to take that, that further, we do not, in our neighborhood plans, identify any particular site or any particular private property for public uses. So there's no property that's be, that is being born with the heavy burden of, of having to, to be the, the pocket park or the retention on, for the entire site.
Okay, so the person whose property is probably going to end up with this pocket park on it can be somewhat assured then that the appraisals will reflect what the zoning would have been without the pocket park. Like, they're not going to get stuck with park value assessment as opposed to housing value assessment. I think that's what I'm hearing you say. Is that correct?
That's correct. And perhaps I can just add, this is a private matter. We do not play a role in it. We try to, the township tries to not interfere with, with the, the market forces in terms of what a property owner may be willing to sell for or, or purchase a property for. And as such, it remains a prerequisite for the developers in the area to acquire the satisfaction of the vendor.
Okay, and now is there an appeal mechanism? If the vendor ends up being sort of, well, I, I think they're feeling like they're being put in a corner here. Do they have an appeal mechanism to township or to anywhere else if they're not happy?
Well, Your Worship, if, if a vendor is not happy, I guess they, there's no pressure or there's no requirement, obligation for them to, to, to sell.
To accept the offer.
To accept the offer, right.
But all the other developments can't proceed unless there's a pocket park put in place, correct?
They cannot. That's correct.
Okay, so they're going to have to come up with something else or another location for that pocket park. The vendor is not obligated to accept whatever price they're being offered.
That's correct. And the township is, is if there are alternatives put forward, the township staff typically bring those forward to council for consideration in terms of meeting the objectives of the neighborhood plan or not. So there are other options available to the developers in the area if they believe that they have made the best reasonable effort and still are unable to acquire a certain parcel.
Okay, but basically the, the, the person with the last piece of property doesn't have to sell it for park if they don't want to?
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And thank you for the discussion. Seen none. I'm going to call the question on H1. All those in favor?
Favorit.
Any opposed?
Richter is opposed.
Okay, thank you. The motion carries. We move on to H2. H2 is resorting application number 100551 and development permit application number 101044. Mayor Buildings Group, Central Limited, bylaw 5600. Can I have a motion, please?
Move, Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves it. Seconded. Counsel Whitmarsh. Any discussion? Seen none. So I'm going to call the question. All those.
Oh, now just a minute, Mr. Mayor. I have my hand up.
Oh, there it is. It just popped up now. So it's a little bit of a delay.
It's a little bit of a delay, okay.
From your place to my place. Counsel Richter, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I have, as Counselor Davis has noted, just wanted to make the point that 135 significant trees are on this property and none are going to be retained. 179 replacement trees are required. But where will those locate, where will those replacement trees be located? Will they be located on this property?
Or Staffy?
Yes, Your Worship, the, the intent is to accommodate them all on the, the site. That's what the, the proposal currently involves. And if for any reason they're not able to, then typically in the area, on the streets, pocket parks, anything within the same catchment is, is what happens.
Okay, and I just wanted to make a, a comment here too with regards to the, the, the five big moves in the climate action strategy that we talked about earlier and increased tree canopy and rainwater capture. Why can't we increase tree canopy by not cutting trees and just hopefully retain tree canopy? I look at 135 trees coming out and that just seems such a big number. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. For the discussion. Seen none. I'm going to call the question on H2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any opposed?
Richter is opposed.
Counsel Richter is opposed. The motion carries. Move on to H3. This is resorting application number 100554 and development permit application number 101050, bylaw number 5608, by architecture. Can I have a motion, please? development permit application number 101050, bylaw number 5608, by architecture. You have a motion, please. Counsel Davis wins it, Counsel Kuntz seconds. Any discussion on H3? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Any opposed?
Opposed, opposed, Arneson.
Arneson, and was it Counsel Richter also?
No, I wasn't opposed to this one.
Okay, thank you. So Counsel Arneson opposed. The motion carries. Thank you. We move on to H4. H4 is rezoning application number 100565 and development permit application number 101073. By architecture, a motion, please, on H4.
Move Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson moves, second, and Counsel Long seconds. Discussion, Counsel Richter.
Yep, 84 significant trees on this property, none to be retained, and only 50 replacements. I'm not supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Davis.
Thank you. You know, I didn't make it out to look. The water tower's not, or there's a cell tower. It's not on that piece of property, is it?
No, your worship, it is not.
And neither is the water tower? It's not, eh?
No.
It must be beside it, then. Okay, it doesn't matter. If it's not on it, that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no further discussions. I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Is that Counsel Arneson? Opposed, and is that all opposed? Counsel Arneson opposed?
No, and Richter, too, please.
And Richter, okay, thank you. There seems to be a bit of a delay, so I'll slow it down a bit. It's just a delay coming in my feed here. And so the motion carries with Counsel Arneson and Counsel Richter opposed. Moving on to H5. And H5 is rezoning application number 100586. This is bylaw number 5613. You have a motion, please. Counsel Davis moves it, second. Second. Counsel Long seconds it. Counsel Richter.
Yes, I wanted to note on this that the neighbors, there weren't a whole lot of people that showed up to the open house, but the ones that did show up made a request to push the houses back for longer driveways as more parking is needed, and this is seen on pages 18, 20, and 21. Also, I wanted to note that the developer wasn't opposed to this idea. So can we refer this back to staff to allow for the houses to be pushed back further so that more parking can be accommodated on each of the lots?
Mr. Seppi, can you comment on?
Yes, thank you, your worship. I will just quickly share the screen so we know what we are all referring to, your worship. So it's really a question of whether the intent of council is to require something that goes beyond the zoning bylaw provisions or not. As you can see on the screen, your worship, the subdivision is seven lot subdivision. It complies with the neighborhood plan density and designation. And if council wishes to have something that is beyond the zoning bylaw, council may wish to direct staff to provide or ensure a condition of the development is to have a covenant entitled that requires a more than standard setback for certain lots. I presume it's referenced with lots four, five, six, and seven, and not necessarily one, two, or three, but I don't have the information in front of me, so I don't know what the intent of council might be, your worship.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wonder if I could go back to that then, because on page 16 in H5, number C, and this was the letter from the engineering company to our planning staff, that three of the attendees would like to see the proposed homes fronting 205 Street to have longer driveways to accommodate four cars plus a garage. And then there's a note that the developer is in favor of this. And now, the attendees also did not want rain gardens, but I think rain gardens is part of the climate action strategy. They wanted those rain gardens removed in order to put more parking on 205 Street. I'm not in favor of removing the rain gardens, but I would like to move that we refer this back to staff to work on, what was it that Mr. Seppi said, work on pushing the lot lines back so that more parking could be accommodated on those lots. So I would make that motion.
You know, so move?
They're second. Move. Counsel Davis. So. Okay, discussion. Counsel Ferguson.
Oh, yes, I just wanted to say that it's, I think it's, I need more of a clarification. So if this is a referral for clarification, because sometimes one consultant will say something and another consultant will say something else. I need to clarify what's happening with our zoning bylaw and with all the necessary measurements that have to go in place when they put together the plan. So I'm more interested more of a clarification rather than a direction. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Counsel Whitmarsh?
Yeah, just a question from your worship, the staff. When I'm looking at the road here, it looks like the, is it true that the road is going to be widened to be 20 meters? Is that what I'm seeing as opposed to even the standard 18 that we typically have in subdivisions?
That is the intent, your worship. The road width is 20 meters and is intended to remain consistent with the existing road pattern that has been established in the area. So the subject side, you can see it here, is an existing road, 205 Street, that is fronting, and because of the existing width, the intent is to match that and remain consistent. As such, the 20 meters.
So there would be parking on both sides of 205 Street with a 20-meter-wide road?
That is typically the case, your worship, yes. Parking on both sides. I have to take a look and refresh.
Yeah, point of clarification, I read in the package somewhere that there would only be parking on one side of the road.
While you're looking at this, I believe the the people who attended that open house were asking for the houses to push back, not for the lots to be made.
That's correct, your worship. That was my understanding, based on Counsel Richter's suggestions to push the billing envelope, not the, to push the billing envelope further back to
Allow for the parking, yeah, so allow for parking in the laneways to those houses. Four cars plus a garage, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Long?
Thank you. So this is a little bit complicated because we're not going to have a public hearing. So normally, we would, well, not normally, but possibly, we could have a public hearing, and then the proponent might offer to move the houses. There's always unintentional consequences. If you shove the houses back, that means you've got smaller backyards. That means kids can't play in the back, so I don't know how that's going to play out. But under this scenario, let me get this clear, what Mr. Seppi said. If we ask staff to go back and ask for something that is not required, would that not trigger a public hearing then? Could that? How does that work?
Mr. Seppi?
No, your worship, there's no, there's no need for a public hearing. It is a question of whether council wishes to impose an additional condition on this, on this development prior to third reading or concurrent with third reading, I should say, not prior to, concurrent with third reading, that would require something more than what the zoning bylaw allows in terms of the buildable area of the lots.
Now, let me please repeat that. Are you saying that this motion would reduce the buildable area or move the building back? Big difference.
It would increase, it would increase the the requirement for the building to be further set back from the road than what the zoning bylaw allows. And I don't know what those are.
Okay, but the building, the building, the lot coverage would remain the same, it's just moving the house back. Is that right?
Well, it would, by extension or extrapolation, it would mean a smaller building envelope, unless there is a commensurate relaxation to reduce the setback from the opposite side.
Wow, okay, well, I prefer to wait, okay, if the motion, now there's an amendment to go back, but if we go back to where we originally started, and that was to pass this, we would get public input, and then it would come back for third reading, and we could make changes there after more public input, not just the open house. So I really feel that that's the more appropriate route to go, is to move it on. Keep this in mind. I've got notes. Counsel Richter's, of course, got notes. Everyone has notes that this has been proposed. I'd prefer to see what the written submissions say before we start mucking with it. So I guess I can support the motion as it stands.
Thank you. So, so just Mr. Seppi, he's a 509 square meter lot, so my quick math is about, they're about, as I have to go to square feet, they're like 5,400, 5,500 square foot lots. So, yeah, moving, moving the houses back, certainly the builder said that he would do something to accommodate. We're just looking at a subdivision plan, not a, not a, where the building goes. So you're right, we could make a covenant, move them back, but there isn't a lot of room in these lots. They're, they're a good size, but they're not huge, so. The neighboring lots, they're moved smaller. They're like 371 square meters, 3509 square meters, so they're going to be even less. But on a 5400 square foot lot, are these front-loaded or back-loaded for the house situation?
Your worship, these appear to be front-loaded.
Front-loaded, so there'd be driveway and a garage off of 205, then.
That's correct.
And typically, for this size lot, it's a driveway long enough to park a car.
And the larger lots, your worship, the ones fronting 205 Street, as you can see on this plan, they're around 500 square meters, which are fairly, fairly good size, and typically require a full parking lot onsite for parking in any case.
And these are
Or is a requirement.
And these are the lots that we're discussing.
Additional, yeah.
So there is enough space to have two cars on the apron and two cars in the garage. That's what this is.
That's correct.
Okay, then, yeah. Thank you. Counsel Richter?
Yeah, I just want to go again to page 16. And this was the letter to the township from the engineering and surveying company, Coastland. And they've got three points there. The first point was on-street parking, and they're the ones that say, note, ultimate roads are only 8.6 meters wide, which limits parking to one side only. So they're responding to the parking issues that have come out. There were four people who put in sheets, and they all basically said parking was a problem. And then C on that same page, well, B, they wanted to remove the swales. There's no comment from the developer there. And C says that they wanted the proposed homes fronting 205 Street to have longer driveways to accommodate four cars plus garage. And the developer clearly says that they're in favor of this. So I don't see why this would be a problem if the developer's in favor of it.
Okay, so I'm still not going to support it. That's a pretty big lot. We have four cars on driveway.
Yeah.
But anyways, I'm going to call the question on the amendment. All those. Counsel Long, sorry.
Yeah, very quickly, I think that's the point, your worship. This amendment would mean you're going to have four cars in the driveway and two in the garage. You've got a parking lot there. That's just a little too much. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the amendment, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed.
So I gotta read them off. Counsel Long, Mayor Fros, Counsel Davis, and Counsel Whitmarsh, Counsel Woodward, who else?
Ferguson.
Counsel Ferguson.
Ferguson opposed.
Opposed. Margaret.
Counsel Arneson and Counsel Kuntz opposed. Motion fails. Back to the main motion. Counsel Kuntz on the main motion, your worship. Counsel Kuntz, your hands up.
Oh, sorry, no, I.
Okay, so on the main motion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed. And one opposed, Counsel Richter, and the motion carries. Thank you. H6, rezoning application number 100540 and development permit application number 101019, Happy UK Architecture Incorporated. Bylaw 5604. You have a motion, please. Counsel Davis moves it, second by Counsel Long. Discussion on H6. Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
And opposed?
Opposed. Opposed.
Arneson and Richter opposed.
I'm opposed as well, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Woodward opposed. Any other opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And I'll move on to bylaws. Final adoption, the bylaw on development permits, rezoning application number 100564, development variance permit application number 100100, bylaw 5479. You have a motion on the bylaw, please. Counsel Long moves, Counsel Kuntz seconds. Discussion on the bylaw. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carries unanimously. On the development variance permit application number 100100, can I have a motion on that, please? Counsel Davis moves it, second, and Counsel Kuntz, discussion on the DDP. Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have one item of correspondence, we have a motion to receive the letter. Counsel Davis and Counsel Arneson seconds. Any discussion on receipt? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Carries unanimously. And I'll move on to the mayor and council report. Start with this. I think there's a couple of slides coming up, and I know Counsel Arneson, you wanted to add something at the end. Is that correct?
Yes, thank you, your worship.
Thanks.
Mayor Fros, are you doing the mayor's report?
I am, just waiting for the clerk to put up the slides.
Could I, I just at the end have something to add?
Okay, so. I'm going to start some technical difficulties. So I'm going to start with my report. Good evening, everyone. Out in Zoom land. On Saturday morning, June 27, I participated in an online discussion with Dr. Brendan Martin, other elected officials and members of the community. It was titled, "The Lanyon Conversation: Climate Crisis and Conflict", with keynote speaker, Dr. Mary Lynn Ashford. This was a conversation about the impact of militarization on our climate and the need to work toward removing the threat of nuclear war for the sake of peace and security, and also for the health of our planet. The township of Lanyon is working carefully to implement changes stemming from the provincial government's restart plan, which is in phase three. Residents can now take part in a smart, safe, and respectful travel within Virge, Colombia. And international travels returning to the province are required by law to self-isolate for 14 days and complete a site self-isolation plan. The motion picture and TV production industry must have a COVID-19 safety plan in place based on the protocols set out by WorkSafe BC. There's being a gradual return to school. Township parks and trails are open with physical distancing protocols in place, and playgrounds are opening through a phased approach. No league playing, organized games, or large gatherings are allowed, and games are not permitted on sports fields until the province provides authorization. More information, please visit tol.ca/covid19. And of course, Wednesday, July 1, is Canada Day. And celebrations are being presented virtually by the township of Lanyon all day long at tol.ca/candadaday. There will be free, family-oriented, online entertainment, performances, workshops, and a special ceremony at 7:00 p.m. As well, a COVID-aware Canada Day parade will be held by Aldergold Agricultural Fair and Festival Association. The physically distanced parade begins at 9:30 a.m., starting and ending at the Aldergold Community Secondary School. Everyone is encouraged to wear red, put on their face masks, leave lots of room, and celebrate our community and Canadian pride. Stay safe and stay healthy. Thank you very much. Stay safe and stay healthy, thank you very much. And now I'll ask Counsel Arneson.
Hi, yes, thank you, your worship. Um, some of you may be aware, having heard the news release today or otherwise. I just want to report that Metro Vancouver had a press release and announcement saying that they had achieved in the year twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. Carbon neutrality, and just sort of to clarify, because I think it's helpful, that that was the corporate entity of Metro Vancouver that was able to achieve that, that's not community-wide. But, um, their press release indicated that there were a variety of GHD reduction projects, including forest conversion projects, avoiding taking out forests. The use of trenchless technology and the ecological restoration of Burns Bog in a joint effort with the city of Delta. And so they had a live streaming event today at the Burns Bog Ecological Conservancy area. And it was meant to highlight and promote the idea that climate action is going forward and that we are making large and larger strides in the advancement of low-carbon economic stimulus from senior levels of government in order to address climate change mitigation and adaptation, so that's my report.
Very much, yeah, we did on the news, good news. But Counsel Davis?
Yes, I, uh, thank you, I had the, um, opportunity to, uh, sit in for, as acting mayor, uh, to the, um, Langley Healthier, uh, Community Partnership Meeting, um, as acting mayor, and, um, good news was Lauren Roberts reported that, uh, uh, BC's going to be getting, um, eleven, what they call foundry centers in BC. And a foundry center is where youth ages from twelve to twenty-four, uh, and their families can ask for help, uh, look at mental health problems, stand, uh, drugs and alcohol abuse, uh, and employment outreach center. We have a, a center already, but the province is gonna call it a foundry. And, um, they're putting up eight hundred thousand to start each one. Um, and then the number two, there's going to be a seven hundred thousand in annual operating fundings for them. For this, this is a, uh, basically a youth resort site, and so that's good news for the, um, that's good news, uh, to build on, uh, the one we already have, so that's, I'd just like to report that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good to see that, uh, pop for the resources for, so, for youth, thank you. All right, so we'll move on to items from prior meetings, and Counsel Woodward is pressing considerations, Counsel Woodward, you're the floor, so. The process procedure is to move second, no debate, we vote on reconsideration, and then if, uh, successful, we move on to the, uh, the actual motion, so Counsel Woodward.
Uh, yeah, I'll just move reconsideration.
Is there a secondary?
I'll second.
Second by Counsel Coons, I'm gonna call the question on reconsideration, all those in favor? Opposed?
Richter is opposed.
Counsel Richter opposed, any others opposed to reconsideration? Nope, so that reconsideration carries.
Sorry, excuse me, your worship, sorry, I'm opposed.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Arneson opposed, Counsel Richter, Counsel Arneson, thank you for, there you go. So now, uh, the motion, I always have to ask, it's on the floor as it was, does it, does it need moving secondly?
No, we start with the motion again, so we would need to move it second.
Okay, so, um, need a motion to move the soil deposit application. For property, Counsel Woodward, you wish to move that?
Sure.
Okay, is there a secondary? Counsel Whitmarsh seconded it, so it's on the floor.
Just to clarify, um, it is moved and seconded as it was adopted, so the current motion says that the council will not refer it. So it is a backwards motion per se, so.
That's right, so, so, um, so Counsel Woodward, it's back on, it's back in the beginning, so you could move it to be referred to the agriculture.
Yeah, so what I, what I'd like to do though is need to hear from other members of council first, so I didn't bring this back to switch my vote necessarily. Um, I brought this back to give the proponent a chance to repetition the properties, uh, repetition the area as per the existing policy, removing the. South side of the freeway.
But not right yet.
Okay, so.
Sorry, someone's not muted.
Counsel Richter, your, um, your mic is on, there you go, thank you, and Counsel Arneson.
So just repeat that for people that may not, may have missed that, the, I'd like to subject other members of council to getting a chance to, I won't move it quite yet, but my goal is to refer this back to staff to repetition as per the policy. Uh, excluding the properties on the south side of Highway one.
Okay, so that would be your motion.
That's correct, that would be the motion.
Okay, so, there are no other speakers listed, so if you wanna move that?
Okay, I'll move that.
Is there a secondary? Uh, Counsel, Counsel, it's the secretary we discussed, secondary? Counsel Coons seconds the referral back to staff, staff for repetition, uh, Counsel Long.
Well, I'm so confused, I, I don't think we need to go back and repetition. I think this, I, I, I must have a different view of, of this whole procedure than others on council, and I, I, I'm sure we'd like to get it all nailed, so it's, everything's sort of lined up the way it should be, but. My understanding is the policy is to, is to survey the, the properties in the area. This is referred to, to council, council makes a decision based upon the information it gets from the survey. The survey may or may not be successful, so to speak, I'm sure if it was extremely successful, it would come back with a no-grant. Okay, ninety-nine percent of the people think it's a wonderful idea, but we end up with all of these, um, surveys that go out and they don't get responded to, so. I often, some may think, well, then the policy isn't being properly, uh, applied. I might think, well, if, if eighty people don't respond, they probably don't mind, or maybe eight, seventy of them never got the notice, I'm not sure really what it is that makes the, these numbers show up. But I always look at the, the, the application itself, I take into consideration the survey that's done, and I make my decision. Now, if we're gonna go out and, and continue to re-survey until we get the right results, I don't know if that's gonna work, because that's just a, a whole lot of staff time, and it kind of, in, in, in a way, I think that's, that's probably a sad way to look at the policy, to keep pushing it until it happens, so anyway, I don't think I wanna see it go out for, uh, for another policy, but if I remember correctly, I was supportive of it, and I would be again. Uh, and if, and if we wanted to approve it, I'd be happy to do that, but the motion on the floor is to send it up for survey. Uh, which I don't think I can support, so what happens if this, well, I guess we'll see what happens, your worship, thank you.
Yeah, so, so if, if this, uh, motion is successful, uh, then staff would re, re-petition the neighborhood, studying the south side of the freeway. Then we get that information, and I just, I just wanna add, council, within the policy, council does have the ability to make a decision, taking all the information in, it, it may not be that the numbers, uh, aligned, but council is in a position to take a look at it, for instance, if there's one property owner with several properties that, you know, and every property counted, then, you know, we have, we have the ability as individual council members to take that into consideration when we make a decision, so. The survey isn't binding, it's not a, you know, council always has.
Right, it's not binding, so then, if this, if this passes, then the, the survey would come back, the council would be basically in the same position as before, although we don't know what the results will be, and of course, the, the area has been adjusted in this motion as well. Am I correct?
Yes, it has.
The motion adjusted the, the, uh, the area, should we move what again?
It's the.
South side of?
South side of Highway one.
Okay, thank you, your worship.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I thought, I, that was my question, south side of the, I thought.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get to you, Counsel Davis.
Okay, sorry.
Uh, Counsel Ferguson?
Uh, this always a tricky one, we, uh, it's like a double negative, where yes, we're voting yes and no to no, yes. So the thing is, I, I, we'd probably like to clarify, and I'm not sure if this, uh, amendment actually clarifies it, I'm not sure about footing. Or, or the most. We have a new motion, I guess, well, there you go.
The motion to refer, uh, the soil deposit application back to staff to repetition, and then bring it back for council's consideration, that's what the motion is.
Okay, so like I say, I'm not to, to a situation where I wanna repetition it yet, or even, or even actually, um, break up the property, I'm back to the point where I think Counsel Long might have mentioned it, so we could clarify it, just the, to support it. Now regarding our policy, it's more like a guideline, so if we, we have in, in policies, we review the policy, we have three options. Whether number one, we approve it, uh, number two, we, uh, deny it, or number three, we can make, uh, decisions based on information we have, and, and for the benefit of the community. So certainly that's where I'm at, I'd see it, end up, end up giving a benefit to the community to enhance that land. So, um, I'll look for, I'm not gonna support the amendment, or the motion, um, perhaps we can have another motion come forward.
Yeah, listen up, thank you, Counsel Richter.
Yes, um, so I'm just wanting to clarify what we're, the original motion, which was to not approve, was brought back for reconsideration. And so what happened to that motion, is it now been defeated?
No, that motion is no longer, so with reconsideration, the original motion is back on the floor.
Yep.
So as if it was not voted on, so Counsel Woodward is, um, following procedure to make a referral motion as he did. So if that passes, then that's what happens, if it fails, we're back to the main motion to either approve or not approve.
Okay, so he's, he's made a motion to refer for re-surveying.
That's correct.
And, uh, uh, but doesn't that undo what the original motion was?
It's already been undone by the reconsideration vote.
The point of audio, your worship, to re-survey and change the area.
That's right.
Make up a whole half of it.
Re-surveying and, and change the area, so it is a, it's as if the motion wasn't voted on, it's been reconsidered.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Davis?
Okay, um, sorry, I just, uh, when I was talking to Mayor Fros, I, I, maybe, um, Counsel Woodward could clarify. I thought he said south of the highway, south of number one highway, I didn't hear anything about a power line, could you fill me in, uh, Mr. Woodward?
Understood it to be Highway one, not, not, Highway one, not a power line.
Well, well, that's why I misheard you, so, uh, Mr. Woodward.
No, that was the original survey.
New information or the new, what, what is it, what?
Counsel Davis, I'll ask, I'll ask Ms. Powers to read the, uh, motion.
Okay.
And your worship, just before she does so, uh, happy to reread the motion, but Mr. Seffy, I believe there was something mailed, emailed out to council members today? That was a revised map showing those that were in favor and those were not, was that based on the original survey, or was there already a further survey already done, and if so, like?
Thank you, Mr. Beck, and your worship, there was a map that was distributed to council earlier today. Uh, the intent was to provide council with information, I guess, in addition to what had been shared previously. What I can say is that the policy is actually for, for staff rather than to restrict council. Council's ability to approve, reject, or ask for information remains unfettered. Uh, the petition that was conducted as part of the process pursuant to policy was what staff had done previously before reporting to council, and on which staff had made their recommendation, on the basis of which staff had made their recommendation. Which was not to proceed based on the fact that the threshold had not been met, which is as per policy sixty-seven percent. Uh, having said that, there was another petition done, not by staff, but by the proponent. Uh, presumably with the intent of clarifying, or perhaps confirming whether certain, uh, property owners were still, I guess, opposed, or whether they could, uh, provide support given new information. And that was the intent of the communication that was shared today, to share what had been done by the proponent, but not by staff. Are you that clear?
Thank you.
Okay, so I guess, um, how much, like, I, I think as a council member, we have to look at our, our, um, our respondents to the ballot out process. We, and, and, and I, you know, I, I have a hard, I, I couldn't get into, uh, couldn't tell you, I, when I'm in a meeting, I don't look at, uh, what I, in my phone, I can't figure, I can't, I focus on one thing. So I guess the question through the mayor is why do we want to take out the southern part of this? And it, and I, I didn't hear totally, so could, could, I, I, when you read the motion, and I, I just still didn't get it in the motion, what is it? Why are we taking out, why are we modifying, you know, we're modifying the, uh, proposal, or the, uh, you know, the application, and we don't generally modify them. So I'm, I'm curious why, and, and the only one that can actually answer that would be Counsel Woodward, because he's bringing it forth. Could, through, through the mayor, could I?
I can ask Counsel Woodward to respond to that. This motion, it's ordered.
Yeah, no, I, I actually, I just have to ask, I didn't quite understand what Counsel.
I, I think he's just wondering why, uh, why, uh, we would, uh, deviate from the policy and remove the property that's south of Highway one.
I mean, my rationale for that would be to, to give the proponent a chance to, uh, do another round of public consultation with neighboring property owners, and also in addition, uh, given the unique location of this one in proximity to the Highway one, uh, there is no chance that people that are voting in favor or opposed, as they may be doing, um, are affected at all by this particular, uh, deposit application, as, as sort of intended by the policy as to crow flies radius.
Okay, I see that, um, they, they, um, that, to me, that makes sense, but however, there are, there are, uh, dust, dust issues. Um, okay, but now I see, now I see, uh, now I see where you're after, okay, thank you.
So Counsel Long, Ferguson hands it still up, Counsel Long, do you think?
Well, no, I think, yeah, well, that's right, I'm, I'm very concerned about changing the, uh, the area as well, I mean, that's, the policy is clear that that's what gets, gets surveyed, and how does that skew the results, I haven't done, uh, that calculation yet, I don't think I want it. But certainly, um, you know, we can't divulge what we received in confidence this afternoon, but it certainly has a potential to skew the vote. Uh, I'm not in favor of revoting anyway, I think council should make a decision. Uh, and as has been said, and I wonder if it's clear to everybody, that we get information, staff follow policy, but council makes a decision whether the fill should go in there or not. So, um, I don't know if I can add to that, your worship, but I'm very concerned about the, I can see revoting it, re-surveying it, but I don't agree at all with changing the area, I don't think that's really fair.
Thank you, Counsel Ferguson.
No, no, I don't have any more questions.
Okay, is there any further discussion on the referral motion? Seeing none, I'm gonna call the question, all those in favor? Referral motion, and opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Counsel Arneson, Counsel Richter, uh, Counsel Long, Counsel Whitmarsh opposed, Counsel Coons, are you opposed?
Ferguson opposed.
Ferguson opposed. And, uh, Fros opposed, the motion fails.
So, your worship, I'd like, I'd like to move that, seeing how it's on the table, I'll move that it be approved.
That be referred.
No, not refer, now that that's failed, we're back to the original motion, which is to deny it, and I will move.
That we refer, that we refer the soil deposit application for that property to, to the Agriculture Land Commission, that would be the motion, is that what you're moving?
That's what I'm.
Refer it, okay, we're not keeping it, we're referring it. Secondary? You're second?
I'll second that.
Counsel Ferguson. Uh, and discussion, Counsel Richter.
Uh, okay, so what's happening now, the original motion was not to approve, right?
So, no, the original motion, the motion that was being reconsidered was not to prove, that puts it back on the table, so now the motion is to refer, not approve, we're referring it to the Agriculture Land Commission. That's, that's.
But the original motion was not, uh, to refer, or is it, I'm, I'm not following the sequence here.
Yeah, there is no. I'm gonna ask Ms. Power to clarify the process on a reconsideration.
If I may, I believe what's happened is Counsel Long and Counsel Ferguson have put an amendment forward to strike the word not, and therefore we are now that council refer the soil deposit application for two three seven eight eight seventy-second Avenue to the Agriculture Land Commission and direct staff to proceed with the application further.
Does that help clarify? Thank you, uh, Counsel Coons? Counsel Coons?
No, yeah, I wanted clarification on that, so.
Counsel Woodward?
Yeah, I wanna clarify exactly, I don't, I don't really like these double negative motions, so if we could confirm that, just before we take the vote, which way we vote to achieve which result, I appreciate that. Um, it really wasn't my intent to end up here, I thought that was a pretty good solution to get this thing going, and from what I've done in some of my background discussions with some of the people directly uh, involved and impacted by this fill deposit, is that it's not ready to be approved. There's a number of issues that have to be resolved and worked out with the neighboring properties, so I would find it pretty disappointing if I was to. would find it pretty disappointing if I was to cause of having this come back to then now be approved uh, with a fill deposit that doesn't comply with the policy. So I'm obviously opposed and really caution council to proceed with this prior to getting some more information on how these impacts are going to impact neighboring property owners that have not yet been resolved, which is second process that I just attempted to get. Uh, could have given them some time to work on that with some of their neighbors, which has now potentially been taken away. Thanks.
Thank you. So I just to answer your question, uh, that this motion, if you vote in favor, we are referring it to the Agricultural Land Commission. If we vote against it, then it would not go to the Agricultural Land Commission. So this is just clear. And there is still for the work, the Agricultural Land Commission then puts their lens on if they make their. Uh, Counsel Davis?
Um, yeah, okay. So actually, if I talk about this, I need to talk about the fill site and the pros and cons of it. Because if I vote for this, it's going to the ALC in favor. If I don't vote for it, then I'm saying, no, I don't want it. Is that correct?
That's correct, the dice.
Okay. I have a couple issues. Um, this is a man-made hole. Okay, this isn't a creek. This isn't a, uh, this isn't, this isn't a, um, uh, this isn't a creek. This isn't a valley. This isn't a hog's back. This isn't a cooley or whatever you, those are all. Uh, this is a man-made hole that was put there to put the Southern B C Railroad on. Now, I'm not a, I'm not a, uh, I know there was a hydra- hydraulic report, um, planned, but the 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 right above there, all that flat land, they call it strawberry hills, or I forget what they call it, but it's very, very sandy soil. It's very irritable. And it can be very productive for growing. It, they moved a bunch of that stuff out and put a convex railroad crossing on to a railroad on top of it. So they left quite a hole. If this fill isn't done properly, and I again, I'm not a hydraulic, but but if this fill isn't done properly, could that cause stress on the soil condition that that railroad was put in there? Because it's on a hillside and it's quite a hillside, you can, um, well, I won't say what my Uncle Bill would say if you're standing in a high spot. But anyhow, if if we put the wrong materi- if the wrong material goes in there and creates a problem on that railroad, could that be something that could come back to the township? The other thing is there's a electrical wire quite high, and again, I'm not an expert, but is that gonna, if they bring that up to grade, is that going to be a problem with the power lines and the liability issue of that? Um, the the dusk dusk control. I think that they actually can get around that dusk control. If they get sloppy, it can be a real problem. Because there's nothing worse than strawberries coated with dust. Anyhow, so that has to be addressed a hundred percent. Uh, there was a couple other issues. Uh, we received some stuff with new information on it. And I'm not being negative, but there was there was, um, uh, some criminal activity on that site. I don't know what the criminal activity would, uh, I don't know why that would be new information. Yeah, this is good.
But that's not what's on the town. That's not what's on.
No, 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 but that was that, we if we're if it if we're sitting here putting this to the ALC or to the Land Commission, then we're we're basically talking about everything we talked about before, if there is any of it. So, um, you can see that, you can see, you can see that. And if if this, I'm not, hey, I don't know, I don't know this, but if you fill that full and, uh, if you fill it full of the wrong material and that creates problems on this convex corner right here that you can all see, it and it's all sandy, it's all sandy soil, is that going to cause a problem with this railroad track and and it's sitting on a hill? We know we just went through seventy-six there, seventy-second, and that was quite a drop. And is that going to be, are we going to be liable for saying, hey, well, let's put a fill site in there? So, um, anyhow, I I I haven't seen any really new information other than now south. You see, uh, if you go south of the freeway here, and I don't know if it's a kilometer or half a kilometer, I forget exactly. You take out, the highway does absolutely change things. A a border does, a river does. But on the other side here, if you take that out, like that dusk, if they don't do the dusk properly, anyhow, it's a man-made hole. It was used to build a railroad. And, um, you know, I'm not very, very, I don't know if I support, uh, but if you did fill that, what what's what's this five hundred and sixty-three meters? Oh, that's how big it is?
I'll ask Mr. Seffy if he can provide some.
Okay, that wasn't a question. My, I guess, in in conclusion here, this is that, like I say, we made, somebody made this hole and it it could be filled up. Maybe this is, this isn't a mother nature uh, thing that water went down and carved out or, you know, so it's, it 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 could be a, it, you know, there was comments about it being bought specifically to fill up. And I I can't listen to that because that's the decision somebody made to buy this. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna deny their them to fill it up or not, but I I, we gotta look at the facts here to, um, and I'm, uh, it is a man-made hole that maybe a man should fill up again, who knows? Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Counsel Ferguson?
I agree with Counsel Davis. It's a man-made hole that the man should fill up. That's the point. I think he made a lot of other good points. I think when it does, uh, if it does touch, if this motion does pass, it'll certainly up to the Agricultural Land Commission to review what we've already reviewed and looking at the fat, there has to be dust mitigation, and there also has to be the appropriate fill put in there. And all those things are in place. We don't want to make life miserable for the existing operators or the existing farmers in the area. So I think that we should have the experts look at it and come up with the appropriate measures, but I'll support it to go to the Land Commission.
Any further discussion? See none, I'll call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Richter, and others. Take note, it carries. Thank you. And we'll move now on to other business and Counsel Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Worship. Um, before I get into that.
Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, there's a, there's an amendment. Well, I see, I thought it was a motion. So I gotta go back to staff.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Motion, um, the previous motion, sorry, Counsel Arneson.
That's all right.
Was, uh, amended, so now I could call for a question on the motion as amended. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Opposed, opposed.
Counsel Woodward, Counsel Arneson are opposed on the motion.
And Richter.
I got that, yeah, thank you, Counsel Richter. Thank you. And, uh, so now we'll move on. Sorry, Counsel Richter, you can, I mean, sorry, Counsel Arneson, you now report.
Okay, thank you, Worship. Um, in the interest of time and with the understanding that council has already reviewed the motion, I will just, um, refer to it generically as virtual meeting backdrops. And so I'd like to move this motion.
Okay, so second. Counsel Whitmarsh seconds. Uh, any discussion?
I I would like to lead some discussion.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Worship. Um, I I want to preface this by saying I brought the motion forward for council's consideration for adoption further to the format that we now have for the foreseeable future, which is Zoom or some other kind of meeting similar to Zoom. Um, I just want you to know that the matter has been discussed with our legislative clerk, and there's been research done around this. Um, as council is likely aware, we have no rules governing this because we have a respectful workplace policy. So it's silent as to what is really a novel thing that we have not experienced before, which is the opportunity for council to unilaterally decide which backdrop they wish to use. So, um, the idea behind this was that, in fact, when we met in our council meetings in the Fraser River Presentation Center, there was a static, I'll call backdrop, of our chairs, tables, flags in the back, et cetera. There was never any discussion about anybody doing anything other than that. And so this is a completely novel situation. So the reason I brought this forward, and I just would like to direct council, if you haven't looked at it already, but in our materials distributed today on page, whatever it is, item number five, virtual sittings have MPs doing things not allowed in the House of Commons. The reason that I put this forward for our attention is, in fact, in May of twenty twenty, another level of government had reviewed the situation related to Zoom meetings. And I'll just quote one line from the article, which pretty much states it in a nutshell, says, "Based on established practices, backgrounds should be as neutral as possible and consistent with the nonpartisan environment of the chamber committee." So I realize that we are not an elected body of the federal government or the provincial government. But I believe that as an elected body nonetheless, that it would be our obligation to try and be as neutral as possible. I think that that is really important because failing to do so, in fact, by default allows politicization of opinions and positions, which I personally don't find very helpful to the advancement of discussion and consensus building. And I think that's foundational to providing good governance. So I look at this as, unfortunately, um, I I find it rather prescriptive. But in the end, I think that if council reviews this and wishes to adopt this as a policy, it means that it will provide a consistent and reliable document in which we can look at without these constant conversations based on subjectivity. Would this offend? Uh, would this be appropriate, et cetera? Um, so I I foresee that who knows how long we're going to have these meetings. But I think it's really important from the public point of view that objectivity is a desirable outcome and that unfortunately, if matters come before council that are controversial, uh, it becomes problematic. And I think that it could be very problematic. I don't think it's a restriction on free speech. I think, uh, or leading to, uh, other kinds of onerous directives that would preclude us from doing certain things. But I really think that the politicization of particular points of view is is not a place that we want to have as a backdrop to our political discussions and making policies in the township and decisions based on behalf of the whole community. And finally, I think that there are adequate opportunities for this type of messaging, and any and all can take advantage of them. They would be Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, TikTok, and any other kind of medium that you can use. And anybody is able to do that, and many people wish to partake of doing that. But they are outside of the council realm, and that's what I think is a critical consideration. So I think it's important to recognize that there is a time and place for this. And I personally don't believe, and is my view, that the place for this is not as a backdrop to our council virtual meetings.
Thank you. Counsel Woodward?
Hey, yeah, so thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to, uh, I think I'll wait for other members of council to talk first to see whether this, uh, this has much traction, members of council. I just wanted to clarify from staff, just to clarify exactly what we're voting on here. This is to create a new policy document, so then we would get to see that draft policy document prior to approving that by resolution. Would that be correct?
Um, Ms. Power, that was good correction. You changed the policy, that's correct.
My interpretation is that this, uh, motion includes a policy document, and we would enact the policy.
So the policy would simply be what's drafted within this notice of motion?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Okay, so if we wanted to make amendments to that, we would need to do that right now?
Yes.
Okay, so that's why I was clarifying that, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, I think, you know, I think in in general, politics is not a neutral process. Politics is politics. And I also wanted to clarify, um, what would be the ramifications of the counselor not not abiding by this and putting up a backdrop that Counsel Arneson does not approve of?
The, um, this is a policy, and of course, as elected officials, there is a ramifications other than than that for the election. I think as professionals and elected officials, there's a policy that council adopts and approves, and we do our best to adhere to it. Uh, that's always been certainly.
Okay, so I think you know what that means. So then I would.
Sorry, I'm not finished. You asked a question, and I'm gonna finish. So, so, uh, part of this is that, uh, perhaps, uh, staff and that's as soon as a metro or staff or, 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 staff have provided backups which are kind of neutral, but, you know, you've got a barn, it's great, and Ferguson has a a lake. So staff could provide some neutral backups that that would be fine, it keeps us out of any uh, perception of being political. And and that's where I think Counsel Arneson is moving towards, that that council chamber. You know, when we sat in the chairs there before COVID, we didn't have a placard behind us, you know, with the with the little slogan we stayed.
Okay, so like, can I can I not wear a button now or hats now?
Yeah, go ahead.
So no buttons or hats? Like, we need to expand this to include any sort of political item that we might decide to wear to a council meeting?
Hey, that's, you know, it's what we've always done, you know, we've seen.
So I think.
Political button or hat. I haven't seen a hat at a council meeting in my eight years of my, you have some counselor.
I'm just trying to clarify what I'm allowed to do, and I can't wear a hat now, so I gotta.
Well, this this motion isn't referring to hats. This motion is referring.
Okay, so I guess that would be amendment to the policy later on.
That could be another policy.
Another question I have, Mr. Mayor, is Counsel Arneson referenced that she didn't feel this was a violation of freedom of speech. Now, if I disagree, um, I would also like to consider referring this for a legal opinion to confirm whether this is a violation of my freedom of speech. I'd like to confirm whether other members of council would also like to confirm that, uh, this heads down a very dangerous path of, see, there we are. I don't know, that just violated the policy.
We don't have a policy, Counsel Woodward, and Counsel Long speaks.
So I I think that that might be one referral that I would also like to consider because I, you know, I don't have a legal degree, so I would might be something I'm writing to confirm whether or not this is an attempt to limit our freedom of speech as elected officials. Um, I'm not accountable to Counsel Arneson. I'm accountable to the policy adopted by council or the electorate. Um, so I think it's important that we not head down this road of trying to police each other.
Okay.
That's my opinion. But I would also like to consider an amendment though as well.
Sure.
Um, to also here, and I'll just read it out, and I don't have to move it at this point. I'll let others speak first, but for others to know, I would like to consider amending it to also add the requirement that all members of council turn on their Zoom video stream and be visible while speaking to council and voting on motions. Thank you.
Fair enough. Um, I just want to say Counsel Arneson moved it, it's been seconded. It's now a motion of council. It's not a motion of Counsel Arneson. Just to be clear, this is the way he worked. It's a motion of council now. Uh, Counselor, so this is because of this, opposed to that. Counsel Long? I'm sorry, Counsel Richter, you're next.
Okay. Well, you know, of all the things we've got to spend our time doing, I can't think of anything more superficial and nonsensical than this particular motion. And I'm actually quite shocked it's here. Uh, this is not about neutrality. This is about censorship and about politics. And there's no way that we should be censoring each other over the backdrops that we use. What, you know, I've got trees, trees aren't acceptable anymore? Come on. Uh, I'm I'm really upset with this motion. I definitely will not support it. I I'd just like to know who who gets the right to define neutrality? And and what is neutrality? And what's fair to everybody? And isn't this playing into the hands of a few political groups in the background that maybe take exception with the backgrounds that a few of us use from time to time? So, uh, to me, conformance and censorship is not the answer. It's never been the answer, and I will not agree with it. It's the public who decides what is proper, and they decide every four years when there's an election. And as they say, of all the things that we could be spending our time talking about today, this is the absolute last thing. And I'm shocked it's here.
Thank you. Um, Counsel Long?
Thanks, Your Worship. Um, I would like to know if if those are significant trees behind Counsel Richter.
Now, just uh, speak to the motion, please.
Yes, I am speaking to it. Um, I I had some issues with Zoom, and I had to change gadgets. I believe I'm coming through loud and clear, but this iPad does not allow me to put a virtual background any longer, so I'm done with that. Uh, and neither does my computer. Um, and I most certainly would not be agreeing to spending township uh, money on lawyer lawyers' opinions, and this could be quite an expensive exercise. Uh, so in in all due respect to the mover and the second, I I would hope that council will just uh, defeat this motion, and let's move on. And uh, that's my word. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Davis? Counselor Davis? Uh, you're muted. You're muted. There you go.
I'm not muted.
Yeah.
Um, sorry about that. I my my mom had a little pin on her pitcher, and it was sitting right there. So that was kind of a bad thing. That was a bad joke. Um, uh, Mayor Fros, this is all your fault. You're the coach of the team. You should be able to tell everybody, hey, that's crap. Don't do that. This is my ship. Let's get on with it.
Counselor Davis, we're all captains of the ship. This is a council, and if council wishes to pass this, it'll be a council decision.
But you get to press the button. And and I I I I'm I'm just concerned. When I my son dawned this computer the other day, and he started going into some of the silly things that House of Commons do. It's a riot. You can yell and scream, and you can and then apologize five times in one meeting, and they'll still take you back. It's like, so we, I think the control of this council and the common sense of this guy. I just saw Mark Backham slip back your backdrop, and did did he have it? Did he just come from the washroom? Did his fly up? I mean.
Hey, Counselor Davis, I'd ask you to be respectful. This is not being respectful. We're having a discussion regarding a motion that has been moved and seconded.
That's right.
Please keep it respectful. You're not being respectful at that comment. Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry. He he did have his fly up. But it I I think what we have to do is we have to um, I think that the I remember two or three meetings ago, and I um, talked to um, Counselor Woodwards, and then Counselor Long put it on, and could you imagine me putting a backdrop on here from if Wendy gave me a backdrop? Uh, the problems I had today. So you know what? I guess I'm I'll round this up. I don't I don't think we should go ahead. This is a COVID thing. I don't want to sit in any more of these Zoom Zoom meetings, but I I don't, I I am. I'm going to. That's my job. I go. I'm going to do it. But I I think that we should uh, don't spend, and and I don't know if Counselor Woodward's wanting to take this for legal opinion is tongue in cheek. But you see how, see how somebody on this council has to have leadership and say, hey, that enough of that. That's never mind. And you and you did that, yes. So I I I can't, I can't go ahead with this. Um, if I'm doing something wrong, I expect everybody on this whole thing to say, hey, that's stupid. Don't do that. You can phone me up anytime and say, no, 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 you're out of line, you know, so let's not uh, let's let's deal with it. Um, uh, I've had to change two backgrounds today and three computers to get it right. Okay, I'm done. Let's get on with it.
Counselor Ferguson.
Hey, I'm following Counselor Davis all the time tonight. Must be bad luck or something today. But anyway, I I well, I have to agree on one part. I I don't think this should have been a motion. I think it would have just been some of us, including yourself, Mr. Mayor, just saying, look, you know, and I wanted to play, I'll use myself. I had I had a a picture at home I took I thought was funny and uh, with all the communities, and I've taken that down. All all somebody had to say, look, you know, have a little bit decorum. Just take it down. I don't want a legal opinion. I don't want another policy. I just think if we all kind of just as adults, just say, look, don't put things up. We don't want to get into a mudslinging about who can do what, who what can, just show a little bit of decorum, take down your messages. If you wish, it's up to you, but uh, that's where I'm coming from. So it's time to move on.
Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, thank you. Um, you know, I seconded this uh, motion, and I I I seconded it because I I do think that the uh, the council needs to, you know, at least during council meetings and appear to be an unbiased group of people that are thoughtful and careful in our thinking and uh, to reflect uh, uh, well on various topics and issues. And then, of course, vote according to our conscience after we've heard the debate and the discussion. And I think that's important. And I do think that um, whether that's slogans we put up or positions that we stayed ahead of time uh, indicates right off the start that we may not be as open to debate and discussion as what uh, we are supposed to be doing as a council. So I certainly wanted to hear the discussion from everybody, and that's one of the reasons I seconded. And I do think that we should be looking to be as professional as we can and as unbiased as we can in our discussions. Of course, uh, bias is always uh, going to be present at some level. But to make clear decisions and to think carefully and to represent our community is important. Um, the other thing I think, uh, which isn't really mentioned in the motion, but I do think that there's a level of uh, professionalism that I think would be important. And this is all new to all of us, of course, the Zoom meetings and and meeting electronically. But we have various things going on. I mean, I have, I'm sitting in an office. I got pictures behind me on the wall. All some of us got other cars, and uh, we could be sitting in our, you know, I don't do it, sitting in our bedrooms on lying on the, it could be. Doing, there should be a level of professionalism striving to have it as a, and so I think having uh, somewhat neutral backgrounds um, that we can choose from, where we have consistency across the board makes us look more professional, like a sports team. They all wear the same jersey. They wear the same things. I appreciate we're not going to wear the same clothes. But there does some consistency makes us look like a team. So so I I do think there's some things we can do. And I do think that uh, members of the community expect us to be uh, people with good conduct and professional conduct and respectful conduct. That's why we have a respectful workplace policy. And so I think this ties into it. So I I am supportive. Uh, maybe some of the wording could be a bit different, but I'm certainly supportive of the direction of where it's going.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I do appreciate a secondary opportunity to speak to this. I'm not going to speak to the rather uh, incendiary and kind of negative commenting. Uh, you know, with all due respect, I brought this forward with an idea that we are advancing in an area that we have never considered before. So I take it as my obligation to look at opportunities, not to make work for myself or others and to unburden us necessarily, or sorry, burden us unnecessarily with extra policies. However, and I certainly do not deem myself to be the arbiter of what is right and what is wrong because I understand subjectivity. So it's not the case that I do not know that there are interpretations to things. And to remove us from that, but not to impose or impinge on individuals' ideas of free free speech. Free speech is not something that is totally expansive. It does have limits. And what I think this motion does, whether or not we accept it, and I'm uh, whatever council decides, that is the will of council. But I think it's important to recognize that having something before us that gives us an opportunity to meet a standard is not something that one wants to use like a pinata. I don't think that that is an appropriate response to somebody's due diligence and good faith efforts to try and find something that I think is a valuable tool going forward. It, and I also don't think further to what Counselor Davis is saying and other circumstances, I would not be bringing this forward because I don't necessarily think it's my job to have to try and figure out how we can find the uh, appropriate medium for the backdrop for our meetings. However, since it is part of my job to consider the optics, how we look, our professionalism has been mentioned, I really think that it is something that we should take seriously. And whether or not this motion passes, I think it should be something that should be discussed. And whoever determines from their own perspective that they wish to do any and all things that they feel is in the realm of reasonable conduct while they're on camera or not, then you you put that out there to the public, and I'm fine with that.
Counselor.
Yeah, so um, appreciate all the comments. And, you know, initially I was sort of, you know, in agreement with Counselor Arneson because I feel that it can be a bit distracting. And it's not necessarily that, but you know, when I see one counselor say, I love Aldagrove, I want to say, I love Aldagrove too. So um, then it becomes a little bit of a competition. So um, I I guess where I'm coming from is I I I don't think that there's anyone sort of doing that to sort of, you know, be annoying or or whatever. Um, but maybe we if we just limited it to just backdrops of pictures and 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 maybe we don't um, you know, include text because maybe that could be um, a little bit more, I don't know, showing. I don't know, maybe I just limit it to to backdrops of pictures. So I don't know if anyone has any thoughts on that, but.
Right, Counselor Richter.
Yeah, well, let me get my camera on so you can see me talking. Um, this entire motion is incendiary, and it was intended to be incendiary. And what bothers me is we're probably going to end up being made fun of because we even spent time talking about this. I put a motion forward not that long ago about not wearing T-shirts, and and that motion went down in flames simply because we should be allowed to wear what we want to wear. Okay? So what's the difference between T-shirts and backgrounds? It's all in the same boat, as far as I'm concerned. So we can't have different backgrounds, uh, but we can wear different T-shirts. So I mean, how ridiculous? I I don't even know why we're spending time talking on on this. It's just, it's just, and I hope we're not made a laughingstock of.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, probably a bit late for that. Um, so I I would like to, you know, just clarify again that it's not clear to me where this is going, so I better make that amendment, Mr. Mayor. I would like to amend to this potential policy, which we might, we may or may not adopt. Again, it's not clear to me where this is going, uh, to add the requirement for all members of council to turn on their Zoom video stream and be visible while A, speaking to council and B, voting on motions, I so move.
I second.
As amendment.
I need to speak to that. I think it's, you know, if we're going to head that, I think I will actually speak a little bit to that. I think it's it's really important for the public to see us as they do on a public forum and and to confirm that while people are addressing this council, that they're visible doing so. Thank you.
Further discussion on the amendment, moving second by Counselor, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Counselor Davis, Counselor Kuntz, Counselor Arneson, uh, you also.
Ferguson opposed.
Ferguson. So Kuntz, Davis, Arneson, Ferguson, opposed. Most of that amendment carries. Uh, we're back. The main motion is amended. Uh, we've got Counselor Davis's hand up on the main motion is amended.
Hey, I I did press it um, because I wanted to just to clarify, was it turn your, I guess maybe it's too late. You'll tell me anyhow.
Yeah, just what you're you're actually doing it. You have your video on, and that's all it is, have the video on.
Okay, but do I have that on when I speak? Or do I have it on the whole time? Because some of the things that cross my back on my screen, you don't want to.
The motion is for when you're speaking and voting.
Oh, oh, okay, when you're.
There is times you do have to.
Okay, I did. I'm missing that.
Yeah, because we are in a lot of.
Just don't stand up, Dave.
Yeah, a lot of us are in our personal homes, and things happen behind. We totally understand that sometimes if you're in the video.
Okay, thank you.
This isn't the the normal world that we're in.
Okay.
Um, okay, it's on the main motion is amended. Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm um, I don't know where this is all going to go, and we could take a lot of time on it. I kind of I kind of wanting to suggest that maybe we defer this um, a deferral motion. I'm not sure till when, but at least until there's some more dialogue and discussion, maybe uh, on our own. Um, there's it, there's issues in here that I don't necessarily fully support either, even though I support the general concept of it. There's specifics that I might, we could be here for hours, so I would like to make a deferral motion.
So the, you want to, you have to understand the motion. You want to defer it? Uh, what, to the next meeting or the meeting after this to?
I have no date of when we would defer it to, but.
But we should defer it to something.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, would it be appropriate to refer it to CPC because it is a policy decision?
Everything is appropriate.
Well, I will second the motion if it's a referral to CPC.
I'm I'm happy to refer it to CPC.
Got that seconded by Counselor Richter. We should move on, Ray. Anyway, this is um, this this is on referral, so um, Whitmarsh has spoken, Woodward, and then Davis, and then Long on referral. Counselor Whitbrick.
Yeah, so I have no comments on the referral. I I actually will speak to the referral, Mr. Mayor, really quickly. Uh, I would prefer that we we just not discuss this any further at all. CPC's got along with this, so I I it's not that I don't support more discussion about it, but that we could dispose of it rather than bringing it back again. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor um, Davis. You want to speak to the referral?
Yeah, you know, I just, a referral, by the time the referral comes, we might be back in meetings. And but then it would be there for the next. I I um, no, I I don't think I'm going to refer a uh, but I I I did get a little bit heisty and feisty at the beginning, and maybe I shouldn't have, but and now that I'm settled down, I I still don't think that I need to talk about it.
Yeah, we'll give a chance to board. Counselor Long on the.
Yeah, I'd sooner not spend any more time on on this, Your Worship, so I think you should call the vote. A referral is going to put us in even worse position because there is no right answer to this type of question. It's an opinion, and it's valid to the person that moved it, I'm sure. But uh, we're going to have to decide where we go from here, and I'd rather vote on it right away. I actually agree with Counsel.
Counselor Kuntz on referral.
Yeah, I don't really feel like talking about this again anymore, so I'm, you know, I I I'm ready to vote on it. And if it doesn't come back, I'm good with that.
Okay, I'm going to call the question on referral. All those in favor of referral? CPC?
I.
Those opposed?
Opposed. Ferguson opposed.
Counselor Long, Counselor Davis.
Long opposed.
Counselor Woodward.
Arneson opposed.
Counselor Arneson, Counselor Kuntz.
Ferguson opposed.
Counselor Kuntz, are you opposed?
Yeah.
In favor. Opposed, Counselor Richter's in favor.
Call the question on the main.
A motion fails, so uh, I'd like to call the, Counselor Woodward, your hand is up. Counselor Woodward.
I just want to just want to point a clear, it's not technically a point of clear, but I want to confirm with you, Mr. Mayor, that if this, I won't waste time on an amendment or a referral, but if this somehow passes, then I would be allowed to move a motion to get a legal opinion, whether or not it's a violation.
Yes, and you're you're always allowed to move a motion.
Allow me to do that, that'll be fine. We don't have to. Thanks.
Okay, so on the main motion as amended, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? Those opposed? Who's opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Long, Counselor Davis, Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Whitbrick, Counselor Kuntz.
Counselor Richter.
Is opposed. Motion fails. Okay, so we move on to uh, so we're going to be taking some time. We're going to finish this agenda. Um, so I know we're going to be going past six o'clock uh, there. So what I like to do is ask for motion to go to six thirty.
Motion to go to six thirty.
Soft in between because there's other things to do. Counselor Davis, you know, is it seconder? The second? Counselor Whitmarsh.
Sure. Can I have a question?
Sure.
So if this goes to six thirty, where will the in-camera meeting would have to come out?
We'll deal with that at the end of this meeting. Yeah.
No, it would have to be after public hearing.
That's, yeah, we'll deal with that then. Yeah. So just let me uh, go through this meeting, and then I'll probably what we'll do is we'll adjourn this meeting. We'll we'll terminate this meeting. We'll start the the closed, and then we'll close that by six thirty. That's my, that's the plan that Clark and I have cooked up. And there's reasons I can't say because it's we're open right now. Uh, so I got a second, I guess I can draw on that on the Whitmarsh. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed, carries unanimously. Thank you for that, so I'll move on. Counselor Arneson, P two, that's the one we've got.
Yes, yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Um, basically, this motion is just asking that uh, council look uh, to staff to be able to review the information that has now been provided. We had a delegation today to determine whether or not the society can meet the criteria regarding number of individuals. I would point out that the wording of the motion specifically talks about potentially prorating and other opportunities for council to look at what the direction has been historically in terms of numbers of individuals, page views, those kinds of things. And then to bring it back after this consultation and that council would finally have an opportunity to review whether or not we would be in favor of granting them. and that council would finally have an opportunity to review whether or not we would be in favor of granting them the the one time I'll call it the the COVID extension.
Oh, you want to move that and then?
Yes, I'll move that.
Seconder? The seconder to P two? I don't see a seconder. Oh, Counselor Kuntz seconds it, there we go, sorry, and so discussion, so Counselor Arneson, did you wish to speak to it more? So I wanted to get the motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you, Your Worship, well, in the in light of the limited time that we have, I don't think that there's a lot more that needs to be said. I think what we've heard is that there is specific funding that is coming hopefully from other levels of government but I would look to the opportunity for a plan that seems to be tailored and strategizing towards how to highlight Fort Langley in a way, I think that would be most helpful. I was reading between the words of what was being said with the delegation and I believe that it is being done in the context of promoting our community to individuals. If we're gonna have staycations and individuals who will be traveling within our community because the borders are effectively closed at this point I think it's important to consider the longer term aspects of this not just looking at it from a limited point of view to say exactly how many people would be viewing this. Although I would say one of the things that is available that's better in some ways in terms of head counting is that you can actually keep track of the number of views as opposed to you know crowd estimation, so I I think that that would be the kind of thing from my perspective that staff are best situated to be able to work with the proponent if if it's the case that they don't meet the criteria, then I'm sure the staff report will come back and say that but I think under the circumstances because it is unusual that we should at least give them the opportunity to be able to come back with staff's recommendations.
Counselor Long.
Your Worship, this may be awkward for me, I may have to jump up and leave the room because the question comes to mind immediately. Yes, we had a delegation from the Fort Langley Jazz Festival but we also have letters in our package that have not been responded to that I know from council about the Alda Grove Fair and I think there's also the Cranberry Festival in Fort Langley, so there it it I I don't think this is a one-off. So I'd like to to find a way that that everyone can be treated fairly in this because quite frankly, I can speak at length about the the wonderful things that the fair are doing, I don't know if it may be appropriate because my wife does work for the fair board, but and it costs me a lot of money for her to do that, but anyway they they've got a terrific program and it's very interactive with people providing things, so anyway let me put that out there and then you can advise me if I have to leave the room.
This is a one-off, this is, we're dealing with this one specifically with the jazz, this motion deals with the jazz festival, it is a one-off and every other one. So.
But my point is, I think this could apply to to the to the fair as well.
It, but we'd be dealing with this one, each one would have to come on its own.
I can't make that motion on the fair.
Thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yes, I'm opposed to this motion in its current form and I'd like to make an amendment to it, but I'll hold off until I see further discussion, I think this is creating a precedent here and it's a precedent that's targeted at local property tax dollars which are intended to be spent to stimulate economies in our local communities for these festivals now being oriented towards Western Canada audiences and while I log them for going after Western Canada audiences, good for them, they're also getting two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of federal and provincial funds in order to go after those audiences, they don't need our property tax dollars to do that, they've got enough for virtual, I think they've got way more than enough. It bothers me that there was one reference to one local jazz group that could receive funding out of this as opposed to all the other jazz artists from across Canada and again, good for them and that's why I think federal money is appropriate. But I I and I think Bob Long or Counselor Long has raised a good point and that is other other organizations have approached us too and our our criteria is very clear, it's about the number of people who show up at an event in person in a community that has paid property taxes. So I'm not supporting it in its current form, I would like to amend the third paragraph by offering them a letter of support to to assist them in securing federal and provincial funds, if that'll do it for them. If they need a small token amount from us like maybe five hundred dollars, I'd be willing to throw in five hundred dollars, but not ten grand. And I think the third paragraph should just simply be deleted. Anyway, I'll let other people talk about it, that's where I think this should go and seriously two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars of monies from other levels of government, they don't need our ten grand in local tax dollars, property tax dollars.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, thanks, I'm gonna echo some of Counselor Long's comments, I think this probably should have come sort of you know, not specific to a single event, that if if we're gonna establish criteria for people to apply and and be awarded these grants under a modified structure for the twenty twenty grant program, probably should have proceeded that way, I mean, I've heard from organizations to in fact that I don't even think it's occurred to them to come to council and ask for 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 grant funding based on the fact that the events are no longer actually being held on the ground in these communities. So I I think you gotta tread very cautiously here that we're not treating one event different than another. So I don't support it in its current form, but I'm I'm certainly open to looking at some revisions that apply to all but certainly not to to one of one event with a with a pretty decent lobbying effort, thanks.
Counselor Davis.
Okay, you know, I I I don't think I support this, I think it's setting precedence in this in the community and if there's there'll be others, I I think this is just a difficult year and being optimistic, you know, next year will be better. Thank you.
So the word prorate, what would that number look like? So could we provide them with some sort of monetary? You know, it or are we are we, does it have to be a specific amount in order for them to actually get the the other grants from the other levels of government? So I I would like to see them, I'd like to support what they're doing. I totally get where people are at with you know township dollars and it's being a difficult year. But I you know, I I really want to see the Jazz Festival go forward and that they do have the support of council, but you know, what's the best way to do that, is it you know, with some kind of token gift or or grant or whatever it is that we could provide them? What does that prorated number look like?
Counselor Whitmarsh.
Yeah, I'm you know, hearing other members of council talk about this, and I probably in agreement that I think you probably have a uniform plan for all of those events due to COVID have had to do with sort of a virtual kind of event, some of those events maybe got canceled lately but other ones are doing virtual kinds of events and maybe we need to have some kind of policy on that, so maybe this is something that could be referred maybe to staff to give us a recommendation on how we should treat all those events that did have virtual kinds of events and what prorated might mean for all of those virtual events for this given year. I I feel better than that than voting on this one one area.
I'd I'd second that, Your Worship.
Well, Counselor Long, you're next.
Okay, well, I would second that, but I also wanted to put out there perhaps, and this might be something for council to consider that perhaps we could give them a token amount, I'm not sure what that would be with, you know, I don't want to name a number, but maybe a reasonable amount of money but that would go to hire local talent, now there is been a huge hit with COVID on local musicians, local Langley talent that have no places to perform because of the you know the COVID situation. Perhaps we could dedicate some funding saying, okay, this is to be used specifically to hire a local entertainment, I'll just put that out there. But I actually prefer also what Counselor Whitmarsh has said, that we really need to treat everybody fairly and 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 I'm sure staff would come up with perhaps a proposal that'll make everybody happy. The staff will knows what our financial restraints are, they understand the the what we're dealing with here in terms of economic development as well as COVID, as well as social development, there's a duty for us to provide something for our citizens, so perhaps staff would be would be the ones to that would come back with a recommendation and that could include what I just mentioned, maybe that would include an amount to hire an act that would represent the township at this festival, thank you.
So an option would be, as we generally do with delegations, as most of October could be referred to staff to come back.
Wait, so wait a minute, I can't, Your Worship, I can't hear you.
Saying, as we do with delegations normally, when there's an ask like this, we refer it to staff to come back with some recommendations so that that is an option for council to refer this motion to staff to come back and then and then also consider the bigger picture.
Well, if you'll accept that that motion that.
I've got Counselor Richter next, and she would.
Okay, but I'll second it if it comes up, thank you.
Counselor.
Yeah, so I'm wanting to understand if we refer this, can it also look into whether they actually need dollars from us or would a letter of support suffice? I mean, I wouldn't want to see them lose their federal funding or their provincial funding but you know, if we don't have to put funding in, why would we? Unless, as Counselor Long has said, maybe what we do is say, okay, we'll give you well, I think a token amount like two hundred and fifty, five hundred bucks max, but if we're gonna put more in, they have to use it to hire a Langley group.
Counselor, Mr. Backen has some comments, maybe you can enlighten us.
Your Worship, just just one comment, factual comment, and they the presenter did note that there was only limited, I guess, talent in this genre of music, so that was part of the challenge. I just put that out there because that may help us as we begin to frame the referral. I wanted to go back to the underpinning, the policy underpinning for the referral itself. The policy underpinning was that because it was virtual, these events did not meet the criteria of our grant policy. So I think what we're doing is referring this for an amendment to our grant policy to allow for virtual events, for funding of virtual events which is totally acceptable, but that would then be at a policy level, we'd be looking at not only the quantity of that but also the number of events that could be impacted by that, that may lead us back to a bit of a nominal level, so I think we just need to be cautious as we begin to frame the referral, knowing where we've been, which is it did not meet the criteria. Council may be expressing an intention that it does meet the criteria, as such, then we would be amending our policy to allow for virtual events and perhaps on a one-time basis, perhaps on a multi-year basis and as well with some sort of monetary limit that we'd be thinking, keeping in mind that all virtual events that apply would likely be impedled to that level of fund.
Yeah, well, this is not not what I'm looking for, I don't think we should be amending the policy to allow virtual events going forward. These are property tax dollars, they've got other funding sources, obviously and they should be accessing those funding sources.
Okay, so we should dispose of this one way or the other, Counselor Woodward.
Just on the referral, Mr. Mayor, is that?
There's no referral motion yet, so.
I don't support the referral either, I think that I I don't want to see this go back, I know for a fact that there's events that have been canceled presume already thinking that there was partially because there was no grant funding and now there's grant funding for those that are you know, with a quarter million dollars or something, I think I think for I think for us, we should just you know, not refer this back and stick to, you know, with Mr. Backen's comments there, stick to the original decision, not have staff time on this. The one event that's come forward seems to have plenty of money, so I think we can look at this going forward for next year if this continues and then in some cases, large events maybe aren't possible, we could look at trying to keep those, help those events out for next year, but for this year, I'm not sure how we're gonna do this in time, especially for those that have have already followed the directions and and canceled, thanks.
Thank you, so so there are motions on the floor, there is no referral yet, certainly what we what we could do if this is defeated, we could just ask staff to talk to the proponent and see if they need a letter from us, I think the concern I've heard is that we don't want to jeopardize their funding, and if they need a letter of support from the township, we certainly could, we'd do support their event and if they need a token amount, I think that could come back to council very quickly next next meeting. But that could just be direction, we could deal with this this motion and then Mr. Backen's nodding that we could take that direction, they could just contact, if they want a letter, we can send them a letter. I'd I'd hate to jeopardize a quarter million dollars. So without it, we call the question, all those in favor? And those opposed? Okay, so Counselor, he's holding hands up, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Woodward, who else opposed?
I'm opposed, Ferguson opposed.
Ferguson opposed.
Are we voting on the main motion, Mister Mayor? I'm opposed.
Opposed, Richter's opposed, anybody else opposed? David's opposed, we cut them off, motion fails. I would ask the staff to contact the proponent and see if a letter is appropriate, if they do need a small some financial support, at least we can consider that if this if a quarter million dollars is going to come out. So with that, I'll ask, is any other business? Counselor Richter.
Sorry, okay, what kind of time do we, okay, I wanted to go to the items distributed list if I could, Mister Mayor, for the last couple of sets. The items distributed on June twenty fifth. Item number four on page thirty nine. Okay, have you had a chance to find it? It's it's the Fire Hall eight updates, I I'd like to send a copy of this to former counselors Bateman and Vicberg. Item number. Yeah, is that okay, okay, item number five on page forty-two, I'd like to thank staff very much for their fast action on those little flashing lights at two forty-eights and Robertson, it it looks like it is making a difference, which is good.
Thank you, you know, it's the the problem there, Counselor Richter, and I found myself in this, you and I have driven that road so many times.
Yeah.
Sometimes you just a moment of inattention, you forget there's a stop sign there, so it's good to have as much warning as possible.
Yeah, no, I I think I think it's been effective so far, keeping my fingers crossed. Item number six on page forty-three, which is about the use of water and this this water plan. I think council needs to have a policy discussion on the use of continuing to use blended water in the township and so I'd like to refer that to a council priorities or not priorities, policy committee meeting. So I make that motion to send it to CPC for discussion or C. council.
Yeah, CPC, yeah, is there a seconder to that? To refer the discussion of water, Counselor Davis? I'll just call the question, I'll just call the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Do you're opposed, thank you.
Okay, item number nine on page fifty-six, the from a lady was response, the loot the use of glycophosphate, which I think is Roundup, on Langley playing fields, has a response been sent to that resident? And will one be sent?
Staff, if not, I guess it will, thank you.
Okay, and items number twelve and thirteen on pages seventy-six and seventy-eight. Again, will a response be sent to that resident?
Yes, yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, yeah.
And that's, those are on the Jacob Hall the house. Turning now to the items distributed on June eighteenth, which would have been last Thursday or I don't know when that was. Item number four on page fifty-seven, the increasing break and enter rates in Walnut Grove. Can we get a report from staff on that at some point? Because it sounds like they've got a big problem up there.
Put it on first, it's a metal, thank you.
Okay, item number six on page sixty, which has to do with the groundwater resolution at UBCM that was not successful. Can staff look at when they're redoing our water management plan that we're sending in to the provincial government for approval? Can they look to see if there are elements of that that could be incorporated in our water management plan?
Okay, yeah, yes.
Okay, and then item number eleven on page seventy-two from Mister Brush concerning maintenance in Fort Langley, will staff be getting back to Mister Brush on these?
Yes.
And also item number twelve on page seventy-three, which is a letter from Shirley and Lloyd Sawatsky about exposed wiring in a Fort Langley business, will staff be getting back to them on that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Generally do all those, staff to respond to this, back.
No, thank you, Worship, once we have communications coming in, we respond to the communication depending on whether there's other other direction from council, so. Well, thank you, Worship. Once we have communications coming in, we respond to the communication, depending unless there's other, other direction from council, so it'll be automatic responses to all those coming in. At least acknowledging receipt depending upon the context of the motion.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Whitmarsh?
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, make sure and that the, uh, delegate, uh, the, uh, delegation today from the Langley Olympians uh, receives, uh, some kind of response from staff on opening of the pool and when that might happen for them. Seems like that's been a challenge.
Mr. Backen, be in motion.
You too.
Your Worship, we, we don't need a motion per se, um, but there may be other venues where we can have that, the discussion and talk about what the response is, because I suspect the answer would be a broader publication of decisions we have not yet made.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Long? Okay, there's nothing there. Okay, uh, Counselor Long, you're muted, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I mean, we moved so quickly there, but I mean, going back to this water issue, I mean, uh, Counselor, we've got a quite a long list of things that got deferred. Um, you know, I just wanted to, to speak on that because I'm, I don't know if council remembers, a few months ago, we spent four or five hours trying to figure out what to do about water. But we have experts on staff to tell us how the water.
So, so just.
I guess that's, that's, okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so now I'm gonna ask for a motion to resolve the special closed meeting for items on agenda and on table.
Okay, uh.
The motion, uh, Counselor Davis moves, seconder.
I wanted to put something in.
Yeah, now you, you push your button, raise your hand, and then it'll, so, moving second, Counselor Richter?
Yes, I'd like to add a property item as well as a personnel item.
Property and personnel, okay, thank you. Uh, Counselor Davis?
A, a property item?
Okay, okay, thank you. So without a call to question, all those in favor?
Right.
Opposed, and carries.
Aye.
Okay.
All motion, a motion to terminate? Hang on, yeah, motion to terminate?
Oh, oh, hold on, uh, uh, sorry, we, we have a deleg, uh, do we have?
Yes, that's, uh, that's in close, Counselor Davis, so, so we need a motion to terminate.
Oh, okay, termination.
But, point of clarification, Mr. Mayor, are we going into, we've only got ten minutes left? Are we going into?
Yes, we're gonna go into closed, um, with the last ten minutes that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so moved by Counselor Davis, second, I need, was this meeting, seconder, Counselor Coons, all of those in favor, opposed, carried. Uh, we'll just take a minute and then we're gonna, uh, go into special closed.